Call a regular meeting of the Pennington County Commission to order. Thank you for being here. There's agendas in the back of the room. Also, we have speaker request forms, so if there's any items that you would like to speak on, you can fill out a speaker request form and turn it into highly on your right. We'll start with a moment of silent reflection and pledge of allegiance led by myself.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Need a motion on reviewing and approving the agenda?
So moved.
Got a motion and a second? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Both? Motion carried. Consent agenda.
Good morning, Commissioners. Holly Hennies, Commission Manager. For public notice, the Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda with the request of a board member or citizen. Today's consent agenda contains the following items: Approval of the minutes of the special meeting of April 27, 2022; Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of May 3, 2022; Number seven is to authorize the chair's signature to the annexation to the Murphy Ranch Road District with the legal description as presented; Number eight is to recognize and thank the volunteers for the month of April, 2022; Number nine is to authorize one Glock Model 17, serial number BCHF979, to be declared surplus for the purpose of commendation; And finally, number 10 is to authorize one Glock Model 17, serial number BNBM732, to be declared a surplus for private sale to the retiring deputy.
I believe that Mr. Ellsworth would like to have items five and six pulled from the consent agenda. Is there any other items that the public would like to have pulled from the consent agenda so that they may discuss, maybe be discussed? Any other items from the commission? Hearing none, I take a motion to approve seven through 10 of the consent calendar?
So moved.
I've got a motion and a second to approve the seven through 10 items on the consent calendar. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Both? Motion carried. Mr. Ellsworth. I have two items here. I have both the minutes from the special meeting that we held on April 27 and our regular meeting on May 3.
Chad Ellsworth, District 5. Yeah, so I'm here to see if we can bump that consent provision up to a regular agenda. The April 27 meeting was item number five. And it took, it had two parts to it, item one and item two. And the commission is holding by their consent provision that there's nothing ordinary, or it's all ordinary and it's a routine. And I am willing to put a little time into this to take a look at it. And I see that on item one, the Rapid Valley Sanitary District vote from funds that had quite a bit of controversy and was not ordinary. And I think that like the time that you folks put into this since last May, trying to figure out where these funds are coming from, and that they're not even here yet, according to this meeting, is controversial in itself. But on a procedural basis, on item one, the special meeting was not noticed for public comment. On an administrative controversial part, the subrecipient, RVWD, which is the Rapid Valley Sanitary District, receives with your consent provision, receives automatic protection from the auditor and leverages our auditor, which you guys went over this quite a bit in your meeting from the video, on political matters because she's in an institutional conflict of interest in that she holds, hands the money and she also handles the election. And there's a lot of pressure there that can come from that. This money is coming from the federal government ostensibly, from the treasurer. That's unique in itself. It's an extraordinary situation for you to handle, what you've been trying to handle. But you had this meeting and a lot of things came up in that meeting. Four of you argued pretty hard against not doing this or being protected by getting someone else to come in and take the liability off of your auditor for auditing something that would coerce her into doing some other things that are within her duties. And so I could see where the struggle was there. Why did you have to use this money? And you know, you had a representative come up here and say that the state got, he's got $9 billion that he can't turn back. That's beyond controversial. It's an extraordinary standard. The standards of doing a consent provision and sliding this all away from the public knowledge after what came out in that meeting, I think is apparent and warrants the jump up to putting it back on the regular agenda for the public to have input. We're real close to the election. Money hasn't showed up, according to this meeting. And that's bribery. That's a coercion. The federal policy in effect for that money are governed in this state by our three politicians in the state government, Mr. Thune, Mr. Rounds, and Mr. Johnson. And those guys all have one policy. That's the policy that's coming with this money. That's not necessarily the policy you guys exhibited. You, four out of the five of you were really pretty nervous about accepting this money and putting it to work in a way that could be attacked. Your auditor could be attacked, and she still can. On the subrecipient deal that was done, her duties become vulnerable to that company. And also, still, the federal people with their compliance provisions. She can't win. And she said that to you. And so you tried to protect her by everybody voting 100% consent, which is an admirable thing, but that leaves the public out. Because the public is then forced consented into accepting what may be the election fraud and the COVID problems. And there's going to be, there's a lot coming from that. So that's people that are paying you the money are paying you to get rid of the public's inquiry on the COVID controversy and culpabilities.
Chairman.
Commissioner Adka.
I'm not getting this. I guess I'm, I'm not trying to be rude.
Okay. So, Mr. Ellsworth, I take exception to you saying that the public didn't have input. That was, it was advertised in proper order legally, that there would be a special meeting on that particular date. Public was more than welcome to be here and express your concerns or to contact us prior to that, to express any concerns or...
That wasn't on the agenda. That's why I brought that up. The agenda did not show for public comments.
Well, I'm sure it was advertised.
Yeah, the meeting was advertised. The state law requires public comment period to be put on every regular agenda. It is not required on any special meeting agendas. But we took public comment at that meeting regardless of whether the items from the public was on there or not. So we absolutely took public comment as appropriate.
Ms. Chairman, can I add to that if you don't mind? Every time we have an item before this board, even if there's, yeah, I don't know if you've been to the city council meetings, but they don't necessarily let you talk at the moment that they're talking about a topic. We've always let individuals come up and give public input when we're having a conversation on every, each and every agenda item that's on our regular agenda. So even if it didn't have that on there, we still allowed it because we had a lot of public comment that day.
The room was full.
Yeah, that room was full.
It wasn't on the agenda. That's all I'm saying.
Okay.
I'm inspired by Mr. Thompson's speech to you last, in here, on May 3, on the election integrity. So I started pulling some things, going back and finding this, you know, this money problem and how it was handled. And so, in good faith, I've looked this up to see what I thought would be the proper way to do it. And I could see that it's not a routine matter. That's one of the elements of this consent. And it's an extraordinary matter that warrants. I know you've had some meetings before, but the information that came out of that, that you haven't even been paid and that there's other irregularities that all of a sudden, that you got some money back in May. And the funds, manipulation of the funds, I'm not saying anything is illegal at this point. You're assuring me that, and the record shows that you're trying to handle everything. But there's things there that you haven't mentioned. Where did that money come from and that kind of thing? So I'll, you know...
I don't think there was any irregularities relative to it. We were awarded, a year ago, we were awarded, or over a year ago, it was announced by the US Treasury that Pennington County would receive $22.1 million of the American Rescue Plan funds. We received half of that a year ago. The other half, I don't know if it's actually reseeded in at this point in time. Probably will be within the next month or so that we'll actually receive those funds. It'll take us, from the time that we took that action on April 27, it'll probably take us another six weeks to two months, I suspect, for us to put the legal document together to even do that. I would anticipate we probably will have all of the funds in-house prior to that. We've committed all of the funds at this point in time. Some of those funds will stay in-house, well, most of the funds will stay in-house. So it's not that we didn't have the $5.4 million available when the legal documents are completed in order to provide to Rapid Valley Sanitary District.
My point of view, the money is extraordinary. You didn't apply for it.
Absolutely.
You didn't apply for it. It was given to you and there was some implication there. It was right after the election, the 2000 election, things were in there.
Okay. I would ask you to just keep your remarks to items five and six on the minutes?
Okay.
Do you want to move on to item six?
I want to finish on five.
Okay.
The money does have collateralization agreements involved. The people who received that money, that worked straight with the treasurer, has had some pretty profound liabilities. The collateralization agreements means, I'm sure you all know, the money can't come to you. It has to go to a bank and they buy securities against it. You're a debt trap right there. The whole amount is a debt trap. And that, so the procedures that got you that money, you had to accept contingencies and restrictions and collateralization agreements that you had, you have not brought up to the public. I'll move over to six.
Okay.
On six, I'm asking for the same thing that'd be brought up as a regular agenda item. Basically, the testimony that day on the 3rd of May for Roger Thompson on the integrity of the election system wasn't in the notes or in the, what do you call them?
Minutes?
The minutes, yeah. Wasn't in the minutes. And I find that extraordinary, that that good a talk. I was really taken by his sincerity. All of you responded very well to his inquiries and his concerns that day. And it did inspire me to look into it when I didn't see it even recorded for the public car, much less put in your, published in your paper item. I think that's extraordinary and also defeats the consent issue on that. But only on that part of the thing that was missing from the minutes.
Okay, any questions?
That's all I've got, sir.
Any questions, Mr. Ellsworth?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Laster.
Actually, I have a statement for him and then I have a question for Holly, if you don't mind, sir. Just so you know, I've recently met with Mr. Thompson. He and I, I don't know if you noticed that in the meeting, but I said I'd meet with him and he and I have sat down and we've...
I watched, I watched the video.
Yep. He and I had a long conversation. It was a good conversation. I'll just tell you that at this point. I'm still working through what he got with me and we'll go from that. Holly, do we normally put public comment, what they do, in our minutes? Like if somebody comes up and...
No, sir.
So we've never had that?
No, our practice is simply motions. We do not put narrative in minutes. It's just the motions, the action that was taken by the board.
Okay. That's all I wanted to know.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ellsworth.
Thank you.
Is there a motion on items five and six?
Move approval.
Second.
We've got a motion to move approval and a second. All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Both? Motion carried. Item number 11. Cindy, I know that there was forwarded a revised version of this. I don't know if we actually have a copy of that or not. If we don't, we don't.
Of the revised, did you revise the...
No, there was just one.
No, there was a couple, there was a couple of things in this, a couple of errors in the, basically, I think, in entering the information. And so Holly had sent out a revision to us, which made a couple of changes.
And I'd be happy to read that if the board would prefer that I read the entire motion.
I was going to get that either to you or Cindy.
In the motion, I add an extra vendor that shouldn't have been in there and an ownership name that wasn't correct.
So we'll let you present the information, then we'll go to Holly to actually read it into the record.
Okay. Well, this is the annual renewal of the malt beverage and South Dakota Farm wine licenses. So with that, yes, if Holly would like to read that, that would be wonderful.
Holly, would you mind reading the motion?
Absolutely. The motion in front of the board today is move to approve the renewals of the retail on-off sale malt beverage and South Dakota Farm licenses for the following businesses: Bear Country USA Inc., under Bear Country USA Inc., BJ's Country Store, Highway 16, under Dvoric Convenience Stores, Inc., Black Elk Resort, under Black Elk Resort, Black Hills Speedway, under Cross Country Real Estate LLC, Corner Pantry Number 21, under MG Oil, Corner Pantry Number 21, different license number 24086, under MG Oil Company, Corner Pantry Moon Meadows, under MG Oil Company, Country Corner, under Robyn Robertson, Country Store at Three Forks, under Three Forks Sea Store, Inc., Dollar General Store Number 15207, under Dolgyn Midwest LLC, Firehouse Wine Cellars, under Fat Boys, Inc., Happy Holiday RV Resort, under Diamond Trek LP, Heart Ranch Camping Resort, under the Heart Ranch Camping Resort Club, Inc., Heart Ranch Golf Course, under the Heart Ranch Development Company, High Country Guest Ranch, under Ventures in the Hills, Inc., Jolly Lane Greenhouse, Inc., under Jolly Lane, Jolly Lane Greenhouse, Inc., Larson's Cricket Creek Resort, under Larson Recreational Properties, Mount Rushmore Concession, under Zantara Parks and Resorts, Inc., Mount Rushmore KOA, under the Recreational Adventures Company, O'Malley's Casino, under KJL, Inc., Pectole Pine Marina, under Pectole Pine Marina, Inc., Prairie Berry Winery/Miner Brewing Company, under Prairie Berry LLC, Rafter J Bar Ranch Campground, under High Cow Company, Reptile Gardens, under Black Hills Reptile Gardens, Inc., Rochford Mall, under the Rochford Mall, Inc., Rochford Lodges and Cabins LLC, under Rockerville Lodge and Cabins LLC, Rushmore Cave LLC, under Rushmore Cave LLC, Tontaka Trading Post, under Kimberly Seeline, The Gaslight, under Rockerville OPS LLC, Under Canvas, Inc., under Canvas, Inc., Valley Square Casino, under MG Oil, Valley Square Sports Pub, under MG Oil Company, and Whispering Pines Campground, under Red Sky Enterprises LLC.
Is there a motion on that?
Move to approve.
Yep. I've got a motion and a second. Any public comment relative to this? Back to the commission. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Both? Motion carried.
The next item that we have is a new retail on-off sale malt beverage and South Dakota Farm license for Mountain View Lodge and Cabins, under Carrie and Melissa Franco.
Chairman.
Commissioner Adka.
Move to approve the new retail on-off sale malt beverage and South Dakota Farm wine license for Carrie and Melissa Franco, under Mountain View Lodge and Cabins.
Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any public comment? Hearing none. Back to the commission. All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Both? Motion carried. Item C.
Next one that we have is the approval of a transfer of retail on-off sale malt beverage and South Dakota Farm license from O'Malley's Casino, under KJL, Inc., into O'Malley's Casino, under TNH LLC.
Chairman.
Commissioner Adka.
Move to approve the transfer of retail on-off sale malt beverage and South Dakota Farm wine from O'Malley's Casino, under KJL, incorporated into O'Malley's Casino, under TNH LLC.
Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any public comment? All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Both? Motion carried. Item D.
Next one we have is a transfer for the retail on-off sale liquor license with Sunday sales from Sally O'Malley's Pub and Casino, under KJL, Inc., into Sally O'Malley's Pub and Casino, under TNH LLC.
Is there a motion?
Chairman.
Commissioner Adka.
Move to approve the transfer retail on-off, retail on-sale liquor license with Sunday sales from Sally O'Malley's and Pub and Casino, under KJL, incorporated into Sally O'Malley's Pub and Casino, under TNH LLC.
Second. I've got a motion and a second. Any public comment? All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Both? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy.
Item 12. Barry Tyce.
Good morning. Barry Tyce, the Director of Pennington County Health and Human Services and the Veterans Services Office. I come before you this morning regarding two positions through the IRI grant innovations and reentry initiatives through the Bureau of Justice. It's been probably a year since we first came up here and informed you of the approval from the Bureau of Justice, Health and Human Services partnered with the Sheriff's Office. And this really, just a broad overview of this, quick overview. The Bureau of Justice is providing us funding to evaluate the rebound program, which we've had within Pennington County Health and Human Services since 2006. We focus on Pennington County jail inmates being released back into our community, trying to connect them to the services, including employment, medical and behavioral health needs, as well as medications, and a number of other services that we provide through our case management or transitional coordination. So for the past year, we've been working with the Bureau of Justice, the task force that was selected for this program on the planning and implementation guide, putting a number of pieces together, which will include an evaluation of rebound as it is now, and then as we move forward to tell us really what we're doing right and what could be improved on. So we've come to the point where the Bureau of Justice has provided us with the funding to hire two additional transitional coordinators or case managers into our office. Part of this is we're going to hire, we'd like to hire one with your approval right away and see how that goes before we bring on another employee. We currently have 2.5 employees in rebound as it is now. There's a number of pieces in place that, and will be in place, and the work with our task force that would increase really the number of individuals that we could provide assistance to by adding another staff member. We also understand with grants, and I think Health and Human Services has done a really good job of, as we approach the sunset of grants, making sure that before we'd ever come to you, that that position would be necessary. And in some cases, they're not. And once we get to the end of the grant cycle, we understand that and know that it would not be a good investment for Pennington County. And so we know with this position, it's really a, it's a four-year grant. This will end towards the fall of 2024. We would advertise it in the positions. We've worked with John on this to let any applicants know, like we have in the past, that the grant can go away and so can the position. And so they sign up an agreement regarding that as well.
Chairman.
Commissioner Adka.
We had talked about this before and have decided, I think, for me, I shouldn't say "we," I should say "I," for success for transition and anything with Barry's department, whether it be with housing, with rebound, with the veterans, case management is the key. So for me, I don't know if those positions should go away in 2024, depending on what's moving forward on case management. But I'll keep saying, it's huge for success in transition in any of those cases to have case management. If you don't, you don't have follow-through. And when you don't have follow-through, it's easy to rebound or go back into the same position you were before. I see it over and over again. The people I see that are most successful is the ones we keep track of and we keep basically case management on them. It's the ones that, or the areas in some of the places that we have in Pennington County, that when they don't have enough case management or they're overloaded with case management, they don't have enough people, that's when that success rate and that recidivism is a good word, seems to keep happening. So Barry, I'm glad that you're moving this forward and that I believe that in the end, you'll probably need those case managers, I think, with all the, with the COVID physical and mental stuff moving forward. Those case management and that transition and that success all come in one piece. So that's going to get bigger and bigger. And we also have a new care crisis stabilization unit, where maybe that can be transferred also into there, where those case managers are trained and then somebody else in the system that believed in this needing to move forward, paid for it, and now they're trained and ready to go hopefully for us in 2024 or even before. So for me, I think that's pretty awesome that you are moving this forward and that we got some help in your department to do that.
Ms. Chairman.
Commissioner Laster.
Barry, I've just got a couple of questions for you. What do you think the case load is going to be for that first one? What do you anticipate?
So that's always a moving target, especially in rebound, because some individuals will transition through the rebound program in six months. Others, it takes much longer. It kind of depends on where they're at, when it comes to employment and housing and medical needs and behavioral health needs. And some individuals are more time-intensive than others. And so we typically average between 30 and 40 clientele, but that number can drop to 20. drop to twenty some months per case manager, and it can increase. So it really depends on who we're working with. I always use the term we're working with human beings and not widgets, and so it's very, very complicated.
I mean, I understand case management. I've worked in the medical field, so we have a lot of case management goes on for, you know, patients that have different diseases or disorders that we have to follow up with. I guess I'd get, just my question is, I understand there's a lot of complicated aspects to it, but in general, you think about twenty to thirty per case manager is what you're, is what you're kind of anticipating? I, I get it, there's going to be fluctuations. It depends on how complicated a particular case is. I, I get all those things, but so roughly about twenty to thirty.
Yes, and we have case managers trained that help us in the other programs within our office, so we've really moved forward on, especially when it comes to somebody walking in our front door, that we make sure there's a case manager available or a transition coordinator to have a conversation, because we can lose people pretty quickly when they're making the efforts to come into our office. So everybody is trained to have a conversation with folks, it's just that some specialize in the rebound program.
And just a follow-up question. This is just for metric size, and maybe y'all haven't determined all the metrics just yet. I'm pretty sure you probably haven't, but maybe you have. For the recidivism, is it, are those metrics based on if an individual A comes in for specific issue? Is it recidivism if they come back for the same issue, or does it, or is it any other issue too? Or I just kind of want to understand the metrics on that. Do you get what I'm asking?
Sure. So in our, currently with rebound, we track two years prior, so when somebody enrolls in rebound, we look at their criminal justice involvement two years prior. Two years is kind of the metric that's outlined by evidence-based information that's been around a number of years. So we look at two years prior to enrolling in the program. We track while individuals are in the program. Anytime they have contact with law enforcement, they're incarcerated, the sheriff has provided us access to the ZERKER system. So individuals are identified coming into the jail, which provides us an opportunity to have case managers, transition coordinators go over and visit with them. Then when they exit the program, we track two years after they've been basically closed out within rebound to see if they're having contact. So if they're having contact with law enforcement or the judicial system again, that provides us an opportunity to try to find them, communicate with them, see what's going on. In the new, I say in the new, in the refined rebound, I think there'll be a greater ability to track information that maybe we didn't track before. And if you ask me exactly what that is, I don't have the answer to you, because we do a pretty good job now of tracking these things, but we also have a consultant through the Bureau of Justice who's done work before for Pennington County, and he's really in charge of evaluating the program. And he'll also be in charge of trying to help us identify information that maybe we didn't track before that would help us anticipate or boost the level of success for individuals. So, some of that we'll learn as we move forward, and we'll base it on what we've learned to this point for the past, my math's off today, since two thousand and six.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
So Barry, I think that, you know, for the moving forward with the programs that your office administers, you do a great job of tracking the data and the information so that you have that history as to how you can better serve those that are coming forward to be dealt with in your, your office. So, I, I think this is a great opportunity for us and you.
Thank you.
Chairman.
Commissioner Adkar.
Move to approve the addition of a new transition coordinator position in the Health and Human Services Department at a D B M of B twenty-five, twenty-six, thirteenth hour and to authorize human resource to update the position listing to, listing on file. Is further moved to approve two new F T Es filling the transition, coordinating your position to be paid for by the innovations and reentry grant through the end of grant period two thousand and twenty-four.
Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any public comment in regard to this? Seeing none, back to the commission. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Barry. Item thirteen, Joe Miller, items from Highway Department.
Was easy till now.
Good morning, Commissioner Joe Miller, Pennington County Highway. First up in front of you, item A is to authorization to advertise and let for one new truck. In our equipment plan approved at the first meeting in May here just a couple of weeks ago, two thousand and twenty-three, we're slated for one new truck. In our replacement plan, there's currently still a V W rebate plan through the South Dakota Department of Agriculture and Natural Resources. We were successful on that grant last year, so we got two trucks that'll hopefully be delivered June, fingers crossed. We'll see, I guess, won't know until they're here. We've talked to the salesman and current projected lead times are up to eighteen months for a new truck. And with that being said, we need to know for the V W rebate, what make and model our truck is going to be or the replacement truck would be. So in lieu of that, we'd like to advertise and let for one new truck here in the coming weeks so we can meet that deadline to apply for that V W rebate again. With that, I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions? Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Ross, connect.
To authorize the Highway Department to advertise on that bids for one new tandem axle truck.
Is there a second?
Thank you.
And a second. So, Joe, I, I guess at this point in time, it's not surprising that it's taking up to eighteen months, but to get the equipment, it's probably involves more than just trucks too. It's probably all kinds of equipment that's delayed out there, so.
Parts are the biggest thing that we're, we're facing right now. We've had to source parts from places that we've never thought we'd have to source parts for. Thank God for the internet. I don't know what we would have done if had this happened thirty years ago, prior to the internet, right? We made it happen back then, but be kind of a different world with the, the supply chain shortages that we're seeing now. We just got the, the brush chipper that you guys approved at the last meeting also. They're hopefully in October, November timeframe.
Okay. Is there any public comment relative to this? Back to the commission. All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item B, Joe.
Item B, hours of operation, just kind of a informational deal, since I understand that the resolution for our hours of operations is still standing, just kind of wanted to bring back an update for you guys and kind of where we stand. Our crews worked four ten-hour shifts through the winter months this year. We felt it was very beneficial, both in our gravel projects and anything that we have to do that's outside the immediate area of Rapid City. Crews did stay busy even with the, the short daylight hours, like spent those, the twilight hours getting ready to, to go to their job sites. Our employees did enjoy the four ten-hours throughout the year or through the, through the winter months, so that's a big perk for us, and I think it's one of our biggest selling points for bringing new employees in. Now the downside is, it did end up costing us a little bit more this year in overtime hours, strictly overtime hours. Rough calculations, between fifty and sixty by the time we got down to, to looking at it, it was pretty hard to, to put a number on exactly what was more, what was less, but I think we've got a pretty solid number, and about fifty to sixty thousand dollars extra is what it cost us to stay on through those four months. So there was a cost to it, and partially because of the cycle that we got caught in this year, and I don't know if anybody's ever noticed, but we do at highway, right? The snow seems to get into a cycle every winter. Sometimes it's, snows on Mondays, Tuesdays every week, or every other week, or this year it was Thursday night, Fridays. So, it did end up costing us a little bit more money, but I think the benefits to our employees outweigh the cost. So, with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Questions, Joe? No motion on this?
I don't believe so, right, Holly?
Is there any public comment in regard to hours of operation? Item C.
Item C. All right, ordinance fourteen. First off, I, I just want to say thank you to the, the staff, both from planning and zoning, state attorney and our staff that, that worked on this. It's been a month and a half, two months working to get this thing perfected, and I think we're finally there. I've just, as outlined in the, the memo there, I'll just kind of go over some of the differences and highlight what was removed and what we've added from the two thousand and five ordinance to the, the now proposed ordinance fourteen. Section one oh one, the purpose, we removed item D as South Dakota codified law clearly defines this authority. Section one oh two, item A, with the addition of section four hundred for exceptions, standards, specifications, and then we removed the verbiage from item A to avoid the redundancy. Item B, we removed in its entirety, as it was a duplication of item C, which is now B. Then we removed D as if referenced verbatim, South Dakota codified law. Procedures for requesting roads to be designated onto county roads, we were proposing that the request now be submitted directly to highway, I believe before they were submitted directly to Holly. So that way, our department, we always had a chance to vet those, but it would just take a little bit off of Holly's plate and vet those directly through our office. And then we combined items A and B into proposed item A. We did add an application fee to cover staff's administrative cost for both approach permits and then items to be, or, excuse me, that's for the applications for road to be considered to be put onto the system. Then section two oh one, minimum construction standards and specification, we updated the language and inserted tables to conform to current industry standards. The old one was good, but we, we felt it needed some updating and, and some more direct, more direction basically, more specifications. Section two oh two, the standards for specification of asphalt pavement and concrete pavement roads, we updated this, the granular base specifications to conform with current industry standards. Section three hundred, the specifications for approaches, we updated the specifications again to conform with the industry standards for road construction and design. We're proposing granting the highway superintendent or his designee the authorization to review or deny second approaches, so the item directly after this wouldn't have to come before you necessarily unless they didn't agree with highway department telling them, no, they can't have a, a second approach there for, for whatever reason that might, might be. We added an application fee prior to this. Approach permits were free. It does take a lot of staff time, probably a minimum four hours by the time Sean gets out to, by the time it's taken in by our admin staff, Sean gets out there to do an inspection, and then actually types up a memo or approves or denies it, or in, especially if it has to come in front of you guys. We, I spoke to some of the superintendents around, from Fall River, Lawrence County, their approach permit fees range anywhere from two hundred to three hundred dollars. So we kind of hit right in the middle at two hundred and fifty. We also added a requirement for a surety deposit. This is to ensure that approaches actually get built the way they're supposed to be. Puts a little bit of teeth in it, and then if we have to go back or go out and fix them or take out an approach that somebody said that they were going to take out, but they have not, we can recoup some of those costs with this thousand dollar surety. Connie did speak with Cindy with the auditor about the releasing of those sureties, and it doesn't have to be based on our, on our voucher cycle, so there will be a slight change from the, this first reading to the second reading. As the, as it reads now, it's based on our voucher cycle, and that's not the case. We don't have to wait for our voucher cycles to issue that, that surety. With that, before I give them the next, I'll stop for any questions, I guess, or if you guys want to keep going.
Commissioner Ross, connect.
So, general section four hundred, the purpose of an exception is to, and four hundred is exceptions to the standards and specifications, so we get a lot of folks that come up here and they don't want to do, build the ordinance fourteen standards.
Correct.
So it's, they, you know, we specify a twenty-four foot surface and they say, I want to do an eighteen or twenty, and then, so they would fill, so it says the purpose of an exception is to modify strict application of the specific requirements of this ordinance. An exception will only be granted in the case whereby such strict application, application would result in practical difficulty. So have we got a checklist yet? And that checklist will be monitored through planning and zoning.
A, a checklist is what kind of checklist, I guess?
I guess we're, we're looking at the, the form that they would fill out to see, that we could see if they did have a certain difficulty in, in building the fourteen standards.
We're working with planning and zoning and, and we're going to use a, a form similar to their variance, what checklist or, or form that they go through.
Well, that's what I, do we have that form yet?
We, we don't have that currently, no. If this is approved, we will work on, on getting that. It's going to look very, very similar to planning and zoning's variance.
So we'll be looking at prongs to?
I don't know if we'll call them prongs, but we'll, we'll, we'll have some sort of procedure for that, correct?
Okay.
Joe, tell me the, the process and the release of the surety.
I don't know that process, so I don't know if Brittany's down here or, Brittany can probably, we haven't done that sort of thing in our office before, so I have no experience in that, so.
Sure. So, sorry, Brittany Muller, Planning Director. We did meet with Connie on Friday to go over some of our administrative processes with this. As far as the surety, we just go out, one shot, inspects it, the surety can be released. So basically, it's a, it goes into account in the auditor's office, and then once it's released, it's just pays the Connie or Joe can approve it, and then it just gets released and that check gets cut back to the homeowner.
So once you determine that they've lived up to the requirements, surety can be released back to them.
Correct. Theirs will be a little different because the amount is only a thousand dollars. When we do sureties, when it's hundreds of thousands of dollars for road improvements, we come in front of the board to release that surety, but because of the amount, it would just be internally and administrative.
Is a thousand dollars enough?
That I don't know. My gut tells me no, but I think we had to start somewhere. You know, it, it takes a lot of time to go out there. If they do something wrong, if we have to replace a covert or something like that, yeah, a thousand dollars won't cover much, especially with fuel prices and wages and everything going the way they're going, so.
Fair.
But we can certainly increase that amount if you'd like. Up to you guys.
Well, I, I would like to see an increase, but I don't have a number. I, I have no idea what, what is really appropriate for that.
What we could do is we could take and, and do a cost estimate, what it might take to, to replace an entire approach with our staff time and, and come back to you with that number before the second reading.
That'd be good.
Okay.
Any further questions? I have a motion in a sec, no, I do not. I need a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Ross, connect.
Move to approve the first reading of ordinance fourteen amendments presented.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any public discussion, public comment relative to this? Back to the commission. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item fourteen.
Morning, Commissioner. Sean Smith, Pennington County Highway Department. Item fourteen is a request for exception to ordinance fourteen. Just recently, we received a plat for a lot line adjustment for two thousand and fifty-one and two thousand and twenty-one Covington Street. During our review, we found that each lot had two, two approaches currently. These approaches were constructed in the two thousand and three reconstruction of Covington Street that we did, that was part of our design and everything, so ultimately, we're just trying to get these into compliance so that, we're just requesting to, the exception to be approved to allow two approaches for both these properties.
That'd be my motion.
I've got a motion. Is there a second? And a second. So, Sean, are both of those, do both of those approaches exist now, or is it just one?
Yes, they're, they're both, both on both parcels are, are paved approaches with the curb and gutter, so.
Any public comment? Hearing none, back to the commission. All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Item fifteen, John Moore. Morning, John. Morning, John.
Morning, Commissioners, John Moro, Pennington County Human Resources. So the item we have before you today is actually the creation of a new position within the Natural Resources Department, and I see Mr. Goffe is here in case there are questions uh about the change. Uh, but we're requesting to actually add a position called Operations Manager within the Natural Resources Department. Uh, the purpose of this is to actually have a person enroll that would be available uh if needed to back up uh the operation when this Mr. Goffe is out of the area and unable to participate in those actions in the department. Um, so again, the the motion is there as well as far as what we're asking. Basically, to add this position to their department, this would not add to their FTE headcount. And I believe the organizational chart is there as well. Um, so you'll see this one reports directly up to the Natural Resources Director. Uh, and then there's a number of the positions that report under that position. That doesn't exist right now. Scott is the sole person in charge of the department, so this would actually give him some additional flexibility and making sure things are taken care of.
Yeah. Scott, would you like to come on?
Go ahead, Jenny, I was gonna move approval, you're good.
Coming up on Ben Didney.
It's uh is a new position, but it's a replacing the position that we lost. Uh, I did have a staff assistant that was in place for seven years. He originally started out as a technician and then we, I had a part-time admin assistant and kind of rolled that duties into his position for the last five years, and he just uh found another job here a week or two ago. So I talked to John, I was like, I almost need a another, not a, almost a deputy director, but we're basically combining three positions into one position. So it's kind of replacing my staff assistant I just left, but he's, it's kind of a jack of all trades that can also stand in my place as well.
Chairman.
Commissioner Adcock.
Me, um, working with Scott, he's very frugal at everything he does, and he's very um to the T. So um to move this forward for me is positive. Like I said, he's just really good at what he does. Um, when he asks for something, which as you all know is few and far between. Um, he's very efficient and effective, so um I will be voting on this motion.
Is there a motion?
Do you want me to say the motion?
Yeah.
Move to approve the addition of the Operations Manager position in the Natural Resources Department at DBM of B thirty-two, twenty-six, thirteen, an hour, effective May fifteenth twenty twenty-two, and to authorize Human Resource to update the position listing on file.
Second. Got a motion in a second. Any public comment? All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item sixteen, Holly Hinnies.
All right, Commissioners, the first item on the agenda is a proposed resolution in support of amending uh current South Dakota codified law thirty-two dash five dash one twenty-seven to update the additional charges allowed for mailing out decals and plates. Um, I don't know how much detail you want me to go into with this. Um.
Why don't you give us just the the background of what's happening?
Um, background, pretty, pretty simple. Um, the statute allows the Treasurer's Office to collect one dollar per decal or five dollars per set of license plates uh when they're being sent to the owners through the mail. The Postal Service has recently gone through a study and are now able to increase their postage rates twice a year, um, once in January and once in July. And the message that they are utilizing is to be prepared for an uncomfortable increase.
Charging this July, correct?
Yes, um, so right now, every license plate that we are mailing out, we are actually losing money on. It is not enough to cover the actual cost of postage, let alone the cost of the envelope, the labels, the postage ink um that go along with it. So this is our um request and attempt to increase the dollar amount via the statute.
I think the intent is not to necessarily try to make money on it, but to uh simply.
Not to just cover costs and feel that that shouldn't be passed on to other residents for mailing to out of state.
Okay, Janet, would you like to come on?
Did you run? You went faster than I thought you were gonna go today. Sorry, Janet Saylor, County Treasurer. Um, I think Holly explained the resolution and why we're going there. And um Senator Duhamel has been helping us with it. Um, there could be some changes, but I I don't feel the local taxpayers should be paying for people to get their plates mailed out of state that don't even live here. And it's costing us money right now.
And that's the bulk of these is going out of state?
Yes.
And the 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 sense of urgency with this is uh next year is a plate year. Everybody will be issued new license plates, so our amount that will be mailed out is going to drastically increase.
And those those actually can start as early as what, November?
No, they cannot get, they cannot get new plates until January first.
Oh, the with the new plates?
We don't issue them until January first.
Okay, okay, but everybody?
Everybody gets a new plate.
Every vehicle.
That's correct.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair.
Uh, Commissioner Roskin.
Janet, what's the cost now on the mail of set of license plates, six, seven dollars?
It's it's over five for us, and I know in some counties, the smaller counties, they're paying up to nine dollars because they have a smaller post office, everything has to go priority.
Didn't you say there was a certain type of postage that we have to use to mail those plates?
Yeah, it depends on the weight and what zone it's going to, whether it goes as a flat rate or whether it goes as priority.
Okay.
So we can be anywhere from five sixty-five up to seventy dollars.
Commissioner Lassner.
My question is, um, will the amount that you have on here cover what we need? And then if the, what happens if the post office increases again, is this going to cover that? Because the question is, is it going to, are we have to do a resolution every year to get the um, the legislature's um attention on this? Or or what's the plan for that, just out of curiosity?
Possibly, because the post office is going to be allowed to increase their rates twice a year, January and July. And I suppose it depends on how much money they're losing. But in order for Pennington County, I'm just speaking for Pennington, if they went with a rate of cost, we would have to mail, we would have to weigh every one of those license plates and collect the money. We'd have to bring it down here, get it weighed, go back upstairs, collect the money. It would be a nightmare with the amount of plates that we mail out. So.
We're we're working on that aspect of it. We don't know the answer right as of right now. Our process isn't conducive to charging actual, which is what seems to make sense. I mean, we're certainly not doing it to make money, absolutely not. But logistically, we as Pennington would prefer just to be able to charge the flat rate as what's already in statute, just to increase the amount, to make sure that we're covering any potential increases. We're not sure what the actual resolution language will be in the end that might make it to the legislature, whether it would be a factor for the, to account for the increases every year. We certainly don't want to have to go back to the legislature every year to keep increasing it over and over, but we're not sure what that mechanism looks like yet.
But Commissioner, just, this does not just say it's not postage only, it's postage and handling, which would include the the time, the envelopes, the processing of the mail down here. So it's considered postage and handling. So right now, we're getting, not getting paid any handling on plates.
Gotcha.
So I think the process that that I plan on doing with this is that uh on Thursday, I have a um uh, I said on the State Board of County Commissioners, and at our meeting on Thursday, uh, I would like to present this to the board, uh, so that they can go back to their counties and try to figure out, you know, what that language really needs to be. You know, I know Janet wrote this essentially for Pennington County.
Honey.
Uh, but as she says, there may be uh others that have, you know, other charges besides what what we're gonna have, not other charges, higher charges. And so the language may end up changing, but but the intent is is to have this, you know, ready and introduced in the legislature uh early on, and so that we can possibly even establish an emergency clause on it for those plates that are, that we need to be mailing out early next year. We won't meet the January one deadline, but.
No, just for clarification, I want to give Holly credit because Holly did work on this resolution for me so that we had it ready before we went to our association meeting in the first part of May. So I want to thank her for doing that for me.
Yep, thank you, Holly.
Chairman.
Yeah, Commissioner Adcock.
Motion to move the approved resolution in support of amending current South Dakota codified law thirty-two dash five dash one two seven to update additional charges allowed for mailing decals and plates.
Second.
Got a motion and a and a second. Uh, any public comment in regard to this?
Did you want to update it?
Come ahead.
Okay.
Good morning.
Morning, Dan Richard. I'd just ask that a cover letter be just a small cover letter being, or attachment to a letter when you receive your license plate and so people know that it's the post office and not you. It's probably save you a ton of phone calls.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you very much.
Any further comment? Any further discussion by the commission? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried, thank you.
Thank you.
Holly, so I don't forget, will you print me out a copy of this?
Absolutely, and I just realized as I was standing here that I missed the emergency clause in that resolution, but I assume that the association can amend that as it moves forward through the process.
You'd make me like fifteen copies.
Okay.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay, next item is B, uh, request for donation of tax deed parcel to the Black Hills National Forest.
Yes, Commissioners, this is the tax deed that you declared surplus for the purpose of sale via sealed bid at the last commission meeting. Um, we have received a letter from the Forest Service um, uh, basically outlining the reasons why um it makes sense to donate that um small triangle uh to them. So at this time, I just wanted to ask the board if you are interested and feel it in the best interest of the county to donate that piece of land to the Forest Service, or if you wish to continue with the sealed bid process.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Roskin.
So that piece of land, what happened was he had a mineral survey, and then they built the Hill City Keystone Road. And that left that that piece of land, you could consider it a fraction, it's not even planted. It's totally surrounded by Forest Service, it's roughly point one acres or forty-five hundred square feet. The foot, the footprint of a normal home would be a couple thousand square feet. You you don't have, the only thing you'd do on that would be maybe have a picnic, but then you'd have to get the approach, and I don't think you could get an approach. So I would be totally in favor of putting it back uh to the Forest Service because if it was private land around that, then somebody could buy that and it would increase their lot size. But the, basically, the Forest Service is the predominant landowner, so it just only makes sense to put it back to the Forest Service.
Chairman.
Commissioner Adcock.
Move to rescind the motion made on May third, twenty twenty-two, and to move forward with the request for donation of tax deed parcel six five three one nine to the Black Hills National Forest as allowed pursuant to SDCL seven twenty-nine, seven dash twenty-nine dash sixteen.
Second.
Second. Um, any public comment? Back to the commission, all in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Approval of vouchers.
Chairman, I'll be abstaining.
Okay, we have Commissioner Adcock that'll be abstaining uh from the
Rose Inn.
First motion.
Yes, sir.
So we have a motion to approve the voucher for the Rose Inn in the amount of two hundred and twenty dollars.
Some move.
Two hundred and twenty dollars. I've got a motion and a second, uh, Commissioner Habcock abstaining. Uh, any public comment? All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Um, second motion I need there is to approve the remaining vouchers in the amount of four million, three hundred and forty-eight thousand, six hundred and eighty-nine dollars and twenty-five cents.
Some move.
Got a motion, is there a second? And a second. All those in favor of the motion indicate, or public comment? All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item eighteen, items from the public. Dan's coming up. Welcome again, Dan.
Dan Richard again. Uh, got a question. A couple meetings back, I asked you to look up the FTEs from ten years ago versus now. Anybody bother doing that?
Um, I did not.
I don't remember him asking, so.
Quite frankly, I didn't either, but uh Holly, do you, do you recall that?
Thought that was more of an off the cuff comment of Mr. Richard.
Okay, so, so now we recognize that was not an off the cuff comment.
Not off the cuff from now forward.
Okay.
Uh.
So you'd like the number of FTEs from ten years ago as compared to today?
Yeah, and I did, and I I explicitly mentioned. I didn't say it's good or bad, I just think you need to take a look at that.
Yeah.
Uh, fees. Maybe it's just the way it's being presented or that, but you guys, uh, your, the staff will come up and say, well, we need this fee for this, or we need this fee for that, or, or, you know, it takes us, you know, every time we gotta do this, I gotta send a guy out, take a look, it's back, blah, 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 blah. Well, what do they do when they're not doing that?
What is the staff doing when they're not?
Yeah, when their staff's not doing these uh things that they need to increase fees for because, you know, it takes us time to do this, time to do that. What do we hire these guys for?
Well, the process changes on a on a constant basis. And right now, with the growth that we're seeing, we're seeing a lot more.
Oh, I'm not just talking about roads, I'm talking about.
No, growth, I said, not roads.
It's across the board.
Yeah, with the growth that we're experiencing, we're finding staff spending a lot more time out in the field um, working with individuals that are wishing to make uh either changes to uh be able to do things with the property that they own. Um, and so it's just.
I understand that, but the question is, what's going on? If nobody called and requested this, or what what does that?
Well, they make applications through various departments.
No, 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 I'm saying, when nobody calls requesting the staff to come and do this or make this form out. For example, I just got my tank pumped. And uh I'm gonna have to send a twenty dollar fee in for that. I mean, you guys make the rules, and then you send, and then you charge us a fee, ten X on doing the paperwork. I mean, what does the staff do when they're not doing this stuff?
Uh, I assure you, the staff is busy.
I I understand that, but what I'm saying is you always present it as, well, we gotta do this, we gotta do that, and we got this paperwork added and this paper and that. What are you doing when you're not doing that?
Just depends on the issue.
Go ahead, Commissioner Adcock.
Sorry, Chairman. Just depends on the issue, Dan. I mean, some of the fees are, it depends on what fees you're talking about, because there's all kinds of fees. If you're talking about the septic fee, um, they ended up, yeah, you have a septic inspector that goes in that that the person that's in there is going around to septic areas. The person that ended up pumping gets paid, of course, but this is to make sure.
Five dollars.
Well, bottom line is safe water, um, and making sure people are doing.
But the bottom line is, is you've created this, and you're charging me for the privilege of getting a piece of paper from you.
Um, I don't think that's, I don't think that's true, but um.
Well, it is true.
I I appreciate your interpretation.
Chair.
But that's just one, that's, I mean, there's fees, 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 fees.
Mr. Chair, um, thank you. I think I understand what you're getting at, and and maybe I can explain it this way, Dan. You're saying staff comes here, they get paid an hourly wage, it's coming out of our budget, which is already tax funded through our property tax in the exact nature. which is already tax-funded through our property tax in the exact nature. So why are we adding a fee, twenty-dollar fee for the septic tank, building fee, what, all the fees that you're talking about? Why are we collecting above and beyond what is already allocated to that department for their budget? Is that essentially what you're getting at? Correct me if I'm wrong, I think that's how they make their budget, is by the fees. Or portion, some of their budget.
Some departments, yes.
Yeah, some departments, that's how they get their budget, that's how they get that money allocated to their staff, is by the fees. It's not that we just pay them and then they collect extra fees.
What department operates just off of fees?
Which department operates just off of fees? I don't think there's any department that operates strictly off of fees.
That's what I thought.
But there are some departments that operate without a lot of, without taxpayer dollars for a big portion of their budget.
That's true.
Planning and zoning is one registered.
The other thing that was mentioned today, and it didn't even occur to me until it was mentioned, was with four tens, which I don't have a problem with, but it mentioned that it was about sixty K in annual income, additional, I mean, annual...
Expenses.
Costs, well, that's my income, that's my annual income. That's a lot of money to me, and I'm sure it's not to the county, but it's a lot of money to me.
But there's, there's a lot of efficiencies that are gained by that also, especially with the highway department. When you, when you have a highway worker, highway maintenance worker, that starts his job, you know, fifty, sixty miles north of the wall, and then if he's only going to work eight hours, it makes a big difference as to how much he gets accomplished during the day if he can, if he can work a ten-hour shift rather than that eight-hour shift, just because of literally the distance that they have to travel to start the job.
I'm just mentioning the fact that that's a lot of overtime. And I know, I'll be honest with you, as up, you know, where I live, I don't know about Thursdays and Fridays, but it seemed like every Sunday morning, there was either ice or snow or something, and the guy, and I understand that, but, you know, to say, well, this is an additional overtime versus the normal overtime, that's a lot of money to me.
Well, I can't speak for the highway department, and they're not here, but I think that much of that overtime is trying to fill in those gaps on weekends and so forth when we do have conditions where safety is an issue and they need to be out. Here's Joe right here.
No, I'm just saying, he said that it's an additional sixty grand.
Let Joe respond.
Good morning, Joe Miller again, County Highway. The additional sixty thousand is not a concrete number, that's what I would call a swag, right? Scientific wild guess. We have a lot of data and a lot of stuff that we were trying to sort through, you know, but it did end up costing us more. He said sixty thousand is a lot of money, I just did the math. Roughly, our operating budget is about eleven and a half, twelve million dollars, so that sixty thousand is less than a half a percent of our operating budget. So, in the grand scheme of things, it's not a whole lot of money. To you and I, it would be a whole lot of money, absolutely, but to our operations budget and highway budget, it's not a whole lot of money. And like I also said when we were covering that, we got, every year we get in this cycle, right? And this year, we were caught in Thursday, Friday, Saturday cycles, and Sundays, as Dan said. With that, you know, I guess, any other questions?
No, I'm just, it was the additional sixty thousand, which, I know, in the big scheme of things, you guys spent, just spent four million bucks. I mean, I know that's nothing, but that's a lot of money to me. And I bet it's a lot of money to a lot of retirees.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Laster.
Just to follow up for that, Joe, so whenever you said fifty to sixty thousand, was that your total overtime budget? Or is that your above and beyond what you normally do for overtime? I just want to make sure I understand that correctly.
That was above and beyond what we, kind of our baseline, because every year's different, right? Two thousand nineteen, we spent a lot of overtime, but two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one, that overtime was a lot, lot less. So we took an average over the last ten years, and that's kind of what we used, right, is an average. Every year is different with the amount that we have to go out. Two thousand nineteen, we had four super-large blizzards in April and May, March, April, and May. We had another one that November. So it just kind of varies as far as our overtime budget-wise goes. We, this year, we're tracking, we're spending, we've only spent, I think, twenty percent of our overtime budget so far this year in two thousand twenty-two. So we're under, we're about, what, twenty-five, thirty percent the way through our, our year. So, that answer your question?
Roughly, okay, thanks.
Chairman. I think that happens in any business. Unforeseen circumstances that you need to get things done, or you have to go think, do, in this case, work different hours in order to take care of snow removal or emergencies. I haven't seen it not happen in my business or anybody else's, where that is a lot of money, but even in mine, sometimes I can, I can get pretty high, depending on circumstances. So we do it all the time when you have plumbers, electricians, anything that you have to do. People do it for their homes, so this is not unusual for Pennington County, or based on his budget, not unusual at all, just because of circumstances.
And I'll echo your, your comments about our efficiency, right? To get to the furthest northeast portion of our county, it takes a minimum of about an hour and a half, hour and forty-five minutes. I think you've probably been up there, all the way up to the corner of Willsey.
A couple of times.
Takes a long time, you know, this, this July, we're getting ready to realign Willsey Road up there, and we're probably looking at starting crews at five AM, so they can get that travel time, so they can get that hour, get that additional work done, because it is a large project to realign that road up there. It just takes a lot of travel time to get up there and get back.
Okay, thank you, Joe.
Mr. Chair, would you like me to answer the FTE question?
Yes, if you can.
End of two thousand thirteen, six hundred and fifty-one. End of two thousand twenty-one, seven hundred and ninety. Now, understand, that's approved FTEs, that's not actual bodies. And we've changed how we're counting part-time, so it's skewed a little bit from there, but...
Did you hear that, Dan? We find out the information from Holly anyway.
Information comes from the... Thank you, Holly. Any further public comment? This is your time, so if you want to speak on something that's not on the agenda, that you want to bring to the commission's attention.
Councilman Evans, do you have any questions of the board today?
Okay, I'll close out the public comment. Item nineteen, dispute regarding application of section two oh four J. Who's presenting this?
Mr. Tally.
Is Mr. Tally here? Mr. Tally.
John Tally, Tally Construction Places Installer in Pennington County. Having a bit of a dispute with planning and zoning over an ordinance. The original ordinance was written, this has to do with baffles in a septic tank, which a baffle is a device that, in all tanks, which forces the solids to the bottom of the tank, and it keeps solids from going out in the drain field. The way the original ordinance was written, it said baffles or PVCTs. It was revised in two thousand twelve, and still said baffles or PVCTs. Revised in two thousand fourteen, it says baffles or PVCTs, and constructed of PVCTs. What we're running into is that in Pennington County, the smallest tank you can put in is fifteen hundred gallons. So fifteen hundred to four thousand, they only come with a PVCT. There is no option, which is fine. But when we have to add a five hundred or a one thousand gallon tank to an existing system, they come with a concrete baffle poured in the tank. When you go and buy this tank from the precast company and ask for the PVCTs, if you don't, you're going to send those, they say, no, you don't need them, because it is baffles or Ts. That's the way everybody interprets it, the "or" is the key word. So you buy the tank, you install it, the inspector comes out to look at it, and he says, no, exclusively, we're only using PVCTs, you've got to fix this. What I would hope would come of this today, that you would have planning and zoning rewrite this language that says only a PVCT will be used in Pennington County for a baffle, rather than baffle or PVCT, or is a link to alternatives. You can have, if you go into a restaurant and you order ham or bacon, you can have ham or bacon. As it reads now, it's baffle or T. If you called up the precast company today and ordered a thousand gallon tank, they're going to send it out without a PVCT. If you rewrite this, make it very clear, then this will end this confusion.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Ross, connect.
So John, would another alternative would be for any tanks, a thousand or smaller, just the baffles that are installed at the manufacturer, something like that?
It would be, what they found is that sometimes the concrete baffles do fall off, depending on the acidity of the water, or if there is a water purification system or softener that uses salt. They found that the PVCTs are the best, because they're inert to the reaction of chemicals. But right now, there's confusion between the manufacturer, the installers, and the inspector. And the key, and the thing that's causing the confusion is the word "or." That's the problem. If they would rewrite this, bring it to the commissioners, like they've done in the past, the revisions all missed the point. If they would rewrite it and say that exclusively, we're using PVCTs, that's it. There's no question.
Well, that only makes sense to me. JD Precast, they do the tank.
They're the only company in town that I know of.
So would they, would they, on a smaller tank, is there any reason why they don't do the PVC?
Because they, they interpret the ordinance as saying baffle or...
Okay, got it.
And that's what she told me. You know, you could buy the Ts in addition, but why would you put four baffles in one tank? Which I have no problem with using either one, but we have a tank in the ground right now that I have to go back and put PVCTs in, because we follow the ordinance, but the inspector won't accept the ordinance. So it's just going to cost my customer more money, is what it's going to cost. If this was written clearly, there'd be no problem.
Chairman.
Commissioner Adcock.
Brittany, just a question. Would it be easier if we just changed it, like Mr. Tally said? Or why do you have still baffles or sanitary Ts with the PVC?
Sure, so I'll just give a little brief history to the whole point of this ordinance. This was written, it took about two and a half years. There was two committees, there was a citizen committee that was comprised of planning commissioners, board of commissioners, and appointed citizens. So a lot of this, this ordinance, this language was written by a citizen committee, so keep that in mind. There was a subcommittee that just looked at installation requirements. That was consisted, I think it consisted of three or four different installers. I believe the previous commissioner, Phil, we attended those all the time. So that's where a lot of this language came from, was those committees and assistant committees. We haven't touched too much with this because of, it went through such a process at that time that we haven't messed with too much of it. Just for history, this has been in place for about twelve years, the requirement for the PVCTs. We've issued about eight hundred and seventy-one septic permits since that time, so...
So my question is, can we update some of it that makes sense since the changes twelve years ago? Mr. Tally's making sense today on what he's saying, just because in contracting, he's going to have to keep going through the same process every time if we don't change our, or update some of our ordinance, so...
And this ordinance is going through some revisions, so that will be one of the ones that will add to it, so...
So Mr. Tally's asking, to me, sounds pretty simple. Is there objection to...
No, because I do believe that the committee and that subcommittee at the time wanted a PVC baffle, because the concrete baffles have issues.
Mr. Chair.
I think that was a consensus, and that's where that requirement came from, was that committee, which was installed, several installers were on that subcommittee.
Commissioner Ross, connect.
So looking at D, it says baffles or sanitary Ts. John's got a thousand gallon tank that's got baffles, so to me, it follows the criteria, and I don't see why he's got it on that thousand gallon tank, why he's being required to do PVC.
But if you read it at least four inches in diameter, those baffles aren't four inches in diameter, that assumes that it's a T. Our state's attorney has looked at it, all three of them have actually looked at the language and interpreted in the fact that it's a PVCT requirement.
So Chairman.
The four-inch diameter refers to the plastic T, not the baffle. The baffle is attached to the tank. The "or" is the part that's killing us. That's what's killing us.
So, so John, they are going to move forward in changing the rules or regulations for you. Are you changing now the tank that you have before?
That'll be up to planning and zoning as it stands, now I have to change it. It's not, I don't think we're following the ordinance as it's written, but there are times when a decree comes down, if you want this passed, you will put it in the way we tell you, not the way we wrote the ordinance.
Well...
I would like to see what's in the ground passed.
Well...
But if it isn't, we'll fix it.
They need to update this. You said PVC works better.
I think it does.
So it would make sense to change it, right, to the PVC?
It definitely would.
Yes, sir. And then in the future, thanks to your help, we are moving this forward with a planning and zoning, but it sounds like at this time, you're in agreement as well as making that into the PVC.
Oh, definitely, and then hopefully you won't be having your time taken up with these issues like this.
No, we, we appreciate these issues like this to move forward, in order to make sure we're correcting some of our stuff, so we appreciate you, Mr. Tally.
I just wanted to briefly, on the record, state the state's attorney's opinion on that language. It is a bit confusing, but it does say what it says, and it says baffles or sanitary Ts, and then they have to be constructed of PVCTs. So our interpretation is that it has to be constructed of a PVCT.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, what's got to be constructed of PVC? The Ts or the baffles?
The Ts.
The Ts.
The baffles come attached to the tank. Do you see why we're having a problem here?
Well, Mr. Chairman. I think grammatically, if there was a comma in there, or Ts, or sanitary Ts, you know, that was in the comma, then at least four inches in diameter would apply to that, but this is saying sanitary Ts at least four inches in diameter. Grammatically, at least that's how I read it grammatically. If it, if it had commas in there, comma, or sanitary T, or, yeah, sanitary Ts, comma, at least four inches in diameter, then it kind of, when you diagram the syntax, it kind of flows like that. But I think the diameter clearly is sanitary Ts, because they have a diameter. Baffles don't, they have, they're, they're blocks essentially casted in there, is that correct?
They're cast into it, yes, but the, the T and a baffle does the same thing.
Right, I get that.
So, so the Ts are a baffle, and the baffles are a T. That's how we are interpreting it, and we haven't interpreted that for twelve years on eight hundred and seventy-one permits.
I, I get it, I'm just, when you say "or," I kind, I'm kind of in line with, with how he's understood, and he put something in the ground, and now we're going to tell him he's got to take it out, and it's going to cost him any more money, whatever. And I get the attorney's definition on that, I just, I don't...
So on the flip side of that, when it goes to get pumped in six years, that person is now going to be responsible for paying for it at that time, because they won't have the PVCTs in. So keep that in mind, too, so at some point, it, it's going, because when we get the pump record, it's going to show that it's, that they're missing, and they're going to have to put it in anyway, which was going, is going to cost more later than in the beginning.
So in, in a few years, whenever they do the pumping, if it's shown to not have that T, they're going to, if there's no problems with their tank, they're going to have to install the T regardless. The, the old tank is not going to meet standards, because it was there prior to the change to say only the PVCT?
So any tanks after two thousand ten are required to put PVCTs in, because that was the requirement of our ordinance at the time.
I thought, Brittany, that was only if the concrete baffle was missing.
Because that's why my tank had to have, be replaced.
The baffle missing or have holes or repeded or in poor condition, so.
So I remember with my septic tank, the reason why I had to remove my tank and put a new one here is because my baffles had broken off. And if my baffles wouldn't have broken off, I would have been okay, but that's.
Tank was put in prior to 2010.
Say it again, Brittany.
The tank was put in prior to the change of our ordinance. So we have some like grandfather dates and certain things, so that's why. So.
So Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Roskin.
So John, how much trouble is it on this thousand gallon tank for you to have to do the four inch PVC? Because it didn't come designed to do that?
Right.
So you got to drill in the concrete?
Uh, we just have to get into the tank and put, put in the Ts.
Okay.
But we have, it's going to cost the customer two or $300 more.
Okay.
Is what it's going to do. And I would just like to see, you know, all this rigmarole and if, or if you just write it to say, we only accept PVCTs, this deal is over with.
I think that's doable. I think we all agree that's doable.
I agree, but like I said, it's been eight hundred and seventy-one permits, 12 years, and this is the first time it's come up, so.
Well, and or is or and and's and.
I would say 99% of the tanks installed in Pennington County are 1500 gallon and up and they only come with a PVCT. It's when you add on the 500 or the thousands that this is going to be an issue, but.
Well, you're explaining.
Enough of this septic tank talk.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
So for our new guests that have arrived, uh, we do utilize speaker request forms. They're in the back of the room. If there's an item that you wish to speak on, I ask you to fill out a speaker request form, turn it into Holly Hennies, who's sitting at your right at the bottom of the, of the dais.
Chairman.
Uh, Commissioner Edka.
I'd ask for a 10 minute break.
Second.
Take a motion, I have a motion for a 10 minute break and a second. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Well, the commission back to order. Just want to point out that, uh, we are missing one commissioner today, Commissioner LaTroy. He's, uh, attending on behalf of not only Pennington County, but the State County Association, the National Association of County Conference. Uh, much of the discussion at that conference deals with force, border service, etc. So very critical that we have representation at that conference. Again, we do have speaker request forms, so if you're here to speak on a particular issue, uh, I ask you to fill out a speaker request form, turn it into Holly, sitting on your right, the lower end of the, uh, dais. First item under, uh, planning and zoning is a request for a refund for a building permit penalty fee.
Good morning, Commissioners, Brittany Muller, Planning Director. Uh, this item has been in front of this, uh, board previously, so this is the official request from Mrs. Beckley, uh, to request the refund of the building permit penalty fee in the amount of $259. Uh, staff is recommending that that penalty fee be applied to the reapplication of the building permit and the subsequent associated fee with the new application under the new ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Got a, I've got a motion and a.
Was that to approve it, right? Yes.
Second. Two seconds. Uh, is there any further discretion, any public discretion on this? Back to the commission, any further comment? All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Need a motion to go into a board of adjustment.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to go into board of adjustment. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item B.
Morning Commissioners, Jason Thenson, Deputy Planning Director. Uh, agenda item A, I believe, is subdivision regulations variance 22-04 to waive the requirement to dedicate and improve the undeveloped section line right of way. The applicant and landowner is Little Guys LLC. Their agent is KTM Design Solutions. Janelle's in the audience if you have any questions for her. Location of the property is 24125 Highway 16A. It is currently zoned planned unit development district. Existing land use is the powder house, lodge and cabins. Access is off Highway 16A and there's no special flood hazard area on the property. When considering, uh, or when basing staff's recommendations, we do take a two-pronged approach. I want you not to have those on the screen, but this is the, uh, portion of section line that they are requesting to waive dedication and improvements to. Prong one of our variance request, uh, asks, does it injure the neighborhood? Staff found no, Highway 16A is an improved right of way that provides access to the existing and proposed lots. Uh, next, does it conform to the neighborhood? Staff finds yes, the neighborhood is commercial in nature. Number three asks, does it conform to the general purpose of the subdivision regulations? Staff found yes. Number four, does it conform to the comprehensive plan currently in place and that is not applicable? Uh, lastly, number five, does it harm public safety, health or general welfare? Staff found no. Highway 16A will provide ingress, egress and emergency response access to the property. Uh, second prong that we do consider, uh, determines whether special conditions exist to grant the variance, such as physical conditions. First, uh, question asked, does a special condition exist such as exceptional narrowness, topography, sighting or the like on the existing property? Staff found yes. Topography, the, uh, topography of the entire portion of section line is a rock outcroppings with increasing elevation approximately 80 feet to the north. Uh, subsection of that asked if a special condition exists, does enforcing the ordinance create an unnecessary hardship? Staff found yes. Dedicated and improving the unimproved portion of section line on the property will create an unnecessary hardship because of topographical constraints. And lastly, um, if a special circumstance exists, does granting the variance observe the ordinance's spirit while doing substantial justice? Staff found yes. The ordinance's spirit is to ensure access is provided to proposed lots. An existing platter right of way, Highway 16A, provides access to the existing and proposed lots. The request was sent out for interdepartmental review, there were no concerns or objections received. Staff's analysis of the request is that this request application was filed on March 25th, or yeah, March 25th of this year. Therefore, the subdivision regulations that were in effect at that time have been applied to this request. The board of commissioners will hear a minor plat 22-12 at today's meeting. Approval of this variance will satisfy a condition of approval and allow that plat to go forward. With that, staff finds that there are special conditions on the property that would excuse literal enforcement of the Pennington County subdivision regulations and recommends approval of subdivision regulations variance 22-04.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, uh, to approve. Uh, question on that, is, so there's already encroachments on that section line, correct?
That's correct, yep, and that's a condition of approval for the plat that you'll hear later on in the meeting.
Okay, very good. Uh, any public comment in regard to this? Back to the commission, any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion for approval indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Next agenda item is variance 22-07 to allow a 2.079 acre lot to be zoned ranchette district. The property owner is Karen Murphy, the applicant is Isaac Almanza, their agent is Renner Associates LLC. Property is located at 23800 Highway 385. It is currently 7.4 acres, zoned agriculture district. And it does have 100 year and floodway on the property. Staff recommends to continue variance 22-07 indefinitely at the applicant's and surveyor's request.
So moved.
Second. Got a motion to continue in a second. Any public comment? All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item D.
Cody Sack, Environmental Planner. Item D is variance VA 22-08. It is to exceed the maximum height requirement of 35 feet to 50 feet to allow a temporary 50 foot tall tent on the subject property. The applicant is Zirkus Inc. Incorporated. The landowner is Highway 16 LLC. The location of the property is at the intersection of South Highway 16 and Wilderness Canyon Road. Lot size of the property is 60.14 acres. Currently zoned highway service district. Uh, existing land use is vacant. Access is off Wilderness Canyon Road and there's no special flood hazard area on the property. When reviewing variances, we take a two-pronged approach. Uh, for prong number one, whether granting a variance wants to counter to public interests, I'll read the, um, answers, they're on the board as well. Uh, number one, no, the request does not appear to be a blight on the neighborhood and does not appear to be a threat of a nuisance. Uh, number two, the subject property has, does have a structure that is over 35 feet in height. However, all of their structures appear to meet the required 35 foot. Number three, the, no, the zoning ordinance for highway service district has a height restriction of 35 feet. Uh, number four, yes, the current comprehensive plan has the property zoned highway service district, which requires a 20,000 square foot lot size. And number five, does it, does it, uh, harm public safety? No, the height of the tent should not harm the public safety, health or general welfare of the community. However, staff does believe that the location of the proposed tent could affect, uh, public safety. And for prong number two, whether a special condition exists to grant the variance, uh, no narrowness and topography do not impact height of a structure. Currently on the property, there is a 2,554 square foot storage warehouse and there's no on-site water treatment system. This was right around interdepartmental review. Uh, the Department of Transportation came back and said that they do not have an issue with the height of the tent. However, uh, they do want to speak with the applicants before any use of said tent, um, is in operation. Uh, they may require some additional, um, uh, traffic studies and some different things for the amount of people that they're proposing for the, for the use. Uh, the applicants are requesting variance to place a temporary 50 foot, 50 foot tall tent on the property. Uh, the tent will be used for a seasonal, uh, entertainment venue, which will run from May through September. Uh, staff does not support the location of the property as it is near a rock of a fire department and could propose, and could, could pose a traffic risk for cars coming off of Wilderness Canyon Road. Uh, staff has spoken with the fire department on their concerns about traffic congestion and emergency services, safety for Highway 16 and cars blocking, uh, or using their driveway. Uh, staff has met with the applicants and the agent and informed them that the portion of property south of Highway 16 is a more suitable location since it has an existing structure over 35 feet in height and would remove the risk to the fire department. So with that, staff recommends denial of variance VA 22-08 as there's no special conditions on the property that would excuse literal enforcement of Pennington County zoning ordinance section 212.
Questions to Cody?
And the applicants are in the audience if there are any questions.
Chairman.
Commissioner Edka.
So Cody, if we approve the height today, then does it come back to us? So the parking issue, the safety issue of Wilderness Canyon Road, all that would be left up to the staff?
Correct, they would have to meet the parking requirements. If staff denied the building permit based off of the parking requirements, they'd have to come back for another variance or they'd have to, um, or they could appeal the, the denial of the building permit.
So, just so the applicant knows, the staff is not in favor of this, uh, for a number of reasons, mostly because of the location and because it poses a risk for, uh, traffic on those, on Wilderness Canyon Road and for the fire department, which makes sense. So I'm, for me, the height of the tent is not the issue for me, but passing it on to the, um, planning department, I have the same, um, concerns as they do. So if I vote against this today, it's because of, um, passing it down to staff. I think, um, there is a, probably a, a better location. Um, I think the circus tent is going to be pretty awesome if we can find somewhere, um, on that Highway 16 that they can still, um, do a, a business, uh, with the tent and the circus. But again, um, in that location, it, it would be very hard for me to support.
Mr. Chair. Commissioner Roskin.
I've got a lot of, uh, phone calls from the members of the community in that area and, you know, they're, they're opposed to it. I don't think the tent's the biggest concern, it's just what's going to happen after the tent is approved. If you put it perspective, this wall is probably 18 to 20 feet tall. And then if you can envision a 50 foot tent, that's a, that's a large, uh, event center, you might say, so. I just want to point out that I've got a lot of, uh, concerned citizens that live in that area.
Would the advocate like to come forward and?
I'm Brianna Ventura Schwartz. Um, I am the owner of Zirkus Inc., the CEO, and we've been in this area performing and developing shows for many years now. And we're very, very excited to put together this for our community to be, bring something very beautiful to the area, so. Um, um, in regards to, and go ahead.
I'm Doug Bell, I, I represent Highway, or Highway 16 LLC, the landowner.
In regards to the, um, variance that we put in for, it is only for the height. The, the, um, Department of, uh, Transportation did approve and say that this was okay. Uh, we did talk to the fire department and let them know that we would provide flaggers to make sure that no one goes in to their parking area or their drive, drive-through area. This is also only three days a week, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, for a short period of time. And so to take that into consideration as well, this area is zoned for amusement and we feel like it fits, um, the area, it fits the landscape and it's, um, going to provide a additional great thing for our community.
So the tent would be erected for how long of a period of time?
Um, it's going to go up, uh, in a couple of weeks, um, probably mid-June, whenever this goes through. And then, um, we would be training in it this summer, developing the show to start next year. So next year it would be up mid-May, it would be, be then up June, July and August, coming down mid-September. The height of the tent itself is 30, uh, more close to 37, 39 feet. The towers are what is at 50 feet. So, um, it is a large structure, but there are other structures close by. The fire department itself put up a structure that was over 35 feet this year, past year, so.
Do you have any options of different location for it or not?
Uh, we looked at putting the, uh, tent in Rapid City, at the Uptown Rapid City. We did get the permits for that, the city approved it. The city has that same 35 foot concern or, or limit and they approved putting it through there. The Uptown Rapid City then, um, got a, um, approval to do their remodel, which is great. But then the tent, um, can't be there during that time. And so in that process, we met, um, Pat Hall and Doug and found that the area and, and, and the, uh, the importance of that area and, um, sitting with Crystal Caverns and what we're trying to do with Lakota Dance Entertainment and Cirque in the area was really, uh, fit perfectly. And so, um, the land is very flat. It's a large piece of land that the tent would, um, work really well on. And as it grows, we feel like then, uh, three years down the road, we would look at putting it on the other side of the road. But if Pat were only to own that plot of land right there, that is, you know, his, um, and it is zoned for that, we felt like it, you know, it was definitely a good house, a good place for it. We did contact the fire department, we want to make sure that everything is, uh, doesn't impede on what they're doing, absolutely, so.
So do you have the option of putting it on the other side of the road presently or not?
Not at this point, um, that takes a little bit more than our budgets allow and, um, what would need to be happening, happen right now on that other side of the road. Um, it's not as flat and I guess I'll let you speak.
I'll make one statement on that. We're in the, uh, process of an extensive master plan of that piece of property. There's over 700 acres involved there and we don't want to, um, at this point, encroach on that property until we get the master planning done on that property. Uh, there will be some tourist type, uh, entertainment and, um, stores and even some world-class museums that we're looking at to go in on that property. And so until we make and see how it all fits together, we really don't want to, uh, come across to the south side.
Mr. Chair. Commissioner Roskin.
So Doug, would you lease the land to this group or would you sell the land to this group? And then if you lease it, how long would the lease be for?
It's a lease with an option to buy.
Yeah.
And how long is the lease?
The lease is for this summer right now.
Okay.
Okay.
And if you went into a more extensive lease, then what would you be looking at for term? If they didn't exercise their up, is it an option to buy after one year?
No, uh, it's a five-year situation.
Okay. How big's the, we, we got an idea what the height is, what's the rest of the dimensions of the tent?
Could I show one picture and just have it pass around? Because I think it's a little bit deceptive, that the tent itself, the top of the tent is 39 feet. There's two towers that are. There's two towers that are part of the structure, but also part of the entertainment program inside, and those towers go up fifty-five feet, so I can pass this around if that would help.
You, Doug.
The tent itself is um, a brand-new tent. Um, it's a Mendoza tent, it is called the Ferrari of tents, it is um, a tension tent, so it is basically like a full-blown uh, permanent structure that is able to come up and come down. And these tents come through this area all the time, they, there was one here last August at the Rushmore Mall parking lot that Circitalia uses. They're very beautiful, bit, very eye-catching, and um, and so we're, you know, very excited to be able to have acquired this tent. Um, we have a gentleman that is, has been in the circus his whole life, uh, William Pages, he is our advisor on the tent that will be putting it up.
Commissioner Ecker.
So for me, it's not the tent. Um, how many people do you um, think you're gonna have at this event?
We had started out as a goal to have six hundred people um, at a show at our first couple of shows. Um, we looked at possibly also this summer doing a short couple-week run. Um, but um, overall, this is a year-long project that's being developed. Um, but, so next year when it starts, um, we look to start with around six hundred people uh, show, and then build from there to twelve hundred. And um, one of the things right now that we were going to use the other side of the road for is overflow parking or parking itself, and then bussing people across to make sure that there's no um, traffic issues.
Okay, thank you, Brianna, so um, a couple of things. Again, I don't, I, I'm not against the tent and the height of the tent at this point, but I think you putting five hundred cars on a basically one-way, um, those aren't the, the, you do have a state highway in front of you, but you have a Rockerville Fire Department with a gravel road on one side that they need, and that's not gonna be able to be used because that's how they get their fire trucks out. I'm on the fire service board. And then if you go down Wilderness Canyon Road, you have, it's not a major arterial, it's a regular road. Then you're going on basically another non-arterial road, that's a dead-end road. So five hundred cars in, in that space, trying to get them in and out. We were worried about crowding their trucks back in the day on sixteen further down. That's a lot of traffic to put without a light and without, to your dream is awesome, I'll keep saying, and, and what you're gonna do is great. But the infrastructure and where you're putting it, um, and the staff is trying to tell you that is not gonna support it, so even if we said your tent is good today, you're gonna go through the staff, which they're saying not suitable location, uh, safety factors because of um, the road, the fire department, and the risk of the traffic. Um, that's gonna shut you down, even if you get past us to get your building permit.
Well, um, when they give us the um, number of cars that would be allowed on that plot of land with that, then, in your opinion, be okay?
I think if you go from five hundred to ten cars or something, that's, that's not gonna be profitable. I think, and I'm not saying ten, I'm just saying they're, that's, that road is not made for a lot of traffic at this time. You can, they have um, different, if you look, and I did ask the question, because I said, I kept saying what's wrong with the tent right there, it's on a major arterial, it's on a highway. I think I would like it, and then um, we went and looked at the other um, businesses on there. Uh, our fire department, our administrator said, so look, they, they have two inlets and outlets to get out of there. Um, they're not on that major arterial, or they're not on that uh, Wilderness Canyon Road, they have their own areas to get in and out of. That's why they were approved, this does not. So that made sense to me, and for me, it's a safety factor, and again, your event and what you're doing is gonna be amazing, it's just not, I believe, um, like the staff's trying to say as well, it won't work on this location.
Mr. Chair.
What um, what about the height variance itself that this is for? Um, be, in, in light of the other structures that are close by, would that, um, the variance itself be approved?
I can't tell you that, I'm just saying one of, one of five. I don't have a problem with the height, we, it, it has to have a variance, of course. Depending on where it was, there's always site triangles and different things that come into, you know, if you're moving this tent somewhere else, um, that come into play, but um, that would be determined, number one, if you stayed in this location. Um, and number two, which I, I'm, I'm gonna be up straight, I don't think um, it's gonna move through, um, even if it moves through us today. It won't move the, through the staff, um, just because their concerns are legitimate concerns, ma'am. That, there's gotta be a better location, and then I believe depending on where that location is, if it's not gonna be a site triangle, it's not gonna be something, you probably would still have to come back for the variance, but for me, that wouldn't be an issue unless there was a safety factor.
Commissioner Roskin.
I see. I was just gonna point out that we have one commissioner gone, and it takes the super majority to vote on them, so you'd need all four votes today. I think you do have the option to continue this until we have five commissioners, is that an option, Mr. Chair?
That would be an option.
All right, I think maybe we should continue it so we can have the option to discuss this a little bit further.
I would like to uh, move forward though with hearing uh, testimony, I do have a speaker request for him, and Cody, do you have more that you wanted to offer as far as comments?
So Cody Sacramental Planner, we met with the applicants and Commissioner Laster was in on that meeting. Uh, when we were discussing the location, a- and we told them on the southern portion of the property, there is a structure that's over thirty-five feet uh, in height, so we told them that'd be a more suitable location uh, for that reason. And the structure that she's referring to that the fire department put up is a communications tower. So it's.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Laster.
I, I've got a couple of other questions, and I think uh, Commissioner Hickock has clearly set forth um, some really good concerns, and y'all heard those same concerns for me. Uh, first and foremost, I wanna say and disclose that I know people on both sides of the aisle of this, I know individuals that live back off of Wilderness Canyon, but I also know individuals who are performers that, so I kinda know people on both sides and are friends with them, so I, I wanna point out, I have the same concerns, but Cody, if you can answer this question. Typically, when we do a variance, um, there's always a, a, a significant reasons why we have to do a variance. In other words, if someone wants to put a garage in their yard, they can't do it because either it's topography, the, you know, there's, there's those very specific reasons why they can't, that's why they're asking for a variance. What is the very specific, special condition that would um, require them to ask for this variance? Other, I mean, there's no topography issues, there's nothing, so out, outside of that, we'd be giving a variance for no other reason other than that it's just because that's the size of the structure itself.
Correct, uh, Cossack Environmental Planner. So when, when we reviewed this, height, height isn't dependent upon topography or, or sighting alike. Um, it's just specifically, the requested use on the property requires a, a thirty-five-foot tent, um, or I'm sorry, a fifty-foot tall structure. Uh, as staff stated in the past, a, a want is not necessarily a hardship. There's other options that could be used, that, that property could be used for, for development, that doesn't require a variance, and that's where staff, staff stands, even, staff does have safety concerns, but staff's main reason for recommending denial is really the fact that there is no hardship for the need for the tent.
Thank you, and one follow-up question, Mr. Chairman. If you were able to get the six hundred parking spots or whatever you needed for that, how far back do you expect it to back up on Highway sixteen from Rapid City coming down there? Because obviously, if you have events and there are short timeframe events and whatever, you're gonna have a, a timeframe that people are gonna wanna come in and park in there. What, what's the expected backlog of traffic up sixteen?
We have um, plans in, you know, in all the shows that we do, we um, do open door earlier on, so some people come early so they can come in and get their seats, and some people come later right when the show starts. And so um, in having some extra things, meeting performers, having some entertainment outside, people are gonna be coming in, not all just at the one time. I understand that there are times along that highway while you have backup, like at Bear Country, when they have extra traffic.
You get where I'm going.
Yeah, I mean, it, it, it just happens, this is that, the nature of that highway. Um, but we're gonna do everything that we can to make sure that we have the staff to help move the cars, just like they did at the airshow this weekend. Very coordinated, very um, planned out, and making sure that those cars get into the place where they need to be in a nice, smooth fashion. And same during exit time.
Right, but what would you anticipate if you had a large volume of vehicles coming, how far back up? And my, my main concern is because that is the fire department's ingress and, and egress. If the fire department guys are trying to get there and they're not in Wilderness Canyon area, if they're coming from Rapid or, or uh, east of there or west of there, my question is, how are they gonna traverse the, the, the backup of traffic if it's in front of their driveway and, and get in there? And without causing it another potential accident of getting over to the left lane, coming over, putting on their blinker, or trying to get somebody's attention so they can come in through there when you got other thorough traffic that's coming through? That, that's probably one of my biggest concerns for a response, as an EMS guy myself, so.
Um, well, we will have a flagger there at that um, exit to make sure that that, that the cars stay back and they don't go in between where the um, at the, at the fire department's um, entrance. There'll be a flagger there to make sure that nobody comes in, and then also that those cars stay back until they're able to move forward, if that was the case. I don't think that the cars will get back that, back that far. In the future, as we grow, you know, we'll be able to mitigate that if that becomes, if we come back awesome and famous, and we have backup for cars, that'll be great, so.
Can I say something? Okay, my understanding is, is that road in front of the fire department is a private road, it's not a public right-of-way. Our intention is, or I think their intention is, is to do flagging on that. The state, when we had our conversations direct uh, face-to-face with Mike Carlson and Stacy Barlet, said that they may look at down the road, a digital sign that'll just say, heavy traffic ahead, something like that, that gives people a notification. Again, we've only, in original proposal that they brought to us, there were thirty-nine different shows. And that thirty-nine shows uh, would be over the summer, and then at that point in time, the tents shut down, taken down and that type of thing. So we have to account for, say, forty-five minutes of heavy traffic in, and probably thirty minutes of heavy traffic out. And uh, as our conversations with the state, they already know that there's just serious issues all the way along sixteen. Reptile Gardens ish, has issues, Old McDonald's Farm has issues. But we did go through and looked at their master plan and what they're intending to do. This will be a major intersection on the new master plan on Highway six, sixteen. They did not have any problems with site triangle, no issues with the site triangle. When you're turning in or turning out of Wonderland, uh, whatever the name, uh, I call it Copper Oaks. Uh, so you won't have an issue with the tent blocking people's visibility, being able to get back on sixteen. Right now, if you drive that road, you'll see that they've already, in a sense, created a right-hand turn lane out, and a left-hand turn lane out, and a right-hand turn lane in. So there's already essentially the width-wise, three lanes in there at this point in time. So, but I think for right now, let us have some time to can, uh, talk about this, discuss the parking. Um, I think the thing for us is that we need to make some decisions, it's your next meeting, one way or the other, because the summer will be over before we know it.
Mr. Chair. Commissioner Roskin.
Doug, could you get ahold of uh, Mike Carlson? And uh, what, the next two or three years, they're gonna redo all those uh, ingress and egress, could you have him provide you with their master plan, how that's gonna look?
I have it, I don't have it with me, but I already have.
Did you send that to Holly, and then she could send it to us so that we could take a look at it?
You can see how it's all gonna change, every one of these are gonna change or close. So, and this will be the key point right here into the entrance of the seven hundred acres on the south. So there's a lot of movements that are taking place that they're de- designing right now.
Okay.
Thanks.
I'd like to call uh, Don Oliver up, Don has uh, requested to speak on this item.
Can I say one thing to Doug before he leaves the podium? So Doug, um, the site triangle was more not where you're gonna put it now, but Ms. Brianna asked if there would be, if they moved locations, is there gonna be an issue um, with the height? So what I meant was, depends on if she moves it somewhere else, that might be one of the issues. So at this time, it wasn't the height, it was more the safety of the cars coming in and out.
Right.
Um, with one ingress and one egress out. Um, again, not against the tent, not against uh, what you're doing, I just think for the traffic, uh, they are gonna improve sixteen, but if you already have issues now, and you admitted that, Mr. Duncan,
Right, right.
that we would be adding to those if, issues of infrastructure and the things that we need. Um, like I said, if we could find a location that would work, uh, maybe with Mr. Hall or somebody, and then work with the issues of what we need to do for the traffic with um, Mike Carlson and, and the uh, DOT, um, that would be a positive to move forward, and maybe that's something you two need to look at um, before you come up again, and maybe they have a solution um, for you as well.
Yeah, we've talked quite a bit about the possibility going on the south side of the road, but until we master plan it, know all the details, we're in the process of working through a, a extensive rural water development system. Uh, we're gonna have a, a lot of issues when it comes to wastewater. And so these are all things that we're trying to do, and we just don't wanna touch that property at this point.
Yes, sir.
We just wanna keep it uh, in the planning phase, I'm sure you'll see a lot about it when we get ready to open it up, but uh, so this is the site that we had to offer to them.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Come on ahead, Don.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and the rest of the commissioners, uh, most of what I was gonna say has already been said. My, my house would be right where that little, the smallest red dash is, um, so I'd, I'd be the closest, uh, I think. Um, we all knew when we, when we moved there that that was commercial property and something would happen to it. We, we never thought of a circus-type tent, though, that, that was not in our plans. But that's not the primary reason I'm opposed to it, I'm opposed to it for the safety reasons. That Wilderness Canyon uh, road junction with Highway sixteen is already dangerous. Cars and vehicles on sixteen, they are going sixty-five. Uh, and I know of three accidents just in the last couple, three years. Uh, one fatality right there uh, on that, that intersection. And one thing that you, hasn't been mentioned, and you can't really tell by, by this overha- uh, aerial view, is, is the, where you see the sixteen on the, on my right-hand side, um, it, it, it's steep going down. You, you're coming up, you come to the crest, and then you can see, if there's um, cars backed up there, um, you have very little time to react. Um, it, it's gonna make an already dangerous situation and make it worse, and, and that, that would be the basis of our opposition.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roskin.
I totally agree, and that's why I wanna talk to Mike Carlson with the South Dakota DOT and, and hear his thoughts, because uh, he's gonna be the one that can tell you the most uh, what could happen with three, four, five, six hundred cars, and and so that is what I'm gonna do going forward until the next meeting, is get ahold of Mike and, and just uh, sit down and e- e- even if we have to go to the site, I'll be more than happy to do that, so I can fully understand what we're trying to vote on.
If you just move it to the south side of the highway, then, then all those things go away, um, because it's flat, and people are going the other direction.
Yep.
Any other questions of Mr. Oliver?
Yeah, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Roskin, did you have a motion?
Uh, move to continue until June the tenth.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to uh, continue this uh, request until our next meeting, June tenth? Um, Cody, any, any comments on that?
Cossack member.
Okay, uh, any members of the public? Um, direct to the commission, all those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried.
Move to come out of Board of Adjustment.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second to come out of the Board of Adjustment, uh, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Consent agenda, Brittany.
Uh, the Board of Commissioners seizes a consent agenda to act on uncontroversial and routine planning and zoning items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. The consent agenda for planning and zoning contains the following four items. Item E is Minor Plant MPL twenty-two dash twelve for Little Guys LLC, Benjamin Brink. KTM Design Solutions is the agent to create lots one and two of Powderhouse subdivision. And Planning Commission recommended approval of Minor Plant MPL twenty-two dash twelve with seven conditions. Item F is Minor Plant MPL twenty-two dash fourteen for Alan Knutson, DC. Minor Plant NPL twenty-two dash fourteen for Alan Knutson, D.C. Scott surveyors, to reconfigure lot lines to create lot BR of lot one and lot CR of lot one of Battle Creek Mountain Estate subdivision. Planning Commission recommended approval of Minor Plant NPL twenty-two dash fourteen with six conditions. Item G is Minor Plant NPL twenty-two dash thirteen for Marshall Washington Place LLC, Rodney Johnson, to subdivide and create lot A of lot one of Martha Washington Place subdivision. And Planning Commission recommended approval of Minor Plant NPL twenty-two dash thirteen with five conditions. And finally, item H is Layout Plan LPL twenty-two dash fifteen for Isaac Almanza, Renter Associates is the agent, to subdivide and create lot one of JV subdivision and lot two R of HES number five sixty-three. And Planning Commission recommended to continue Layout Plan LPL twenty-two dash fifteen indefinitely, per the request of the applicant and the surveyor.
Any members of the public that wish to have any of these four items, E to H, removed from the consent calendar so that they can be discussed? Seeing none, any commission members desiring to have any of these items removed? Seeing none, I would take a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar. All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Following planning and zoning matters in our uncontested hearings are those which the Planning Department has not yet received or provided comment contesting the item. Documents for each item have been reviewed by the commissioners and decisions during these hearings will be made based on the information provided in the packet in the short presentation. If we receive comment contesting the item, the matter will be addressed in the same manner as a contested hearing. Jason.
Morning, good commissioners. Jason Thunison, Deputy Planning Director. Agenda item I is rezone twenty-two dash zero nine to rezone seven point one three seven acres from agriculture district to ranchette district. Property owner is Karen Murphy. The applicant is Isaac Almanza. Their surveyor is Renter Associates LLC. Location of the property is two three eight zero zero, Highway three eighty-five. Again, it is seven point one three seven acres. Currently zoned agriculture district. Existing land use is residential. There is one hundred year and floodway on the subject property, and staff recommends to continue rezone twenty-two dash zero nine indefinitely at the applicant's and surveyor's request.
Move to continue.
Got a motion to continue.
Second.
And this is indefinitely? Commissioner Lassiter?
Yes.
Okay.
First half recommendation.
I have a motion and a second to continue indefinitely. Is there any public comments in regard to this request? Seeing none, back to the commission. All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Adam Jerry.
Chuti Masabun, Planning Department. Item J, the Planning Department received a road naming application to name an existing railway, Variden Way. The applicants are Edward and Tanya Mandy. The proposed road name met the requirements from Emergency Services nine-one-one. The Planning Commission concurred with staff's recommendation to approve Variden Way as a road name.
Any public comments in regard to this request? Seeing none, back to the commission. Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Would you like to speak or you just want to answer questions if there's questions?
Answering questions.
Okay, okay. So does any commission member have questions in regard to this? If not, I'd take a motion.
Move to approve, per staff recommendation.
I've got a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. Adam King.
The Planning Department received a road naming application to change the name of an existing railway, Jensen Road to Crooked Creek Road. The applicant is Tyrell Eisenbrand. The proposed road name met the requirements from Emergency Services nine-one-one. The Planning Commission concurred with staff's recommendation to approve Crooked Creek Road as a road name.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Lassiter.
Is there a reason why they wanted to change it?
Yeah.
Let's see, hang on, sorry. It was one day, this road name Jensen Road supposed to be changed a long time ago, but it has never been, like, moving forward. So the applicant spoke with the landowner, the affected landowner, and they all agreed that it is time to move forward with the road name change.
Is Tyrell in the audience? This came through the Planning Commission, and I was on the Planning Commission. And part of the road, or it leaves from Interstate ninety, it's Jensen Road.
Right.
But as you traveled on that road to the south, it becomes Crooked Creek Road. And so they just want to name it so the whole road carries the same name.
Gotcha. I mean, I pass Jensen Road all the time when I go back and forth, so that's why I was wondering.
And all the neighbors were in agreement to have it done. So. Is there any public comment on this? Is there a motion?
Move to approve. Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Item M.
Item L is Planning Unit Development Overlay PU twenty-two dash zero eight to allow a recreational resort to include a recreational vehicle park, vacation home rentals, and a caretaker manager's residence. The applicant and owner is Black Hills Tiny Resort LLC. Jolene Zoller is the representative, and she is in the audience if you have any questions. The property is located at eighty-six seventy-four South Highway sixteen, approximately twenty-eight point two six miles northeast of the intersection of Highway sixteen and Neckyoke Road, and it consists of thirteen point seven nine acres. When looking at the surrounding land uses in the area, staff found that there was no issues with this. This is across from Reptile Gardens. There are several recreational resorts in the area. Just to the south of this, there is a farmer's market, a pumpkin patch, and a wedding venue. So this is consistent with the types of land uses in the area. This was routed around through the inner departmental review. There were no items of concern that came up. And so staff and Planning Commission recommended approval of this planning unit development overlay with twenty-three conditions.
Questions?
Mr. Chair, the only question I would have, there again, we talked about how South Dakota DOT, they're in the process of realigning a lot of ingress and egress off Highway sixteen, so that area there will be impacted, because when you come off of Neckyoke Road, you will only be able to turn right and not go across towards Reptile Garden. And when you leave Reptile Gardens, you're only going to be able to turn right. So I assume that they've, any traffic concerns have been taken or been looked at?
Correct. And this was sent to DOT. They didn't have any. I believe this, these two are going to be closed. So they'll have to exit at Neckyoke.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Got a motion. Is there a second? I'll second. Jolene is in the audience?
Yes, if you have any questions.
Okay. So if anybody has questions, Jolene, be happy to answer any questions. Any public comment in regard to this? Seeing none, back to the commission. All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carried. Item M.
Cody Sack, environmental planner. Item N is Planning and Development Overlay PU twenty-two dash zero six. It is to allow a planning and development overlay to allow a single-family residence to be used as a summer slash winter educational music camp, to allow off-season musical performance concerts each year, and to allow sheds slash cabins to be used for classes and rehearsals and a bed and breakfast on the subject property. This was continued from the May third, twenty-twenty-two Board of Commissioners meeting to allow the applicants time to work with staff to address staff's concerns on Condeck Road. So staff has updated its findings per those meetings with the applicant. The answers are on the screen. I'll read them out loud. Number one, the uses of the proposed PU D overlay district conform with the uses by right or a conditional use permit permitted in agriculture district. Number two, the uses of the proposed PU D overlay district are the type and are located to minimize detrimental influence upon surrounding properties. Number three, the uses of the proposed PU D overlay district meet the standards governing the area density and off-street parking of an agriculture district. Number four, the proposed PU D overlay district involves seventeen acres. Number five, the proposed PU D overlay district is owned by the applicant and managers Brett Wallfish, Katie Smirnova. Number six, Condeck Road is an average of a twelve-foot wide road that is not within a road district or maintained by county highway. A portion of the road is proposed to be constructed to twenty-foot wide with turnarounds and pullouts. And number seven, yes, the county zoning ordinance, section five-ten criteria are listed on the following table. I'll read those answers out loud as well. Number one, the uses of the proposed PU D overlay district are not detrimental or in danger of the public health, safety, or general welfare of the public. Number two, the uses of the proposed PU D overlay district should not substantially impair or diminish the uses, values, or enjoyment of other property in the neighborhood for the proposed uses already permitted. The events take place within the structure, so there should be no, there should not be a nuisance to surrounding properties. Number three, the uses of the proposed PU D overlay districts should not impede the normal orderly development and improvement of the surrounding properties for uses permitted in the district. Number four, the proposed PU D overlay district contains adequate utilities, access to drainage, and other necessary site improvements. Number five, access to the subject properties through a sixty-six-foot wide access easement at Condeck Road and is not maintained by a road district or county highway. The road width on average is nine to twelve feet. The applicants have hired a surveyor and an engineer and a contractor to work on improvements to Condeck Road. Number six, the requested use conformed to all applicable regulations of an agriculture district with an improved PU D overlay district. And number seven, future land use is identified as agriculture, large lot residential in natural areas is consistent with the district. So since the May third meeting, staff has met with the applicants on several occasions to discuss concerns regarding Condeck Road and access to the property. The applicants have hired a surveyor, an engineer, and a contractor to develop and design and upgrade to the road. The applicants are improving Condeck Road just past the portion located on the Forest Service lands to the applicant's driveway. The applicants will improve a portion of the road to a twenty-five-foot wide gravel surface with two turnarounds and several pullouts. The applicants have contacted the South Dakota Department of Transportation regarding concerns of the intersection of Highway sixteen and Condeck Road. SD DOT did not have any concerns with the request. The applicants have provided a daily schedule for the music camp attendees, and the applicants have indicated that the concerts are more of a performance slash showcase type event, and they provided a video to show the commission. So with that, staff is recommending approval of planning unit development overlay PU twenty-two dash zero six with twenty-seven conditions.
So moved.
Questions, Cody? Pardon me?
I said so moved.
You're moving.
What number are we on now?
We are on M.
Okay. Oh, move to deny without prejudice.
I've got a motion to...
I was on the wrong one.
To deny without prejudice. Is there a second to the motion?
I'd second that at this time.
I've got a motion and a second. I have a stack of speaker request forms relative to this. And I will just go in the order that they were presented. Darla Drew. As Darla's coming forward, I might just point out that at the last meeting, we also received testimony in regard to this. I would just ask that, you know, try not to be repetitive in what your comments are being made, but feel free to present your information to the commission.
Thank you. Darla Drew, Rapid City, South Dakota. First of all, just let me comment on, I love how you run your meetings. I'd like to make some changes at the city council. I see no reason to deny this with so many overwhelming yeses, that these people have tried so much to make this work for our community. Their program is exceptional. They bring in great musicians, and I know music. I've made my whole entire career in music. So this is mainly classical. It's not going to disturb the area. The fact that you would say it's a health or safety or general welfare problem, I don't really understand why you'd say that. Can somebody answer me on that? Or do I get to ask questions?
Do you want to ask someone specific?
You. Dad sent you, made the motion.
So I went out and visited the site. The house is magnificent, I'll just tell you that. But when you go into the property, there's not really a big opening to the Forest Service land. That road isn't as, it's wider than the private easements. Went in into the private easements, I don't know if they were made for commercial. I don't, I always believe if the commercial property was there or if there was a property that was there that had a business before people moved in. For me, they have more of the right or the property rights, because they were there before people moved in with them, being there already. On this, the road is not very wide. They want to widen it to twenty feet. There's a waterway that needs a culvert and a bridge at that point into that property, because that road and that area where that water floods. Then it goes into another area where it's undercut already. They've undercut the hill with the two or three spots where they do pullouts. There needs to be consideration when you're undercutting that, that hill's going to fail. There's other people on that road besides that. They would have to put some walls or some kind of retaining walls in that area when they built that road. They also have a waterway below it, which is drainage. The road that goes into their house, there is no, right now, there's no baffles or anything on that road where that water, if it's raining or gets flooded, it's all coming into the neighbor's yard at this time, just because of the incline. So my bottom line is, it's not the music, it's not that they're not amazing kids, it's not that I'm against that kind of music or musical events. My issue is, the infrastructure in that area was made for residential, not commercial. The area is also, like I said, I don't know when the young people came into this, that they understood the whole issue. It's not just about the festival and your house. It's about everything and the infrastructure that goes in in order to make that event possible in that area.
I understand. So I would ask the commission to do everything they can to help make this happen. If I could be so bold as to say, it's like saying no to the Von Trapps coming in and putting up a house and having some concerts there. We would be missing a big advantage to our area, a huge opportunity. I would like to see that you guys work with them to come up with some way that they can actually operate. There won't be that much traffic, as I understand, because, you know, they're not having huge concerts out there. They're going to have some students, they're going to have some shows, they might even have some in town, you know. So until they can get this figured out, I'm sure they'll continue to operate in Rapid City. But I would ask you all to reconsider what you are saying no to on this one particular area. I understand safety, I really do, but if you guys could just work with them, find a way to make this happen, I think it'd be a real improvement for our area.
Ms. Darla, can, hold on just a sec, please. So Ms. Darla, deny without prejudice is not denying. It's denying what is on the table now. So why we're saying that, Ms. Darla, is that deny without prejudice is hopefully we could work with the neighbors or some solution to find that they can end up doing what they want to do, or at least something that the neighbors would agree with. So it's not shutting down. It's, you can't do it like you're doing now.
Do it now. Yeah, I get it. Okay. But I really wanted to talk in favor of them, because I'm so, I'm really passionate about musical things and that what can happen in the Black Hills. It's inspiring just to be here to create music. So I'd just like to see this go forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Darla.
Thank you. Bill Evans.
Howdy, everybody. I reiterate what Darla said. I like your meetings better than ours. Alderman, for going to, they seem to be more entertaining, frankly, and less formal. I like the fact you actually have dialogue with the people, so I'm thank you for demonstrating that. I'm here to advocate also for the Rushmore Music Camp. I remember the first day I came back from the University of Nebraska, and I chose to, rather than go to med school or use my architecture degree, I chose to go back and work in music with the great Milo Winter, Jack Knowles. And it's a choice forty years later, when I retired three years ago, I never, I never regretted. I walked into Stevens the first day, and there sitting in second chair was a little guy, Scott Hadcock.
He just loves you.
And, yeah, he was losing his hair already then.
That's what happened.
But anyhow, that was a... But anyhow, that was a long time ago, and working with these children has been a great, great privilege of my entire existence. And that's one of the reasons that I decided to run for council when I got off is because I wanted to continue that kind of thing. Now, to me, a, a vision is something you have to have and you have to understand really where they're going, and I just wanted, and I agree with what you said, work out the problems. But these guys have got a vision, I had one when I came in and saw those five kits. I also saw the results of it when I retired after forty years. And the fourteen hundred string players, one of who'd won the Chicago Symphony Concerto Competition, it's like the gold medal gymnastics at the Olympics. You can go places, you can go anywhere from here. And of those fourteen hundred students, they're talking about using the top fifteen maybe? And working with them at the highest level of artistry and bringing in people from Israel, from New York, from Florida, from California, to teach them that next level of artistry. Now you had a, a letter from a student, Gabe Spawn, I believe it came into you, because I was forwarded that letter as well. And Gabe was my student, I met him when he was this tall. He went on after working, when I felt I couldn't teach him, I sent him to Katie and Brett to get to the next level, he was very inspirational, went on to the University of Minnesota, got a degree in music and nuclear physics. And he spent last year over in Switzerland, the Super Collider. But he's still playing his viola, now those are the kind of kids we want to attract here. Now, I understand the opposition that the residents have, I get it, we own a ranch in Harding County, we don't want anything to change either. But change is coming to this town, as you well know. And the trajectory we're on as a city is, and a county, is either going to be positive, really great, or it's going to be average or negative. Now, to me, about the least impactful thing you could do along that road is have a couple van loads a day of straight A students headed for Harvard and Sanford with their violins sitting there playing. Because they could play for a million years, pack up their thing and leave, and there would be no impact on the area. Now, the reality is other people aren't so generous with their concern for what kind of activities go there. So as far as being a good neighbor to the citizens that are concerned, I do get it, but I think it's about the best neighbor you could ever have. So these decisions we make, I talked about the trajectory, we have the same problems with the council. The decisions we make today affect where we're going twenty, fifty, a hundred years from now. Now, I look at New Mexico, do we want to be Gallup or Santa Fe, you know? Do we want to be Fresno or Santa Barbara? And these are choices that have been made in the past that send people on the trajectory, I don't know if you know this, but Santa Barbara, among the most desirable locations on the planet, became that way because after the earthquake, both Fresno and Santa Barbara were leveled. In Santa Barbara, they said, if you build to a certain style of code, you're paying this kind of tax. If you build to the mission style, which it's famous for, your taxes will be lower. Fresno didn't do that, now which city is the great one? So we're making these decisions that have an impact a hundred years later. So I'm hoping you see that we're leading to something, and this is not a giant scale activity. It's going to be very small scale for highly selective people, and really, I don't think anybody nearby is going to even notice that they're there, to be honest with you.
Mr. Chairman.
And that's all I want to say, but I hope you decide somehow we can make this work for these kids.
Commissioner Ross, go ahead.
So what I'd like to point out is in nineteen ninety-three, I bought a house on a cabin in Rochford. And the reason I bought that, because sometimes people just want to get away from people. And you have to have, that's my getaway spot. Because I know Rochford is just, there's nobody there. And I think when these folks, the landowners, and I think we can all agree that the commission and the landowners have no problem with the program. I, I think it's a wonderful program and the neighbors, I believe they feel the same. But I, when the neighbors moved up there, there was a trail through that property, so it kind of made it unique because it was almost like you're going in on a jeep trail. And then you came to a dead end Forest Service gate. And that unique nature, my only concern is that we'd, we'd be changing that, and that's not what they bought into. And if you do a twenty foot road, you're going to have to do side setbacks, you're going to have a thirty, thirty-five foot scar going through there. That's going to change the dynamics of the neighborhood, so. Love the program, but I just also want to make sure that we're taking care of the neighbors and their concerns.
Yeah, I think if people had been to the performances, I've been going for several years. I mean, the crowds are very, very small, I know that the nuns are very upset that they're leaving Saint Martins because they've been hosting it out there and it's a very genteel sort of activity. So I don't think on the scale, maybe people have a misconception about how impactful it might be because it's really very, very minimal, as far as I can tell, at least it has been in the past. And so I could see that if it did grow into something that's bigger, perhaps they would be relocating and giving to a more accessible spot, but I think this stage of the game, the impact would be, I don't think anybody would even notice it after it started, to be honest with you.
Mr. Chairman.
Just want to let you know.
Commissioner Ross, have you driven up there?
I have.
You have?
I have.
Okay, I'm just going to put this out there, I've got four kids that are, well, three that are violinists, the fourth one was, but now he wants to do guitar, so he's, he's learning guitar now, so. Yeah, right, he was a violinist and says, no, I just want to be the guitarist.
Antonio was one of my students too that was here, so they're everywhere.
My, one of my brothers is actually a, a very well, he's not well known, when he was in high school, he was, he made satin strings, they went to some national performances and things like that, so. I have a very big love of what's going on up there, you know, so I'm, I'm not against the program in and of itself, but when you drive up there, my concern is, is that road and being able to get in and get out if there's a fire, we know that there's been fires in that area before. And trying to get fire apparatus in, when you're trying to get people out for evacuation, that's going to be, that's my biggest concern is the safety of those kids, if they're up there, fire apparatus is trying to come in, they're trying to get out. And if someone loses their life, if they get injured because of that, that's where I have a concern, so until, at a minimum, we get to a point where we can say, yes, there's that, I can't vote for it. Now, I will say that my kids currently, they go to someone's house to get private lessons. And I would think that that's not going to be a problem, to be having somebody come up and get private lessons, you know, very small scale, and so I think they can still do what they would like to do on a very small scale. Just like if any of the neighbors wanted to have friends over for, you know, a Fourth of July party or something like that, but not a very large congregation, that's where, that's kind of where I'm at with it at this moment in time, based on the infrastructure that's up there.
Well, from what I can tell, and from what I've seen over the years, is most of the kids fly in. They don't drive individual cars, they have a couple vans that the kids are hauled in, so. I think that solves a lot of the traffic problems as far as escape, I know that we ran the orchestra camp and still are up there at the Wesleyan Church Camp. And it's fifty times this big, and we haven't had any problems getting kids out of there over the last thirty years, I believe, in running that, so. I think it's a matter of scale and people may have a misconception of all the, you know, problems with traffic that it may entail, so. Really look at it, I think it's going to be a great thing, it's kind of things we want to have happen, like Darla said, in Rapid City. These are clean activities, they provide something positive for the area, and they leave no footprint.
So, Chairman.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ross.
One more, one more question for Mr. Evans. So how many people are you thinking are going to be going in and out at one time? I mean, are you, are you thinking that there's going to be ten kids, they're going to stay up there for two days? I mean, I guess I haven't really got the whole concept of it yet, I, I know there was supposed to be a festival and that wasn't really what was going to happen. So they wanted to have two vacation home rentals on both sides so they can make extra money.
I think they're in a better position to answer that with the stats on what they do, from what I've seen, it involves maybe twelve students and four or five staff people that they fly in each year, I might be wrong with my numbers. Am I about right, it's up a little more?
Eighteen, eighteen and twenty-four.
Okay, and so, and they're, they're regularly there. Now, a couple times, they will have concerts that attract some people. I don't think the crowds have ever been that large, maybe forty or fifty, and I don't know if that, those kind of things would be held up, those are questions for those people, but.
So, here's, here's with me, so. I really don't have the full concept because I keep hearing different stories every time. I had people calling me, and you guys are right, it's amazing, the kids are amazing, what you're doing is amazing. It's development part of it, not the kids and what they're doing, is that, that's what we're here for today. So people need to understand that we think the kids are amazing, we've seen them, we've talked to them, we've heard about them, and we understand they are. The bottom line is, there's more than just music involved here. There's a development in which that music is going to be performed at. And there's neighbors that have property rights, and there's easements on these roads that doesn't say, okay, it can be used for commercial. With the understanding that anybody that lived out there, if you had your houses there and someone decided to do a commercial development, just because you love what they do for their business, doesn't mean that you want that business in, on your private easement, on your residential area, does that make sense? So, I'm with everybody on, on the music and, and what you're doing, and it's amazing, and the dream is amazing. It's the infrastructure and the development in an area that I don't think people are understanding, I don't know if it was made for that. I've seen volleyball courts out there, I've seen different, well, not courts, but, you know, where people do have stuff out there for their families and different events. But, they're building a seven thousand square foot house. I know that there can be some adjustment where people are having their events and doing their stuff for their families and different stuff, that they could probably do their seven thousand square foot house and do some stuff still, without putting vacation home rentals and freaking out the neighbors and, you know, thinking they're going to have this big hoopla out there. So, that's why I said deny without prejudice, so maybe we could talk to everybody and, and get this thing so it's reasonable, so they could do what they need to do and the neighbors don't be threatened that they're going to have fifty cars on that road or twenty-five cars going back and forth every day, so.
Well, I would suggest you maybe chat with Reenie, who's been hosting them out at, at Terrasonic to Saint Martins, for those of us who've been around here a thousand years. And she could probably give you a better idea of just how sort of genteel the whole thing is and how really unimpactful these things are, because they view Saint Martins for a couple of years, and I think she could give you an idea, a better idea of how that effect would be on the neighbors, because they could be saying the same thing about that whole, the Saint Martins development out there.
And maybe we could have a meeting somehow with the neighbors and, and the group, with her speaking, and then we could also prove to the neighbors, you know, if that's the facts, that it's not going to be that big of an impact.
I'd suggest that, because she would definitely know, she's hosted them.
So Phil, I'll, I'll address you because you're here, but it's really for the whole audience. In the opposition that I've received for this, I don't think there's been one that's questioned whether or not the music festival itself is not a great idea. There was, there's no opposition to that whatsoever. It's strictly on the location and how you get in and out, safety factors and so forth.
I, I totally get that, and perhaps we can see make it work, but I do think there's a misconception about the scale of what's going on, and maybe you would reconsider if you have a study with that.
Commissioner Ross, go ahead.
So I've heard the word commercial, and, and the way I look at commercial, commercial is, it's an enterprise where there's for profit. And my understanding, this is not for profit. But when I look at commercial, it's just got a commercial overtone. When we first saw those conceptual drawings and you got the main house, two A-frames and eleven cabins and the parking area of that, when I first saw it, I thought it was probably a campground or RV park, but, so that's, I think that's what gets a little scary when the neighbors saw that. They said, this is really not what we want, and I think this is how this whole thing got off track. But I just want to emphasize, to me, it's not commercial, if they were making money on it, that was commercial. To me, this is not commercial, but it, I'm just saying it appears to have that commercial overtone.
Well, you have to understand, those of us that go into music myself, Darla, we're really sort of missionaries, we're certainly not doing it for the money, at least at this scale. Or if you, if you were at the civic center the other night, you might have thought, well, that's not the case. But, you know, I see these guys on the same kind of mission I had, they want to just do enrichment of life things. And again, hopefully these problems can be worked out, because I can see where you're coming from as well. I think a little more research and, I think speaking with Reenie might work. I don't know whether you'd know her, but she manages that whole Catholic diocese retreat center out there.
Thank you, Bill.
All right, thank you.
Doug Zog.
One of Darla's kids, who's in my group, one and Emmy, by the way. Morning Commissioners, everybody knows me, Doug Zog, resident one three two four nine Klondike Road. I've owned my property for about eleven years up there. We built the house six years ago, so we spent a lot of time up there. To me, what they want to do is just not consistent with the existing land use. This is a commercial business, because they are making money on it. They have to, because otherwise it would not exist. You know, they're going to have a Airbnb or lodge or whatever you want to call it, but we still don't even know how many rooms are in the two A-frames. So there's room for, you know, twenty, thirty plus people. And on their website, they even stated that if somebody bought one of the sheds for seventy-five hundred dollars, they could have up to twenty-four people stay there for the weekend. So it is for profit. And it, it is just, it's not a single family home, I don't, I don't care how you look at it, it's not a single family home. And, and the road, when I, when I first built my house, down by the two ponds, when you first come in, the water ran across that road for three months straight, six years ago. So you're, you're definitely going to have to do something different with that area, I don't know where they plan on starting the construction at, but it, it's probably going to start before that. And everything downhill from the road is all wetlands, just, just like Deb was stating. All that dirt that they pull off of that hillside is going to end up down on that side. And the, the current pullovers that they did put in, there's three of them, are already sloughing off. If you drive up and look at them, and, and all that dirt is coming down towards the road. And then I don't know what, I don't know what, I don't know at what point you have to have a guardrail. But that road in two spots, it probably drops close to thirty feet on one side, and that's basically straight down, so I don't know what the rule is for a guardrail, but to me, that would probably have to be a possibility as well. But that's all I got, it won't keep you long.
Mr. Chairman.
So Doug, when I said commercial, I mean that they're teaching, as far as I understand, unless somebody's telling me a lie, they're not charging for that, that's free.
That's, that's only.
There might be some other venue in there, but when I relate, when I said commercial, I simply meant they're not charging to teach those students, unless I'm wrong.
If, if you're talking about the camp, but they are going to charge people for staying there.
Well, I, I didn't get into that, I just.
Okay, I, I thought you were stating overall.
Saying I admire them for doing the, the teaching for free, because I admire that part.
No, I, I do as well, but I thought you meant like overall.
But I was just talking about.
Yeah, sure.
So that they get some credit for, you know, doing that for free.
Sure, I understand.
Thank you, Doug.
Thank you, Doug.
Next one I have is Sharon, not sure if I got this last name right, Papen, sir?
I'm Sharon Papen, and I live at twelve sixty-five Range View Circle. And I've known Brett and Katie for some time, they have taught violin lessons right next door. And there was no disruption or any added traffic. I did not know this was even happening until I had a conversation with Brett and Katie. I've attended their professional violin and piano concerts. There were about fifty people in attendance, which was held at various places in Rapid City. Brett and Katie have been wonderful neighbors and are here, as far as I'm concerned, to be servants of this community. And from what I understand, it's free tuition when they work with the children. They are dedicated, gifted, along with exceptional expertise. I feel honored that I even know them. And they are hard workers, have a love for music, and students are outstanding citizens, and they are outstanding citizens of the Black Hills. I can assure you that there has been some talk about some buildings on that property, I've been out there. And it's basically there for storing instruments or for students to practice with their violin, and they do practice a lot. The school, again, is tuition-free, involving a small amount of well-behaved students for a short period of time. Please allow this beautiful young couple to give children of the Black Hills and Rapid City area an educational, refreshing music opportunity that could affect your own children and grandchildren to enhance their own possible musical talent, and thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any questions? Thank you. Next one I have is Judy Rody.
Good morning, I'm Judy Rhodey, and we have property on Klondike Road. Um, today you're gonna hear a lot of heartfelt parents, board members, et cetera, that have very passionate feelings about music. You might even see s- some tears that pull on your heartstrings. But it is definitely not about the music. Um, in one way or another, everybody enjoys music. Anybody that's alive is gonna enjoy music. We're not opposed to music, just the location they wanna propose having it in, using it in a commercial arena, not as a residential use as it always has been. We, as landowners, purchased our property many years ago with the express purpose of getting as far away from anything remotely commercial. Anyone in this room that did the search and made the investment, and then had it threatened, would feel the same way as we do. There are commercial areas that are specific, um, that are made specifically for these kinds of venues. The wallfishes have never, uh, reached out to us, and I believe it's because we're out of the fif- five hundred mile, or five hundred feet area. Um, but we will have to drive by that huge facility every time we go out there. Um, it was mentioned in past meetings that expenses went up for the past couple of years, and now they needed avenues to help them pay for it. I understand that they're not charging for the music on the festival, and I think that's awesome. But I also do know that a bed and breakfast or Airbnb is a highly profitable business right now, worldwide. Um, we've all been in a position where we have wanted something we couldn't afford. The wise choice is to scale down or find a new plan. Their financial decisions are unfortunate, but not our concern. They went around this totally wrong, in my view, and went with the idea that it was better to do it and be forgiven than to do it correctly in the first place. Um, rumor has it that they looked at another property before purchasing, um, and that, that current land, uh, was not allowed for, uh, or it was not appropriate for what they wanted to use it for. So they sorta had some idea that they, what kind of land that they needed in order to make this work. And I understand they're relatively long and reyoung, and they've made mistakes that should have been avoided. And I, it just makes me wonder, where were their board of directors, who were supposed to be directing them and helping them make decisions, and it's very unfortunate for them that that didn't happen. Um, everyone makes mistakes, but there is still time to correct this one. Ignorance of the law is no excuse, and you are still responsible for your actions. We welcome them as new homeowners and hope they enjoy the remoteness, the peace, and the tranquility that the rest of us have come to enjoy. Um, please don't allow them to take that away from us. Our collective dreams are as important as theirs, and were established long before they made their decisions. Um, maybe St. Martin's is the place they should stay. They, it's been noted that they wanted them to stay. Maybe that's where they should be. And I appreciate you considering my thoughts and my feelings today.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Roskin.
Judy, you're a realtor, right?
I, I ended my license the end of this last, I was in real estate for twenty-five years.
You know, I tried to look at both sides, so I just want you to know that they're musicians.
Yes.
They're not, uh, developers. And I think how this all started is that they had, uh, some kind of an idea, and they got a conditional use permit. Then they went to our planning and zoning department, and they said, "Well," it, and they started, uh, identifying the different things they wanted to do, and I think it was, they were directed to, uh, instead of going back and amending it, just, you know, everything you might wanna do, not, it was not, that was everything they're gonna do, but put it all in there and go for it, and then if, if it happens, and, so I don't really blame them, uh, a hundred percent. I, I, I think they had good intentions. I don't think this was deliberate. And the, and the conditional use permit, uh, I don't know what the original conditional u- use permit was, and that might be the direction that we gotta go in the future, but uh, I just don't, I don't think they did anything intentional.
Well, and I don't know that they did anything intentional either, but I think how they went around doing what they did do probably wasn't appropriate. And now it's led to a lot of, a lot of problems, and, um, you know, we just wanna protect our property for what we purchased it for and not have it turned into something different. You know, we've all invested a lot of money out there and a lot of time. And now this huge building comes in, and the other buildings, and bed and breakfast, and Airbnb, and it changes the entire feel of that property. Even changing the road would change that feel of that property. And we want it to stay quiet, and not a lot of people there, and just leave it as, as we purchased it. Just, we just wanna keep it as it was.
And that's why on the table is "deny without prejudice," so we hear you.
Okay, and, and the other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next one I have is, is it Ala Smirnova?
Hi. Uh, my name is Ala Waismirnova. I am Katie's mom. And I'm not going to talk about music and the benefits for this community. Uh, even though I graduated from the music school, and, you know, now I am in a different area of science and research at the School of Mines. I have many students, who are, by the way, a lot of them are involved in music program at the School of Mines, so I'm not going to talk about this. I'm talking about safety first. So, we're talking about the roads, right? The roads that are going, I mean, sorry, that are leading to their house. What distance are we talking about, do you know? Quarter of a mile. Quarter of a mile, it's like, you know, from here to, to the parking lot. That's the distance of the road. The question number two, uh, when you drive this road, there are trees on both sides. You cannot see any of these houses. Those people who are talking about their privacy, they cannot see this house. If these guys, Katie and Brett, wouldn't have go legally through this conditio- conditional use, no one, never ever notice it. Because all these eight years, uh, my house, their current house, other houses in Rapid City were used for training students to do their, really, just, you know, to, to perform professional training. So, about the size of the house. Uh, Brett received an inheritance from his, uh, relative who died from cancer. So that was their decision. When they got it, they decided to use, to, you know, really to use it for, you know, building something that could accommodate a small number of people, not more than twenty, and also faculty. So, both of these buildings, people are saying, "Oh, you know, huge buildings." This is not for Katie and Brett. These are for, these kids to live in this house for free. Because when they were renting, uh, dorms at Black Hills State University, these kids uh, were paying a lot of money. They're going to keep these kids in their house. They're not going to drive back and forth. It's one time, they're coming in, they stay there, they're coming out in three weeks, once in a year. And plus, this is going to happen in July, not in spring, when people are saying about water flowing through. There was no question, in July, we don't have anything. Plus, if someone wants to, uh, if, if something happens, let's say fire, there will be a road twenty, uh, feet wide road. There is no question about it. And those who are talking about the soil moving down after the rain, you should see how this road is made. It's made with, uh, huge, uh, pieces of rocks that basically protect it. They can put like cement uh, in between and cemented the whole thing. It's already there, it's, it's in place. So there is no, no question about safety, no question about privacy, because I, these people who are complaining, "Can they see this house? Can they see this road?" They cannot see it in summer, it's all green. And again, if this wouldn't go legally, no one ever complain about it, because they will never see it again. Plus, about, uh, free students. Yes, students are free, and Katie and Brett, for eight years, they never paid themselves a salary. Never, for eight years. So they pay salary for their faculty or, uh, high-level, uh, performance, you know, people who are coming from Israel. This year, there will be a person, uh, a guy who is a world-renowned violinist. This is an asset for this community. He is a guy, just check online. This is a person who probably could perform in New York, but he is coming here because of Katie and Brett, because, uh, he was one of the professors, Katie professors at Stony Brook. So we have a young couple who is highly motivated, highly professional, much higher professional, the professional level is compared to Juilliard. That, that's what we have here. Do we want this school? Does this school is going to affect any privacy? No. There will be no effect in terms of privacy. Don't talk about water flowing through this bridge. They are not going to do it in, in spring. Uh, don't talk about number of cars, because this will be one car in, you know, uh, let's say van with five, ten students, once a year, uh, in July, in three weeks, then coming out. That, that's all. So where is the concern about privacy or safety? And again, quarter of a road, I mean, quarter of a mile, just like, think about it, from here to, to, to the parking lot. That, that's what it is.
Mr. Chair.
Do you have any questions?
I have a question for you.
Yes.
I understand what you're saying.
Yes.
And you're saying it's one van, ten students, once a year.
Yes.
What we have before us is a summer-winter educational music camp, up to four off-season musical performances, concerts per year, shed cabins for classes, rehearsals, and a bed and breakfast. That's more than what you're stating right there.
Right, but this is not going to happen. You know, ask Katie, am I right?
We can, we can take it.
Yes, and we have a person who can answer this question. So, as it was emphasized, I, within the eight-year period, there was not a single concert that exceeded fifty people. Plus, when you talk about four concerts, you know how these concerts are organized. So Katie and Brett perform at each of these concerts. They need to prepare their own program. Do you know how much time it takes? They will never be able to do four. It was done only because one of the commissioners suggested them to make maximum. Like maybe, you know, I don't know, what does it mean, maximum? They cannot do it physically. They don't have this goal. They, they don't have any interest in it, because they want a small number of students, and they want a high, highly professional performance. And by the way, they performed at, uh, at Dallas Center twice a year, so they don't need this, you know. And Dallas Center, they don't, they don't charge them. They have people who, uh, are attending these concerts. But, you know, what's, what's the problem? If, if people around this house are concerned about privacy, and they don't want to see these concerts, you know, these guys, they know everyone in this city, every single church, every single concert hall was ready to, you know, to accept them because of, of their professional, uh, level of professional performance.
Mr. Chair.
Any questions? Commissioner Roskin.
So you said a quarter mile.
Yes.
From here to the parking lot. A quarter mile is one thousand three hundred and twenty feet.
You're right.
That's.
Not even close.
Uh, not even close. Just to put it in perspective.
But that, that's, I, I, I don't know, maybe Katie and Brett can answer it, but it, when you drive the cars, the first part of the road, a little one, and it, the whole road takes like two minutes to drive. So the first part is, you know, it's, that doesn't belong to any of the neighbors. And then there is a little, like, literally small, and I, I just raised this question because I don't know the exact answers. I'm not going to, you know, to make it up. Just, I want someone to show the distance. What distance we're talking about from the coming in and coming out? Because this is like, really, you drive the car, it's like two minutes' drive. Plus.
Well, I, I've been on, I, all of us have been on the road.
Yeah.
And we know that the, the blind spots and so forth. In fact, I met a, uh, vehicle coming out that had to pull into one of the cutouts, and, uh, they couldn't get far enough in for me to even get by the first time. So I know what, what the road is like, I know what the bridge is like, or the water flows over it and so forth, so. Uh, and I think we all understand the distance that, that it is.
That's good, because the flow, what I haven't heard it before, it's, it's concern for them to live in this house, not for Rashmore Music Festival, and not concerns for their relatives, I mean, neighbors and, you know, neighbors and their relatives.
Thank you.
Uh, so, Cody's second environmental planner, I believe that K.L. J. sent a, a bid, uh, the contractor or the, the engineer for two thousand feet. Uh, so they'd be improving two thousand feet of road, but the engineer can speak to that later.
Okay.
So, just a question for Cody. So, um, when you look at the easement, it's a packet, it's not two pieces of paper, if you read the whole easement, guys. Um, it says on here, for the Forest Service, once it becomes commercial, that person that does the commercial improves that road, not the Forest Service. So are you doing the twenty-foot road, and you've taken out those two po- the two posts, and you're gonna make it commercial, right? Because that barely gets a car. So if you have to have people through there at the same time, that's not gonna work. If you're gonna go down a road that is on a forest easement, and it says right here, "The commercial user is responsible for all required road maintenance during the period of the commercial use." So we're gonna tell them it's residential now. Hold on a second, ma'am. Okay, then you're gonna crawl across a waterway that's for one person to, to go at one time. So if there's a fire, if there's an emergency, uh, your kids and, and them having their residents or the residents understand that. But when you involve other kids, when you involve other people, ma'am, that's huge for me. It's a safety factor, because you have to get them in and out.
Okay.
Okay, so it is a concern. It's not just about music. For me, it's about development, ma'am.
Of course, yes, I understand.
Well, no, you're not getting that. It's making, it's making me kinda mad, because it's not just about your kids. It's about the people that they are going to affect in the, in the surrounding area, the residents that live there that can't get out, the, the kids and the people that you decided that that's a great area for them to be. Uh, you have two different housing units, you have their seven thousand square foot house. How do we know how many people are coming in and out? Um, why I said "deny without prejudice" is, geez, someone tell us the full facts on this. Because on a twenty-foot road, it's huge. Okay, no, she's, she's okay. Um, my passion is the same as yours. Ours is to protect the people that might be affected, not by their music, but by what's gonna happen on the infrastructure for them to get their back, ma'am.
Yes.
That's what I'm trying to tell you.
Yes.
Well, no one's disputing your kids are great kids and, and that. It makes a huge difference for us up here, that we are protecting the neighbors, plus your children, plus the people that they're gonna have in there. To me, once you start affecting other people's lives, and then adding more to it, that road and that, that area has to be able to support that. That's all we're asking for up here.
Yes, absolutely.
Because that's our job.
I agree with you one hundred percent. I, and you know, I'm working at the School of Mines, safety is number one issue at the school, so don't. I'm listening about, I mean, hearing about it all the time. So we just need to find some sort of, you know, hmm, agreement with neighbors. We need to think about the road. We need to have a plan of evacuation, by the way, and figure out how many cars exactly are going to move in and out, how many cars, uh, how many neighbors are going to use this road in certain amount of time. Absolutely, this is just one, number one.
Well, ma'am, that's what, that's what "deny without prejudice" means. It means they can come back. We can find out that solution. So no one's trying to shut them down today, in a sense. We're trying to say to the neighbors, we're trying to tell, um, you and, and, and the people that wanna do this music festival and the kids, let's find some resolution with this, because it's not gonna work as it is right now.
Yeah, absolutely.
And for us, based on the infrastructure.
Yes, absolutely. I agree with you, and we need to have a plan, like a evacuation plan, as we have, you know, at the School of Mines, so.
Sorry, I didn't mean to.
Or did you have something else?
I, I, I think you're nice, ma'am.
Question for me.
Commissioner Edgott, did you have more questions for Cody?
No, I just said.
Okay. Uh, Kevin Conner. Stacy Potter?
Hello, Commissioner, thank you for, for hearing me. Um, I have had, uh, excuse me, opportunity of being, uh, part of the Black Hills music scene since two thousand. Hello, Commissioner, thank you for hearing me. Um I have had the, excuse me, opportunity of being a part of the Black Hills music scene since two thousand nine. Um and actually before, I had my own professional piano studio. I taught piano lessons for ten years. I am a former classical pianist. I studied at Black Hill State University. Um and have had the opportunity to work with Brett and Katie. Um we actually did a Christmas performance with them last year, and they were amazing. Um to say that it's not about the music to a musician is, uh somebody would not have to be not be a musician to understand that it's all about the music. That's all we do. Um as Bill Evans and Don La Drew know, we eat, sleep, and breathe music. Um Brett and Katie's vision for, we we were, we were involved with them when they were talking about doing it, and they were very interested in making sure that their vision coincided with the beauty of the Black Hills. That was the reason they chose this area to to have their school is to enhance the beauty of the Black Hills. Um I think it's really important for people to know that, that was their intention to bring people here to the Black Hills, to bring beauty to the Black Hills. And I I think that this is a very painful thing for them right now to have this happening to their vision. Um I just would like to advocate for them, and I hope that we can find a way to get around the physical part of what's going on with their with their vision in light of what they're trying to bring here. A a Juilliard-level school in the Black Hills. I would, I would ask all of you, if you've not attended one of their performances, to please do so. And you'll understand what they're wanting to do, what they're wanting to do with their students. Um that's, that's really all I have to say, you know, being a part of the the music scene, that's, I think it would be a beautiful thing for them to be able to do what they're trying to do here in the hills.
Thank you, ma'am.
Questions? Thank you. Next one I have is Lisa Koliski. Uh Megan Hegel.
Good morning. I'm Megan Hegel. I'm a student of the Rushmore Music Festival. I have been for three years. Um I'll keep it quick. I think a lot of really great points have already been made on on both sides, actually. I grew up in the Black Hills. I understand kind of the fear of like everyone's privacy being taken away. I grew up at Sheran Lake Road. They're developing all of that right now. Uh I don't live there anymore, but I know it was kind of irritating to see all of that happening. But um the Rushmore, I, the Rushmore Music Festival is a home, and it's a family. And just because it's a little bit bigger than normal family, doesn't mean it should be allowed to be at this home that they're trying to create out there. And um I mean, you can, you can call it like tear jerking or whatever, but it's, it's really true. I met people that I hope to have friendships with for the rest of my life there. Um I met my former teacher there. I studied with him for two years. Uh they're the people who helped me uh get to school in New York, um studying child performance. There's a Juilliard student here who can probably say the same, but um yeah, it just seems a little interesting that a road that needs some work and neighbors who are kind of nervous about their privacy being um taken away when it's, it's really not. Like I've, I've been up there too. I went up in December when it was still very unfinished. It's very unfinished now. All of these things are in progress, so um putting the brakes on now just seems like a very unfair thing.
Mr. Chair. Well, thank you for put that in perspective, you know, the home, that's a whole different angle on that. Because I, I know, I actually knew a family in Rapid City that had twenty-two kids.
Wow.
Not all natural, some adopted, but uh.
We are less than that, so.
So, you know, when you put it that way, it uh makes a person think a little bit different, so thank you.
Well, and I mean, I can obviously speak to the schedule that they, they tend to run and like the activity, the in and out and everything, the numbers. I I have that experience firsthand. I was never a counselor and administrator, but I'm familiar with the administrative side of things. And I know Brett and Katie very well, and I know that if this were allowed to continue, even though there's no one like saying like, oh, that you have to like do all these things. They're gonna try their best to make it as convenient as possible to their neighbors and to be as polite as possible. It's just the way that they do things. They are very considerate people, but they also have their own goals that they want to accomplish, so.
So Megan, you you made mention of unfair, uh that they're at this point, I think is what you're referring to, at this point of development or construction. Um you know, of their property. And as a former real estate broker myself, I've dealt with a number of times when people have come and to buy property. Uh but the property wasn't either zoned or they needed a variance. And so typically, what they would do in those instances is they would make a contingency on the offer. They would purchase based on the fact that either the current owners could change the zoning or provide that variance, or that they would have that opportunity to do that before the actual purchase went through. So that they knew exactly what they could do when they ended up with the final purchase on that property. So we weren't involved at that point in time of when they purchased the property and when they developed their plans of what they wanted to do with it. That came later, and so I I don't think there's anything that we've done that's that's unfair as far as the, as they're concerned, so, thank you. Michael Loos.
Morning, Mr. Chair.
Morning.
Members of the board. My name is Mike Loos, uh law office of Claiborne, Loos and Sabers, privileged to represent Brett and Katie here this morning. Uh I understand that the motion on the table is to continue uh or deny without prejudice. Understand that there is some leaning in that direction. Certainly, we wouldn't object to that. And and frankly, we're grateful uh for members of the board that would keep an open mind during that process. Um I think there's a lot maybe that the board doesn't quite understand about the details. So I'm very appreciative uh of the motion and the opportunity to uh maybe fill in the blanks. And so if if you'll indulge me, maybe we can get ahead of what we present at a continued meeting on the tent or any other time. Um because I do want to make sure the details sort of matter. Um uh a- and I get the concern of the neighbors, and nobody wants, uh I I believe Commissioner Haggard called it a hoopla. Uh nobody wants a hoopla in their backyard, and and I want to assure the board that this is in in no reasonable definition of of hoopla. Others who have attended the camp and others that know of these uh fine young people, they can, they can speak to what this is. But this is gifted uh young people uh training intensely in an immersive way uh over the course of three weeks. So let's go through the 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 details, because I do think that's important. And 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 if I might, others have spoken to the character of these folks. This is not about them, but I have come to know them as their exceptional people. Um and to say that they've gone about this process wrong or that they've done, you know, missteps along the way, I I, with respect, I think that's unfair. I mean, that's really unfair. They've, they've worked with county staff and and your, your body uh to be as responsive and diligent as they possibly could be. Okay, this, this is the first time they've, these are artists, right? They're highly intelligent artists, but they haven't gone through this process. So they rely on staff to to answer questions and provide information, and I hope staff would agree. It, it, they've been very, very accommodating, very transparent, very responsive. Um so this is a, they, they took some action and now they're asking for forgiveness. I mean, that's just, uh, that's not why we're here, so that's unfair. Um what I think we uh, a- and it's on the, on the board, the um the application, the the items that the uh the board must consider uh are are all addressed, and the staff has recommended approval, including everything that we've, we've talked about today. All the concerns about ingress and egress and changing the character and commercial or not commercial, those have, those have all been addressed by staff. These are the experts. The, the, these people keep us from making decisions that are, that are arbitrary, right? There's a, there's a criteria, there's a checklist that makes sure any possible interest is considered. Um so back to the details. We've got a three-week camp, okay? We've got a three-week summer camp, and the staff, based on their communication with Brett and Katie, have limited the number of students. They don't drive vehicles. They stay on the property, okay? So we're talking about less than five percent of the year, where I'm gonna set the bed and breakfast aside. But the, the hosting the music camp is three weeks. Once the, once the house is completed, it's a drop-off day and a pickup day. And so the road, while a legitimate concern for staff, is really going to be a, a, a minimal impact on safety or or the neighbors. Because we need to understand the scope. It's, it's three weeks. This year, with the, with the board's indulgence, the camp would be, we would have a couple of vehicles going back and forth late in the morning to early in the evening, pickup, drop-off. But we're still only talking about three weeks. This is not an ongoing venture. Once the home is completed, every kid will be housed at the location for the three weeks. Again, less than five percent of the entire year, are we actually exercising the rights that we hope the, the, the board ultimately grants us? Um the cabins are practice areas. They're not winterized. There's no plumbing. This is a, an opportunity for a kid, thi- this is a world I've, I have no familiarity with. Uh Commissioner Astor, you, you'd have a better familiarity with high-level musical talent. I love music, but that's not me. But if you're, if you're this level, you want to practice where you're not hearing ten or fifteen other kids. The cabins are used for one-on-one or one-on-two instructions, or for a kid to go practice to be alone, okay? They're temporary. They're not going to be part of some campground. These are, they're storage i- in the off-season and during the camp. During the three weeks, they will just be a place where a kid can go and practice their, practice their instruments. The bed and breakfast part of the P U D speaks for itself. I think the board is very familiar with the ordinances uh regarding bed and breakfast, okay? Staff takes no issues, so long as they comply with the ordinance, and that's, I, I think it's, that one's sort of straightforward. The performances, again, I mean, the details matter, and I understand the concerns of the, of the board, because there's only so much time in a day, and believe me, I've, I've gone through the submittal for this P U D. I mean, there's a lot there. Um but just so you know, they were advised, hey, you know, put, shoot for the moon and put your, wha- what's the most you could ever do? And they put a hundred, four times a year. They've never once had an event that's half of that, okay? And if that's a concern, as we reconvene, um they'll, they'll take it off the table. It's just, it's an opportunity, again, four times in three hundred and sixty-five days, where some of these kids' talent could be showcased to a wider audience. It'd be like a, a, a kid that goes to a sports camp wanting to play a game, right? I practice eight hours a day. I wanna, I wanna get in the game and show folks what I can do. So again, numbers matter. Th- this is not a full-blown concert. This is forty to fifty people, four days of the year, yes, in and out of of the road, which staff has addressed. But tho- those are the details, right? The, the, the idea of the entirety of the P U D is less than five percent of the year, setting aside the bed and breakfast, okay? So the camp, three weeks, the concerts, four days max. And if we've got a problem with thirty, forty, fifty people, which would equate to twenty to twenty-five cars, we'll take it off the table, okay? We appreciate the board having an open mind to let us get you to yes, okay? I, I don't think you should require them to take that off the table, but they could.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Roskin.
So item, there's twenty-seven items. Item three, there, that there will be no more than two music camps per calendar year, not to exceed twenty-four students, ten falconry, falconry members and two chaperones. That there'd be no more than four pers- four performances per year, not to exceed one hundred people. And so I've had the question addressed to me, what if there's four hundred people? I mean, what if? I know, but what if? Who's gonna take care of that? Uh the county's certainly not gonna place it, and I don't think it's the neighbor's responsibility to place it. So those are the questions that people are asking me. I don't have the answer.
Right.
But it's, it's not finite. I mean, this is infinite. It's something that could happen, and we don't know what the future brings. And these are, you know, these are the same concerns that you see with the vocational rental. You, you never know when you're gonna get that one person in there that's, that could screw everything up. And so without a, a detailed set of rules and somehow to enforce that, these are some of the problems that people have brought to me. And I don't have the answers, but I would, you know, we need to find those answers before we, you know, as we go forward.
Uh so Cody Sack, environmental planner, uh the county would actually, uh the, the board would have the option where if they're in violation of their P U D. So if, if the county finds out that they're doing four hundred people when they're only supposed to have a hundred, it can be brought back in front of the board, and the board can revoke their P U D.
But my question, my question is, are you gonna go out there and do that?
No, we are on a complaint basis.
Somebody's gonna have to make the complaint.
I- it's, it's that way for every request, V H Rs, e- everything that we do, we're a complaint basis only.
Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Astor.
Sir, you're a lawyer. I, I picked that up whenever you were saying that. And and I appreciate that you're saying, let's take some things off the table, because anytime you have something in writing that says you can do up to this, you know people can do up to that, and we wouldn't have any voice to say no if we allowed it to stay on there. And I think part of that aspect of why Commissioner Haggard and myself are in, are willing to deny without prejudice, so we can come back and get it in writing what we're willing to allow, versus allowing up to and you telling us, well, we're not gonna do that many anyway. So I, I think you're understanding, you can appreciate why we're at where we're at, at least in our thinking that we don't want to give the maximum that is being allowed here, because we feel that there's a safety issue, even though there's a statement, several statements of we don't think there's gonna be that many individuals there.
Understood.
Okay.
And and I, I, I agree totally, and it's not because I'm a lawyer, I'm, uh, common sense says, let's get it in writing, and let's get the limits of what we're gonna do. So there's a comfort level. There's an understanding for the neighbors, for you folks, let's lock it in, and I, I, I agree with that. I absolutely agree with that. Uh and then, so as a practical matter, uh Commissioner Roskin, yeah, I, I agree with Cody. There's, you know, it's, it's a complaint basis, but if there's four hundred people in here uh or in an event, they'd be putting their whole venture at risk, uh and certainly we'd get complaints from folks, and rightly so. If you're gonna go over your limit by four hundred percent, uh you should draw a complaint. One, one thing that comes to mind is, is maybe on those events, to the extent that continues to be part of the P U D, that we have an R S V P, you know, guest list sort of maximum capacity, whether it's forty, whether it's fifty. And you have to R S V P, and you have to comply with, you know, carpooling or or transport uh uh guidelines, and that's it. The sellout is forty or fifty and no more. I think it could be done. That works in other, you know, venues or events, but I, I appreciate your concern.
Well, it's, it's an entitlement, and, and there's parameters. And I'm just saying that the neighbors shouldn't have to go, is there a hundred? Is there a hundred and ten? Is there a hundred and twenty? Uh and as I said, I don't think the county has that responsibility. Now, if somebody's violating that, and neighbor does want to take the initiative to go count them and then call the county and make a formal complaint, then we can follow up on it and take uh appropriate action. But I'm just saying, monitoring these uh different conditions, that could be a little bit challenging and adhering to them as well.
Understood. I think another thing that might give you a little comfort is, and I think they'd be willing to do this, provide notice and a guest list to to a- any neighbors to say, hey, on this date, heads up, these are the people, this is the number of vehicles. If you think we've done something wrong, we wouldn't give them your email address, but staff or somebody can be notified, right? So a little bit of notice and cap where who's gonna be there and when, and let folks, I don't know, count cars? Or just trust that these people are not gonna put their investment in jeopardy.
Yeah, I'm just saying, these are things that we should address going forward.
Agreed.
So that we can get that comfort level where it needs to be.
Agreed. Agreed. Um, and I do wanna, I do wanna acknowledge the, the hard work of, of the staff here and, and the board. I mean, if you've been out there, I mean, kudos. I mean, the, this is, this is a full-time job for you folks and it, you don't get the credit you deserve. W- we would like to thank staff because they really exhaustively, uh, looked at this. Let's talk about the road because that's part of the consideration. Uh, Commissioner Hancock's concern about safety is shared by, I think, everybody in this room. I, could, could you do this without improving the road? Probably, but there would be some inconvenience. And I think that's why staff landed on i- improve the road, whether it's two thousand feet or whatever it is, to twenty feet. And that's fine. That gets us, uh, 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 in and out comfort level. And, and know, as you do, that all the stakeholders in the county, including emergency, including fire, including traffic, they've all, they've all weighed in on this, okay? That, that's part of the recommended to grant the, the PUD. So, it's been addressed. So, we do have an engineer here. There's been some, uh, concern about, okay, what would you have to do? Could I invite you up? How would it work? What would you have to do? And before, um, I'm sorry, Jeffrey from KLJ speaks. Let me just also say, so the expectations of the neighbors and, uh, investors in this property has been mentioned, I think rightly so, many times. But let, let's keep this in mind, okay? There's no HOA out there. There's no covenants out there. Everybody purchased their property knowing we've got a sixty-six-foot road easement on Klonduck. Sixty-six feet. I'm, I'm not good at guesstimating, but you, that's on the record. That's a, that's a recorded document telling you this is what could potentially come through here, right? And we can debate about whether, you know, is this a, it's not a commercial venture and maybe it has, the, the layout has the overtones. But Jeffrey hasn't been to the site, but they've worked, his firm has worked closely with Brett and Katie on the site plan and development. And they've issued a proposal for the road. Just Jeffrey, has there anything you've been communicating to you that says complying with staff's recommendation to improve the road, twenty feet of gravel in the location that it is, creates any undue, uh, engineering fees?
Look, Mr. Jeffrey Crocker, KLJ Engineering. According to our preliminary analysis, we've proposed two thousand, uh, feet of upgrading the road to twenty feet wide with gravel surface um, and drainage improvements for the ditch and road control, of course. There is nothing to suggest that this cannot be done within the current easement. Have you any questions specifically regarding engineering?
Commissioner Roskin.
Okay, so twenty-foot surface. And then, uh, someone, some of that area where the road goes through and you've got a cut, a cut bank and then you've got the vegetation. So, you're gonna have to take out a number of trees, I'm assuming. But what would your side slopes have to be, the final ordinance fourteen?
So, we typically design to four-to-one side slope. Um, we can go up to three-to-one, um, maximum.
So, with that being said, now we've gone, let's just say ten feet. I don't even think that thing's ten feet. So, now we've gone to twenty-feet road surface. And then we do the three, the one, the four, the one road slate, road slope. And then I don't know what we're doing on the side with the creek, but, but it'd be safe to assume that when it's all said and done, you're probably looking somewhere between thirty-five and forty feet of disturbed area?
So, I've not made a site visit. Um, we have just initiated the contract. A lot of this information would have to be figured out after, you know, getting the survey. But, um, I understand that it is quite, uh, the slopes are already, they're quite steep. I would say that is not, um, what you're suggesting is probably not out of, out of question. I'm sure there will have to be, um...
I know that you have every right to do it because you've got sixty-six feet to do it. But I, I think the neighbors are saying, geez, when we balk this, we, we kinda like the trail. And this is just another thing that they brought up to me. You know, this will no longer be a trail. It'll be a fairly significant road. And it, to me, it could change the dynamics of the area. So, that's just some of the stuff that I'm trying to digest going through this.
I can't deny that, that it will change the, um, the aesthetics of the road. It will be twice as large as it is now. Um, and tree removal may be required. I, like I said, you, I can't quote that because I've not only not been to the site, but we do not have a survey yet. So, that would have to be, you know, determined during design. But I would say that, yes, that's another question that the road will definitely have a different aesthetic once you widen it.
Thank you.
Cody, you have something first?
Yeah, so Cody Sack, environmental planner. So, that's a access easement, so it doesn't need to meet ordinance fourteen standards. Also, as part of their stormwater permit, when they're disturbing that area, they have to show final stabilization for the site. So, they'd have to show their slopes and how they're gonna stabilize the, the hillside.
So, Cody, where did you start on the easement? Just on their private road?
So, it's, it's off of the, it's off of the forest service. Sorry, didn't mean to interrupt. Um, we talked with Jerome. Jerome didn't have as much concern with the portion that's on the forest service section as it averages about sixteen feet in, in width. Uh, so it starts just after the, um...
Where the pin is, where the forest service is?
Where, yeah, it starts just after the, uh, like the culvert where it goes over the creek.
Okay, so when I looked at it, the forest service pin was before the culvert. So, if you look at where the pin is, Travis can ver- verify that, that's before the culvert. So, they're gonna have to prove the culvert and the waterway, right?
And, and I believe you mentioned doing the drainage improvements.
Any, anything that would be required, yes. Um, of course, this would, you know, be at the discretion of, if my client were able to afford the improvements. But yes, we could make all recommendations.
Because right now, Jeffrey, there's only a single over the water.
A single culvert?
Well, a single way over the, it's not a two-car place. You can get one person at a time.
Oh, just a one-lane road, correct.
Right. And then it goes, their private easement to their road, unless it affects, I think maybe, Doug, did you, you said you lived up there? Right, so, um... Okay, okay. Yes, ma'am. So, here's the issue. It, it's still the stories of, okay, you just said drop-off, pickup, three weeks, music camp. This is there will be no more than two music camps per calendar year, not to exceed twenty-four students, ten faculty members and two chaper- chaperones. So, all going in two cars or a bus. Is that what you're saying? They're not all gonna, those ten faculty are gonna all be jumping in the same vehicle?
You know, there, there aren't those level of details in either the PUD or the staff recommendations.
I guess I'm looking at how many cars because you're telling me how many cars.
Yep.
And I'm looking at, I've never seen ten faculty all in one garden unless they were like going on a trip, I guess. But, um, I, I'll keep saying, I, I can't get it. And then down here, and maybe because of staff, um, and, and on the staff level, they do amazing job. But we are here also to find out the details a little bit more because you're not only affecting your property rights, you're affecting others. So, when I'm reading the staff report and what you're saying is, is not complying. It's, it's not complying together. Um, the three hundred and ten and number eleven, the, the zoning, three hundred and ten, and that the parking plan is submitted. Three hundred and ten parking spots? The minimum number of required parking is being provided according to...
Section three ten, sorry.
On three-ten, okay, I apologize. And that, how many parking spots do you need in that field that you guys are gonna, you're gonna be at? So, the parking plan, Cody, is how many people based on three-ten?
So, I believe it'd be one parking spot per three people. So, if they have, if the board allows them to have a hundred people, it'd be thirty-four parking spots.
Okay, cause when I heard before, it was, it was a lot more. And maybe that's why I thought it was three-ten. Because I thought they needed it for a lot more people by the field. And you said it wouldn't disturb anybody, but the field is right next to their property, to your neighbor's property. In fact, the, doesn't the road go to their property through that field?
Yeah. So, sorry, Cozak, environmental planner again. They'd also have to have, uh, some parking spots for the amount of employees that they're gonna have as well. So, it'd probably be like...
That's what I'm saying. So, I, I guess, I can't figure how, i- if I can't figure how many people are gonna be on there, why do you think the neighbors are freaking out? So, I'm trying to effect, figure out how many people that you're really going to be... Here's my bottom line, bottom line. With denying without prejudice, put some more details in this so they all, everybody is on the same page. Because the staff needs to be on the same page with we, you. We need to be on the same page. The neighbors that are, are gonna be freaking out because I would freak out wa- uh, reading all this. Um, and then listening to everybody coming up here with different stuff. Three weeks, kids housed at the place, drop-off pickup day. That's all, it's minimal impact. Um, you're going to be using storage for the cabins, maybe practicing in them. There might be a full-blown concert. The concert might have up to a hundred people, maybe fifty people. Okay, um...
Could, could I speak to this?
Yes, ma'am.
Would you, so I'm the artistic director of the festival. So, I'm the one that's in charge of all the numbers and all the pickups and all the faculty. So, I can tell you the statistics for this year. We have twenty-one students, none of whom are allowed to drive, whether they're a Rapid City, Black Hills residents or from out of state.
So, you pick them up where?
So, they will be staying at two other host families' homes.
Until they come to you?
Yep, so there are a total of five chamber music groups who are all living together. There are some chamber music groups that are living in the same home.
Which are twenty-one students?
Which are twenty-one students in total.
Okay, and who are the ten, or you have faculty there?
So, we have myself and Brett. We have two piano faculty, so that's four. We have a double bass faculty, that's five. We have, uh, one, uh, conductor who is conducting the students. He's also going to be one of our counselors, so he doubled duties, so that's six. And then we have our piano tuner, who's also a tenor and he's a performing, um, musician as well.
So, that's eight faculty?
Yes.
And they, um, all drive together out there?
Yes, we all carpool. None of our faculty are local. So, they all use our personal cars and we all carpool and we fit as many of us as we can. So, for the difference between this year and next year is that we don't have the portions of the house on the side built.
Right.
So, we're anticipating about five to six cars to drop off students before lunch and to pick up the same students after dinner. So, it's about five to six cars.
With twenty-one students?
With twenty-one.
Faculty, and then you have three weeks where you're doing your thing?
Yes.
Then you come out and you have a festival, or not a festival, okay? You have a concert and you're gonna host the concert in your house?
So, we were hoping to host our, our, one of the concerts at our house because we have a chamber orchestra full of kids that is really difficult, you know, to transport back and forth. So, we were hoping to do even a virtual event. You know, we haven't finalized any concert details because we're frankly waiting on you to tell us, what are you comfortable with? We can have all of our concerts within the community, we always have. We just finished applying for a hundred thousand dollar grant to have an outdoor stage. So, we'll take all of our kids in a fifteen-passenger van and go out into the community and make music.
Well, to me, I'm gonna tell you personally, I'm not speaking for anybody else. If you had a concert once a year, um, that's no different than people having their families out, but not a hundred people.
Correct.
But if you, if you have an event that's once a year, it's, for me personally, it's not gonna bother me. If you tell me four times a year and I get a guess what time of the year that is and then you have all these people traveling along this road, it seems at this time, you're like, holy cow, how many, how many people do they have out there? And you're, and the road right now is not built for that.
Yep, so I think one, one thing that I would like to clarify is, I think there's a misunderstanding between our wish list that we were directed to create and what is actually happening. And currently, all of our concerts are not in our own living room. They're all in the community. We, we set up to four. We are happy to take all of those off the table. If you feel like only ten people can visit us at a time, we're happy to, you know, we're here to work with you to see what you're comfortable with.
So, Ms. Katie, it, it isn't just we. Um, what you wanna do in the bottom line is work with staff, try to work with the neighbors so they have an understanding of that this can't all be put down like this because this could happen. It could happen to them because it's on paper. If it's put differently on paper that this is what you're gonna do and you have to abide by that and they know you have to abide by that, um, it's gonna be a little bit different than your wish list.
Sure.
So, that's why today, again, if I may ask, may represent us, it's deny without prejudice so we can figure out those answers and then bring it forth, hopefully. And then have some type of meeting with the neighbors so everybody's on the same page. They, they're not gonna like everything you're doing and you're not gonna like everything they have to say. But there's gotta be something where you can still find some solution in this and, and, and still do your dream while they don't get their dream right.
I understand. And Commissioner Roskin, you, you've been to our meet and greet. You've seen the emails that I've forwarded. We've met with all of our neighbors. We have addressed taking all of the events off the table. That is something that we have discussed and we have received not a single compromise from a single neighbor. So, we're here trying to, you know, find out from you and the planning and zoning, how do we make these conditions? We have no way of, you know, we can just keep continuing this, but we have twenty-one kids who need to take lessons somewhere in the summer. And we're trying to figure out how to, you know, we can, I don't know, Cody, can we take certain conditions off today and vote on them?
So, Cody Sack, environmental planner, that's what I was gonna say. The, the board can make the decision to, uh, so staff put the hundred people in there. That's what the applicants requested. So, that's what we, we bring forward to the, to the commission.
The chairman, for me.
If the commission doesn't want it, they can limit the people. They can take out the four concerts, uh, within those conditions.
It has to do with the road. It has to do with the concert. It has to do with a lot of things. To start negotiating with all, not all of the facts, this, that, that would be crazy, so...
The, you're, sorry.
I think even if planning and zoning, even if you had to have a special meeting or something, that there's gotta be, the devil's in the details on this, that's the bottom line. And I didn't say it was a hoopla. I said there was some issues with, um, hoopla makes it sound like we're just, bleh, and that's not where we're at. We're at trying to find a solution. And that's what I try to do for people and so does this, this committee, on where we can go to at least try to make this happen. And if it doesn't happen, we're gonna, I believe, this is my opinion, that I believe we're gonna try everything we can to work with the neighbors and you to find some solution that would work, so...
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Joe. Commissioner Roskin.
Uh, Katie, I think what you should do is say, this is what I want the most. You know, if I can't have, if I can't have this, this is what I really want. And then this, and if I could get that and, and things work out, then I'd like that.
I sent that to you, you requested.
Take the baby steps like I told you a long time ago.
Yep.
And, uh, and then work into the...
I sent you that email as you requested. So, and we've discussed all of those with our neighbors and unfortunately, we've got, we've gone nowhere. So, we're kind of at the mercy of you and planning and zoning and we're just kind of stuck here because we don't know what everyone is comfortable with. We can make a lot of sacrifices, um...
Well, I think the, the students, you know, teaching them three weeks, once a year for sh- uh, and maybe two, uh, I, I don't really have a problem with that. But the concerts and a hundred, you know, I think I would hold off on that, see how the other goes. And then this is just the way I'm thinking.
We would be fine with that if you could make a motion to cut the entire, all the events with a hundred people out. We would be more than happy to because we just like to host our kids.
I'm not gonna make that today, but that's just something that we can, uh, look at go, um, going into the future.
Commissioner Lester.
Thank you, Chair.
Uh Ron, I'm willing to go with you to a meeting, if we can get a, a meeting of the, of the, of the neighbors and with Katie and Brett.
I think we'd all like to go.
Yeah, or if we can set up a special meeting, either way, I think, I think it'd be good to kind of walk through some of the stuff that. Each one of us probably have different ideas that might, would make it work, and hearing all of those suggestions along with the community, uh the neighbors, and with you two. To kind of get it nailed down to what um, what, what we're willing to, to work through and work with. Uh that would be my, my recommendation, is that we have a meeting uh after we vote. Um maybe discuss setting up a meeting for that as well, because I think that's gonna be important moving forward. And it might even be important in that meeting to let the neighbors what can happen on this property. If this doesn't go through, there's, there's things that can happen on a piece of property, that they, they don't have an interjection on. And, and it's important for them to understand that, and, and what could happen. Um and I'm not saying that as a retribution or anything, it's just understanding what can happen on that piece of property, uh regardless without a P U D.
Of course, could we request a continuance, and during those two weeks, could we all work together to um come to some sort of a compromise?
That's what basically this is, when you deny without prejudice.
Yeah, we, we'd support that and appreciate that, just in closing, uh. The, the, the staff's recommendation to approve did include uh a review, as they often do. And not out into the future, it, this was going, going to be looked at in August, within two weeks after the camp. This is not a, you know, jump off the cliff and, and don't look back. August twenty-two, staff said, we're gonna look at all this, and on a complaint basis, so we could take some comfort in the idea of. If this is something that's not been represented, staff will know.
There you go.
It's on the agenda.
Yes, sir.
And, and these folks agree happily to, to, to debrief uh what we hope is an opportunity to get this done this summer.
Mr. Chair.
I think part of the concern on, on the people who live out there is things that they weren't aware of. That they found on the website and so forth, and that's pre-selling uh naming of cabins. Uh offering then those people that purchase those naming rights, that they have the opportunity to come and. Either they or their company could come and s- spend time. As part of that cost that they paid and so forth. And I, I think these are things that just, I mean, just put everything up in the air as to far as, you know, how far are you gonna go? Uh you know, what are you gonna allow to, to happen?
So just to, just to speak to that a li- a little bit, one of the, I haven't spoken yet today, Brett Wallfish, uh the other owner of the property. Um one of the things that we've also been looking at, you know, we haven't talked about it much, is, you know, the bed and breakfast quality of this. Um as you all are probably aware, South Dakota Supreme Court ruled that a residential purpose in June of twenty twenty-one. In every possible capacity from traffic and everything else, bed and breakfast under our existing zoning says that so long as. The managers or operators are living on site, uh which would be me and Katie, then we can host, uh we can host guests in every single room, room of that property. When we work backwards from that, um essentially, we're, we're, our septic, our full structure. Is capable to accommodate twenty-four people, which is how we came up with that number, and it was something that when they brought it up last two weeks ago, I, I had forgotten about it. But it doesn't change the fact that it still meets the bed and breakfast zoning requirements. And i- you know, if somebody was to donate money to the festival to name a cabin, we could in turn, uh pro bono give that rental. To, to a group, so it, and it wouldn't be in violation of any of our existing zoning ordinances in regards to bed and breakfast.
Oh, Chairman.
Commissioner.
So Brett, um with the easements, I didn't know if you guys read through all the easements for the Forest Service on commercial, that you have to improve the commercial. If you're turning it into commercial, you have to change that, it wasn't just the two thousand square feet on the private easement. And what does the easements entail, meaning who has the right on those easements besides just you, and what can happen on those easements? You said there could be a sixty-six foot road, uh because there's a sixty-six foot even easement. But was it used, and, and does it say in bed breakfast is not a commercial, it's as a residence, you're saying?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so I would encourage you to get the papers for the easements and make sure that is.
We, we have them.
This covered, so you guys have the pamphlet?
Uh you have it highlighted.
Okay, because in here it says that you will improve the Forest Service road up to commercial, so the entry to that?
So are, be- because we are leaning in just as a residence with the, essentially with the condition of the usage for the ca- for the cabin structures. A bed and breakfast based on the Supreme Court of South Dakota is not a commercial use, it's residential.
Okay.
And I have the easements here.
I, she's got it.
Yeah, we're, we're familiar with that, yeah.
Okay, so.
Yeah, I, I think bottom line is, and I've reviewed them as well, I don't believe there's anything inconsistent with staff's recommendation. To improve the road with respect to the easements.
But Brett's, Brett's talking about the bed and breakfast, so what is a, what is a festival? What is a, having a concert? Is that, is that legal on a bed and breakfast, you can do whatever you want for a commercial, or what you call not commercial? Because they're all residential, because they're vacation home rentals, that you can have concerts and you can do different things. Um on those vacation home rentals, and how many can you have, and then health, safety, welfare, I mean, all those have regulations as well.
We're, we're simply asking for, you know, i- if we were to keep the concerts on, on the table. One to four events, which, you know, I mean, having a party at my house would not be a commercial use, if we limit the number of people. It would be, it would be no, no different, if we were talking about doing this every single day of the year, absolutely. But for the limited use that we'd be having, uh you know, people coming to our home, to our private residence. To enjoy some, you know, classical music performances, some wine cheese hors d'oeuvres.
So let me ask you something, so you have a vacation home rental, do you pay the instructors? Do you pay the, or the students pay you? So if you pay the instructors. Are you, is that a business?
We fund, we fundraise.
Because it's vacation home rental, vacation home rentals, when I have Julie, or whatever, staying at my house. And the vacation home rental, and the bed and breakfast there, and that, um they're not paying me to have a commercial business. In my house to come over there after, during my vacation home rental, and teach people. So that's, that's kind of a fine line between a vacation home rental, bed and breakfast, and then paying people. As a business to be in, doing, and helping students, so um to me, even if it's nonprofit. It's still a nonprofit that's a business.
So within the vacation home rental or the bed and breakfast side of things, according to that ruling, it, it explained that people eating, sleeping, cooking, gathering. Recreating, and so many people view music as a hobby already, is no different putting somebody into a room to have a, a private lesson. What's that saying about people having tutoring sessions in a hotel room, which often people might, might, might consider doing? So, yes, what we're doing is different, it's weird, it's not exactly ported into the ordinances as it is. Which is why we're here in front of you today, asking for this P U D, asking uh for, for your blessing, that what we're doing is slightly step, sidestepping it. The, the ordinance openly, candidly, with uh subject to your interpretation of, of the law that already exists.
Why, I own businesses, and if, whether I'm a nonprofit business or a for-profit business, if I'm hiring people. To help me with my business, and then I let them stay in my bed and breakfast. I still am conducting a business in a bed and breakfast in order to. Do what I wanna do for my music festival.
So none of our students or faculty um pay, and the organization or Brett and, and myself receive any money. For, for letting our friends who are faculty stay at our house, same thing for students. So we would not be receiving any compensation anyways.
I thought you just said you paid the faculty.
We.
We pay our fa- we fundraise through the year to pay them for their delivery of their expertise of classes and performances.
To clarify, none of the faculty or students would be paying us money to use our home, to stay in or take lessons. We don't have any employees as an organization, we have uh a few independent contractors, and they make three thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. For the three weeks that they work with our students.
So the students receive scholarships?
They're all tuition free, it's a fellowship program.
Is there scholarships?
It's all a full tuition free program.
So I got a couple of letters here from people supporting you, that are saying they're paying scholarship dollars, thirty-three hundred dollars.
So thirty-three hundred dollars is the value that we have assigned to a s- one student's education at the festival.
So if somebody's paying that.
No one's paying that, there's no transaction between the festival and the student in that amount. The students, when they're accepted through a rigorous audition, um they are only responsible for a four hundred ninety-five dollar meal plan. And that goes to just cover their meals for three weeks. They have, they never pay anything else to us on top of that, they have an application fee, um but there's no tuition.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Ross, connect.
So is your website still under contract, or being worked on the website? Because um I, I got the. A page, I think it come off your website, it says corporate sponsorship and advertising, and presenter's circle for seventy-five hundred dollars. You get to. Uh private gathering for up to twenty-four people. So is that website, when we looked, or the website, I was, uh I thought it was under, you know, being reworked, or it was down, so is it back up now?
So it's not up, that is one of the concerns that was brought up by, I believe, Trudy Brassfield after the meeting, she said that. Um she would not like any retreats to happen at the property. We were happy that she voiced her concern, we said, you know, we're gonna take it down. The people who'd be naming these cabins, and there are only six that could be named with that perk. So there's a total of six people, or six groups that could ever do it. They're all our family members and our friends, most of whom live in Rapid City. So it is not even a perk that, you know, any of them would probably use, and we would be happy to take that off as well. So that's, that's the reason why it's not up there, is because we wanted to discuss it as a board and um potentially take that off. But what we, the reason why it was there is because we uh were working within the short-term rental portion, and we followed those rules. And we included that, and we said, we'll donate our house if you can name a cabin, if you can help us pay for those practice cabins.
No, I just, uh, I think that kind of got people a little worried, you know, when you saw. Sponsorships up to ten thousand, seventy-five hundred and five thousand, you know, are we getting back into that commercials, really into the commercial stuff?
So it's just our way of funding a shed for a kid to practice, or saying, we'll put your name on it if you can help us. Give money to, to co- to construct that cabin.
Sure.
And that's why all of them would be removed uh with any sale or transfer of this property. And we've worked with the county to make sure that happens, and no one else after us, if there is anyone else, could have use of those cabins, they would. They would be removed.
Explain to me again, the thirty-three hundred dollar scholarships, and where's that money go?
So.
So when we, when, before we were full tuition model, that was what we were charging our students to attend. That was the, that was the full cost to, you know, when, when we figured out what's the cost to bring in their faculty, bring in the travel costs. Cover the faculty food and their accommodations, cover insurance, cover all the stuff that keeps any organization running. We realized that when we were also paying for room and board at that point in time, because we were at Black Hill State. Thirty-three hundred dollars is what it actually costs per student for them to attend. Now, by us being able to donate the cabin, the, the A-frame portion of our house, we, we can eliminate about half of that cost. Immediately by pulling room and board off the table. That leaves an additional, you know, thirty-three hundred divided by two. Um the, the remainder of that goes towards, well, we, we fundraised that, so we have, you know, our various events that we've had at the doll. We just got back, a couple of weeks ago, we were out in California fundraising, and down in Florida fundraising, and, you know, we do local events, and we have national bases. Of people that personally write checks for a tax deductible donation.
And also granting organizations like Elevate Rapid City, and the City of Rapid City, and the South Dakota Arts Council.
They all, they all award grant scholarship, or grant money, in order to help us have our program, and that offsets the cost of every single student.
You have like a nonprofit foundation in that?
It's a five oh one C three.
It's a five oh one C three organization.
Excited.
Good.
Yes.
Yeah, great, great point, and just so we keep our hats on, these are individual people applying to host. What the entity runs, the, the entity is the one that runs the, the camp, okay? So. There, it's a close corporation, so when we say we, we kind of feel like it's all of us. These are individuals with a, with a home uh being constructed in the county, asking that they be able to host. The entity's work through weekend.
Yeah, thank you.
I had the same question regarding, I mean, so what is the money, where does it come from, and what's it used for? And I, I hope you're satisfied that it's, it's, it's part of the entity's fundraising.
I think it's one of those things that needed to be explained, because I don't think people understand it, I didn't, I certainly didn't, so.
I, I, I do as of seven-thirty this morning.
Okay, very good.
Mr. Chair. Same question.
Yes, good, Commissioner.
So does the uh, if you sold the naming rights for a cabin, do, do those funds go into the five oh one C three then?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
It's a donation, you can imagine the return on investment for, to a rural, you know, a practice shed. It's a donation, people wanna support.
Those are just questions that we.
Yeah, no, I, I get it, but it, it's, it's not like Black Hill Surgical Hospital, naming rights at Fitzgerald Field. This is a couple miles back uh i- in rural Pennington County. If I, my law firm puts its name on one of these practice cabins, I expect zero return on investment, it'll make me feel good though.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Lester.
I'm just gonna ask a question, because I'm the director of a nonprofit, nonprofits, you know, have special privileges, because they, they are nonprofit. They don't pay taxes and things of that nature, but it doesn't necessarily mean it's not a business, as a business model, just because it's labeled as a nonprofit. It's probably a, the point that I wanna make, so just because you are a nonprofit, it doesn't mean that you're not run like a business. I mean, you have to be run by a, by a business, a, a similar thing for the nonprofit I run, people donate for our parenting classes, it costs fifteen hundred dollars for a parenting class. You know, so when we put out our fundraisers, we say for, for a student to go through our entire program is fifteen hundred dollars, I kind of get the concept of what you've got there. But we still operate as a business, even though we're five oh one C three, because we still have to follow applicable laws, I have to pay all my staff. Through taxes, I mean, I don't know how much you pay your staff, but obviously, if you pay them underneath the federal requirements, then, you know, you don't have to file the documentation for that. But um, but nonprofits still can be considered a business or business entity operation.
So, and you're absolutely right, everything that you said is completely correct. Uh I think the confusion here that, that exists is, me and Katie, we, we own this land, and we have built our home. And we would like to effectively rent our home to the five oh one C three at a cost of zero dollars every year. We're asking for your permission to make that possible.
I have one more speaker, A. Carly.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Anya Carly, I'm a concerned mother and citizen, my daughter takes lessons from Katie and Brett, and has just accomplished amazing things. Because of this, um one of the, there are just a few things that I find a little confusing in this. Um thank you, Commissioner Hadcock, in, in agreeing that having a party at your house, like sometimes you can get a lot of people. For example, I was at a Fourth of July party last year, and I think there were probably five hundred people at this one person's house, and. We, I know they didn't get special permission or anything to have people there. Um I myself have five kids, and when we have birthday parties, we have a lot of people, and that's five times a year. Plus then we do Christmas, and we have a lot of kids too, I mean, we have a lot of people at our house regularly, and we don't go tell the neighbors, hey, we're having them. I mean, sometimes the neighbors are invited, but um we don't have to go tell them, hey, I have a birthday party coming up, there might be fifty people. We don't bother to do that, so it's a little disturbing to me that a case where there's four times a year, like up to four times a year, it's not even seven times. Like it might be at my house, up to four times a year, they need special permission. Secondly, if I'm not mistaken, please correct me if I'm wrong, um the staff has recommended approval based on twenty-seven conditions. Which to me is shocking too, but say that they complete all these twenty-seven conditions, one of them was the road work. And specifically, Commissioner Lester, I know that um you kept talking about the road work being an issue. If they agree to what the staff has recommended, I don't understand where, where is the, where is the delay in approving this then? I mean, what is there, are you adding conditions to what the twenty-seven here that the staff is already recommending?
Unless I'm missing something, the, the recommendation, the recommendation that I have is staff's recommendation to deny P U D overlay. Twenty-two oh six without prejudice until Klondike Road is improved, that's what I have, until Klondike Road is improved.
Make mistake on that?
Uh Cody Sag, environmental planner, that was the recommendation that was made to the Planning Commission, and originally to the, to the Board of Commissioners. Uh staff worked with the applicants, and there's a condition specifically in here, I think it's. Number. Seventeen, says that prior to operation, that Klondike Road has to be improved. Uh so that was the, the, the compromise for, or they can post the surety to build the road as well, so.
So the Planning Commission recommendation was to move to deny without prejudice planned unit development.
That was today's?
No, that was beginning of April, or end of April. Uh staff made that recommendation, because Klondike Road was not improved, and at the time, the applicants uh hadn't stated to staff that they were willing to improve the road. Uh after that Planning Commission meeting, we worked with staff, or worked with the applicants to. Uh come to, come to work with Jerome and Emergency Services on what with would be required to build that road to. We didn't have that in time for the uh Board of Commissioners meeting on May third. Uh so working with Jerome in the past, we compromised on the twenty feet, and the applicants have agreed to it, so that's why that condition's in there now, that they can. You can approve their permit, they just can't operate until that road is, is completed, which is a, a standard condition in several requests that we've done in the past.
So is the, is the uh recommendation now from the staff to approve what these commissions met, the conditions met?
Staff's recommendation is to approve the planning and development. Staff's recommendation is to approve the planning and development overlay with the twenty-seven conditions.
Whenever somebody requests something that's different than what the ordinance allows, you have to go through some sort of a process.
Right.
That's part of this process. Why, that's why the twenty-seven recommendations that they've made to it.
Right, so I was just confused, because I saw that they were recommending to go ahead and do it with these twenty-seven conditions, but from what I heard everybody saying here, they were saying, even if these are continued, then we still wanna talk about it and do other things.
If you, if you sat through this today, you saw that we received a lot of different information than what we were aware of before even.
So Chairman.
So, and, and same way with those that have been, that have been in opposition to the location of it. Uh, I think they probably learned some information too, whether that reflects positive or negative on them, I don't know. But, I mean, we just did not have complete information. Commissioner Hickock.
That is the bottom line, because if now we're hearing it's just a bed and breakfast and we can take everything off of the table, but this was to allow a planning development overlay to allow a single-family resident to be used as a summer/winter educational music camp, to allow off-season musical performance concerts each year, to allow shed cabins to be used for classes and rehearsals and a bed and breakfast on the subject project in accordance with two sixteen Pennington County zoning ordinance. So if we kept just hearing different, we're just doing a bed and breakfast, we're just having twenty-four concerts, we're just having twenty-six. No, really, we're gonna have a hundred uh people at the concert, we're gonna, so today was to somewhat clarify, and if we're still doing a P U D or we're doing a bed and breakfast, um, at this point, um, I still don't know, because it says move to deny without prejudice planned unit development, so. Cody, tell me, are we working out to go back to a bed and breakfast with the C U P and take some of this off the table? Or we moving forward with the P U D and trying to figure out what stipulations need to be on it?
Uh, so Cody Sack, environmental planner, they're still moving forward with, with the P U D. The only thing that they mentioned removing out of there was those four seasonal concerts, uh which um, speaking with Megan, if they remove that out, it'd have to be re-advertized to take those, those concerts out. Um, however, if, if the board is um, app- approves of the concerts, the, the number of people weren't advertised, so it didn't say a hundred people, that's just what they requested, so that's the condition. If the board of commissioners is comfortable with the forty people that they've had at the concerts before, you can change that condition in there to only allow forty people and not a hundred.
But Cody, my motion was to move to deny without prejudice planned unit de- development.
So there's, there's two staff reports in there, there's one staff report from the May third meeting that has that. And then if you flip farther along, there's the one with the twenty-seven conditions.
Okay, so.
So staff's new recommendation is to approve with twenty-seven conditions.
Okay, and ours is to maybe to deny without prejudice planned unit development.
Can I step up there?
Commissioner Hickock, that's my mistake. I didn't realize there was an updated motion way far down in the packet. So the one that I copy and paste it isn't the most current one, that was from a couple of meetings ago.
I guess, but that's where I'm going at this point.
That's still applying commission recommendation, so. I think it serves the purpose of what you're attempting to do.
Yes.
So do, so do you guys not have the, the twenty-seven conditions?
They do, it just was buried in the packet and I missed it. I didn't go that far.
Um.
And at this point, is, is their intention to do a bed and breakfast and do something different? Cody, they don't need a P U D.
So, no, they still wanna do the, the music, uh have the students come to the site. The, the only thing that they're set that they were willing to take off the table were those four off-season performances or concerts.
So what I was listening to when Brett talked is that they can do a bed and breakfast and do what they do already and not do the other stuff, and he can move forward and do what he needs to do based on his residential steps.
I, I believe he was speaking to the uh, the commercial overtone that people are stating. He, they, they're gonna do the, the bed and breakfast uh a- as well, o- off-season from when they have the three-week uh music camp. He was stating, and, and he was correct, that the South Dakota Supreme Court hasn't ruled that uh bed and breakfast or Airbnb is a commercial use, they still see it as a residential use.
Okay, Cody, so if we're not all in agreement with the P U D, but we need to have this continued, so we figure out what that P U D um with the neighbors hopefully and find solution. Is it just a continuance and not a denial without prejudice?
It, it would depend on what the board would, would like to do, if the board is, is um comfortable with the, the concerts.
Megan Kruger with the state's attorney's office, so my recommendation would be to continue it, and then based on conversations that we have with the applicants, we can decide if it needs to be re-advertized or not, just so that way they don't have to go back through the entire process again, because it would have to go back to the planning um commission. If it was a P U D that was denied, they would have to make their application to the planning commission, and then they would have to come back here. So if it's continued, we can re-advertise it as something different. So that way they don't have to go through the whole process again. Makes sense?
Okay, so here's what I'm gonna say up straight. We can continue this, but that doesn't mean I'm gonna be in agreement with the continuance of what's coming forth. I'll be up straight, me personally, because I wanna see um what the changes are. So if we continue, uh it's not a deny without prejudice with me today, but I'd like to see um what specified is gonna happen on there. And I think it's only fair, because it's on access easement, it's on a four-service access easement. This is not a, a normal circumstance in any sense of the word that I've had to deal with. Um, that's why it's going where it's going today. Um, not because they're just saying, and I've seen it, they call them nimby's are not my backyard. That's exactly not what they're saying. People are saying, oh, they're just worried about their privacy. Um, that's not what I'm hearing when I'm visiting with the neighbors. They're worried about what's happening on the road, is it, how many people are gonna be on that road? Okay, if you had ten more people on the road, like you said, four times a year, that's fine. But is that really what's gonna happen? If I have four birthday parties are fine, we have eleven kids in my family, so we, you're right, we had fifty, maybe eighty people there at a time. And that's eleven times a year, so um not always we had them other places too, but you understand.
No, no, I get that.
Their circumstances and, and their, um, but I wouldn't say they were telling me about just their privacy. They were talking about the safety factors of the roads and the things that.
Right, which I think has been addressed, which is why it was one of the conditions, and that was my question. If that's been addressed and they've agreed to that, um, why is there still issues with getting this through? One thing I was um going to comment on is, I understand the neighbors not, um, you know, liking their way of life and that kinda thing, but probably before this point, they should have come up with an H O A or a covenants or something to keep it that way, if that was their intention. Otherwise, people, growth happens, you know?
We have that in city. When um Kara wants to do a beauty shop, we have that in city, when you put a commercial property down there, it's no different in the county. How's she gonna affect my neighborhood? How many people's she gonna have parking? Are they gonna park on the, on my road? I was in the city. So this, this is not just a concern of these neighbors, it's a concern of people in general about someone putting commercial in their neighborhood.
Yeah, no, I, I understand.
If, if it was just about the birthday parties and the things.
But if they, that had been an issue, then there probably should have been an H O A before this point, because we are a nation of law, right? So when there's a law for something, that makes one, one point, but you don't go and create a law, because you don't like what somebody's doing at that point that is legal and allowed, so.
Also have seen a P U D where Kara abides by the beauty shop laws and has her five people. And Susan will have thirty people in and out a day, so to say, okay, they're gonna follow the rules and regulations. Okay, I'm gonna be up straight. So I go on the road and it's undercut, and um when you undercut a hill, you just don't go undercut a hill. And you're affecting the neighbors and the slough's coming off, and to me, when you're doing something, to, to me, it seems like they don't know the rules and regulations, which is fine, because they're music people. But is there not anybody in the organization that understands that you just don't go on a road and cut, undercut hills?
Well, I think that's why they have somebody to do it now.
Uh, maybe I've been in construction, that you go up on a, and you make a house, and um there's no, there's no wattles or anything for all the water and the stuff that's coming down while you're building your house, that your house could um, because of the hill, has not been stabilized, that that could affect the neighbors, that all that drainage and all the things that you are doing in that area, even before you started this, it kinda freaked me out. Like, okay, so these things are happening already to the neighbors, 'cause that road is used not just by Katie and Brett, it's used by the neighbors. So you've undercut a hill, you know what happens when you undercut a hill? They could be driving with their kids on that undercut hill, or their students at this time, or themselves, and it could collapse. And it's a drop-off. So all of those concerns that people are thinking is not a big deal, it's huge.
Right, which I think is why they have uh this guy here to help plan all of this.
Been on the road?
No.
Oh, no.
They do now.
Thirty-foot drop-off.
Yeah.
But they do now, ma'am. They have that now, right? Gary, am I correct? You guys, they have that now, they have the engineer to, to correct it now. What's gonna happen right now, when I, I have to go see if Doug comes out there or code enforcement to see if the road is not covered with debris, and the road hasn't collapsed for Doug, because he has to get to his house now. Because Jeff's gonna fix it, but what's he gonna do now?
Right.
So those kinda concerns are the, are the water thing, uh Doug's used to the water thing. How about the students and the people going across there if it's flooded? Um, are we? My bottom line is, is all those little things that people don't think is just a music concert and there's fifty people there. Um, it becomes a liability on, on those folks.
I presume that's in the twenty-seven conditions, right? I'm assuming that your staff has looked at all those issues and that's kind of the idea. So my point still comes back to, once we've, once they've finished those twenty-seven conditions and to your, all of your um expectations, at that point, you know, why, what's the next, what's the next objection? Does, is this like a waiting game and we're like, coming up with objections as we come along?
The issue, the issue is asking forgiveness, which happens in our county, I've been in here seventy, forgiveness after the issues already happened. And saying, sorry.
Is that what has happened here?
I didn't know the road would collapse when I took, took it out. I didn't know that we shouldn't build this. I didn't know that I needed a permit for that. I didn't know that the road should have that. Whoops, I forgot that. So then we come back and, and what do you do after the fact? It already happened. So that's what's freaking me out a bit, is that are we gonna just figure it out later? Because from all the papers, all the comments, I keep hearing coulda, shoulda, woulda, and we still trying to figure out, and so are the neighbors, what's really happening. So bottom line, put it down on paper. Stick to what's on the paper, don't do any more digging unless you have stabilization. Uh, watch out for the creek, watch out for the drainage, it's gonna affect other people.
Mister Chair.
Your engineer knows that.
So, you know, item number five, it says the number of guests staying in the bed and breakfast is not, should not exceed the minimum number allowed by the South Dakota Department of He- Health and South Dakota Department of Agriculture and Natural Resources, whichever is smaller. Cody, can you tell me what their, how they, uh, what their methodology is? So do they go by the size of the house, the number of bedrooms, the number of bathrooms?
Uh, Cody Sack, environmental planner, they go by the size of the septic system.
What's that?
The size of a septic system.
So based on the size of that septic system, how many guests could they have?
I'm not familiar with uh, for sure, your septic system, uh Brittany may know, it's but it probably could be more than a family of four or six.
It's sized for fifteen bedrooms, so thirty people.
Fifteen bedroom?
Yes, thirty people.
Thirty people, okay.
And that's, and that's for the, the A-frames and the main house, and they're only doing the bed and breakfast in the A-frames, which limits the number of actual bedrooms.
But they have thirty-six people and it's only for thirty, then what, then do we ask forgiveness later?
Mister Chairman.
Commissioner Lassner.
I wanna make a substitute motion based on Megan's suggestion that we continue this. I believe the first, the next meeting is June tenth, so I'd continue this item until June tenth.
Is that time to re-advertise? June tenth?
It needs ten days, is what Megan's saying.
Pardon me?
It, it needs ten days, is what Megan's saying.
To re-advertise? Okay. So the substitute motion is to continue until uh June tenth?
There's a second.
I'll second.
And I got a second. All those who favor the motion indicate by saying aye to the continuation.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, item N.
We had to move due to the election on the.
Yeah.
I was like, oh crap.
Okay, that's why I keep saying. Oh, my goodness.
Okay. So we, we just do it.
How do you allow a hundred people on thirty?
I'll explain it. It's a calculation. All right.
Sure.
Do you need a motion for that?
No. No, we're just gonna take five minutes. Okay, we're back in session. We are on uh N, yes.
All right, good afternoon, Commissioners, Brittany Muller, Planning Director. Item N is public hearing of ordinance amendment oh eight twenty-two dash zero four for Pennington County to amend section three oh four mobile homes of the Pennington County zoning ordinance. The planning commission did recommend approval of this amendment. Um, if you look on the screen, there was just two major changes. Um, there is an exception allowance now for a mobile home that does, does not meet the HUD label requirements. Uh, they could get proof from a licensed contractor, a certified professional engineer architect, that the structure meets the construction requirements. Um, we originally thought of doing a C U P, but with the C U P again, um notifying all the neighbors and some of these areas can get pretty um expensive and time-consuming. Um, and we were trying to actually get make it a, a more simpler building permit process, so uh this was one way to do that. And then the other is under, under number three, the length, the minimum length of a mobile home is fifty-six feet. Um, they are now making mobile homes and modular homes at about forty feet in length, or twenty-two by forty. Um, so it was meeting the square footage requirement, but it wasn't meeting the length requirement, um so that'll address the issues with those homes. Do we have an ordinance for that? Well, there is kind of similar to a governor's house, but it was kind of prohibiting those kind of, even though they met the twenty by twenty. Um, so we just said that there was an exception to the length if it exceeds a seven eighty-four. I'll move approval.
Take it. Uh, Mister Chair, I got a question. So Brittany, the issue that we had uh maybe a month ago with the lady, with her mobile home, it was built before nineteen seventy-four, and this was, this is what was causing the problem. So is that gonna be a problem going forward if we have another situation like that?
So a licensed contractor can go in and look that all of the building is put up to code, so that was one of the things um that can happen. And I know with hers, hers has been updated, the electrical panel's been updated, so there's some different things with her. Um, so it's just a contractor showing that it meets the requirements, and thank you.
So, so I'm reading where mobile home manufacturers or manufactured home manufacturers are looking at maybe making sixteen by forty homes now, or sixteen by twenty-eight homes and so forth. Uh, is that gonna have any impact on?
It will, and it'll probably go into our tiny home ordinance, and that's something that we're gonna talk about on the twenty-fifth. The efficiency dwellings and the tiny homes and, and things, um that's gonna fall probably under those ordinances, which we're gonna discuss on the twenty-fifth.
So if a person has a mobile home that was built in nineteen seventy-two, and they, they want it up, let's just say they have, they own the land, they wanna get it off their land, somebody else buys it, and it's still been, you know, kept up pretty good, and they just wanted to take it from point A to point B in our county. And then, so they're gonna have to get a permit to move it. And then they're gonna have to get a permit to place it again?
A building permit.
And will the fact that it was built nineteen seventy-two be an issue?
Yes, so they would have to get a licensed contractor engineer to say that it's built to the HUD standards of nineteen seventy.
They can do that, then the, the date nineteen seventy-two's not gonna be a problem.
Right, that's the exception.
Aluminum wire, which a lot of those were, and they'd have to, that'd be a, might not, okay, I understand.
So it's a safety issue, essentially, is what, what the HUD standards created was, and some of the mobile homes, this would still allow a mobile home to be, you know, refurbished or redone and meet the requirements without just being an absolute no. Um, so they can bring it up to code, um, if they choose.
So then those are basically they they have to go to landfill, huh?
Well, there's other counties that take them, just not any of the ones surrounding us. Um I know Mead County. Mead County does not allow pre HUD. Um Boxhelder, Rapid City, Lawrence County, not sure about Custer County. So, Wall River County, I think, does take them. Um Oklahoma Lakota County, I believe, takes them. But we were the only ones really in this area that took pre HUD mobile homes. Um now, this won't affect any of the existing ones. So are that if they're existing in place on a lot, this does not affect them.
It only becomes an issue once they move them.
If they move them.
Okay, I've got a motion, a second. All those favor of the motion indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Close, motion carried. O.
Item O is Public Hearing of Ordinance Amendment oh eight twenty two dash zero five for Pennington County to amend section three sixteen, the telecommunications facility. Uh planning commission did recommend approval of ordinance amendment oh eight twenty three dash zero five. Uh I'll just go for some. This was completely rewritten and reformatted. Uh the biggest change uh in this is that all telecommunications facilities are gonna require a TC permit, which is basically a CUP. Um then it doesn't distinguish between administrative approval or not, and they're just all gonna be a conditional use permit. Uh we did have concerns over a few towers that went up on the forty acre egg properties uh that the surrounding property owners were not made aware of it. Um so we did take in some of those concerns and figured that it will just be easier if they're all CPs, they're all TC permits, so they'll be required to go in front of the planning commission. Uh so that is one major change. The other major change is um the requirement of a decommissioning plan and uh um potential bond or surety for the decommissioning. We require it of the solar and of the wind, what we weren't requiring in the telecommunications, so we did add that into this section. So those are the major changes.
What was the first one? I was kinda like in reading something, I didn't catch it.
We are going to require a TC permit or a conditional use permit for all telecommunications facilities. In all districts.
Got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Close, motion carried.
Item P is ordinance amendment oh eight twenty two dash zero six for Pennington County to amend section five eleven fees. Uh this is to amend the fees for the telecommunications facilities permit. Uh so previously it was six hundred, we're recommending a thousand. Uh now that there isn't an administrative review. Uh typically when they would change out any of the um components on the telecommunications facility permit, it would require a review. Um now they will just have to get a building permit because a building permit is a review. Um so the facility, original facilities permit will be a thousand dollars and then they will have to get a building permit um for any changes that they make to those um facilities. So uh planning commission did recommend approval of oh eight twenty two dash zero six.
Your motion.
Move to proof.
Second? All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Close, motion carried.
I thought you said second.
Item Q.
Item Q is Public Hearing of Ordinance Amendment oh eight twenty two dash zero seven for Pennington County to amend the subdivision regulations. Uh planning commission did recommend approval of ordinance amendment oh eight twenty two dash zero seven. Uh the largest change in these, there were some um minor changes throughout, um just correcting some typos um and references um and some changes to the certificates. But the largest change was that we we removed all of the road requirements um and just reference to ordinance fourteen. So now we won't have to, if ordinance fourteen changes, we have to um update our subdivision regulations. So we just automatically refer to ordinance fourteen. Um so I would recommend um that this is continued um to the June tenth uh Board of Commissioners meeting. So that this ordinance and ordinance fourteen can be approved on the same date, so they take effect on the same day. So moved.
To which date?
The June tenth, twenty twenty two Board of Commissioners meeting.
Okay. Got a motion to move uh to continue this until the uh June tenth?
Second.
I have a follow up question.
Here.
Just out of curiosity, why'd you change the wording from three to the number three? I'm just some of the some of the changes in there, I just was wondering why we went from wording to numbers is is there a change?
Yeah, when staff goes through it, it's easier for them when they see three, the number three, than the word three. When you're looking for certain things, it was just a.
Good for A D people too.
Okay, I'm just.
Those attorneys is classroom.
It must be attorneys. I'm sitting there going, but that's not how you do it if it's under.
If it's under ten, I know it's a grammar thing and that's why I always do it if it's under ten.
That's two grammar things just today.
No, and actually, uh attorneys, usually what they will do is they'll put three, the word, and then in parentheses, three.
And I've seen that and and that doesn't seem to bother me, but I'm like, that doesn't look right. Okay, fair enough.
Okay, all those favor of the motion indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Close, motion carried, it's continued. Okay, items from the um commission. Commissioner Lassiter.
Okay.
You can do both your items and your uh committee reports same time.
Alright, I'll go through all my items first. I was out at the New One Wood Fire Department um district meeting. Uh it was a pretty good meeting. Um done done some site visits. Um you know, we obviously went to do the site visit out in um Klonak Road. Um I met with Green Valley Sewer, um Green Valley um sanitation district president and Rusty. Um I'll be, I've already sent an email to Gary, uh giving him heads up and I've talked to Commissioner Hickock about it, but um probably will, I have got another meeting with them next Wednesday along with Rusty and Jason at the same time to talk about their situation out in Green Valley with uh the information they gave me is old information, but they're working to fix their sewer issue, which is a big problem on that area. Uh especially when we have wet seasons. The the video you got you correct was two years ago. Um but they've been working to get that corrected. However, there's been some hiccups and some cost prohibitive aspects to it. So we're gonna meet with Rusty and see if there's any other options moving forward or see what we we can do and then I'll bring that information back to all of y'all.
Question on that. So they're already having problems this year?
Um well, this year they haven't seen any problems because it's been dry. Uh whenever they get a lot of um
Okay.
uh moisture, they do have the problems. However, uh with it being really dry, even if we get a little bit of moisture, there could be some other issues. I know that um even the um the recommendation to put in mound systems out there. Now the mound systems are about thirty thousand dollars, but they're only surviving about seven years. So you're talking having to redo a mound system every seven years um due to the water table and everything there too. So um we're gonna just, I'm gonna go and do some more questioning and asking and visiting and then I'll come back with some more information for the for the whole board on that.
Okay, so did I hear you just say a mound system is only lifespan is seven year?
In that area, in that Green Valley area. That's what they're clocking, man. Due to that water.
Can I ask you something Travis? So how close is is the treatment plant there?
I don't know the very specifics on that one. The the one that Rusty is thinking about is not too far. So if he puts that one in, it won't be too far. I know that um from the meeting that I had and and Rusty confirmed this. Um Ru- Rapid Valley Sanitary District can connect to them. Um but Ri- and 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 wheel the sewage to Rapid City. But Rapid City wants a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar connection fee. And Rusty's trying to work it out. It was like, I've already got a connection with you. Why are you gonna? There there's some there's some nuanced stuff to that. So I'm gonna go sit with Rusty, get sit with Jason, figure out all the specific details and then come back and kinda give an overview for that. It seems like there's still a problem with trying to figure out the best way to do it. They have secured some funding. It's about a thirteen million dollar project. Um in twenty nineteen, it was a nine nine million dollar project, but with inflation, it's gone up to about thirteen million dollars. They've got secured about two point seven million dollars for that, but they're they're you know, if the prices keep going up and as they're trying to collect funds, that you know, it's they're gonna be continued to be outpaced. The problem is is whenever those systems do fail, they're going right into Rapid Creek, so.
So if they got an agreement with the city of Rapid City, if they bring the infrastructure into the city, the city will.
They did. Um something happened to that. They had a they had a water sewer agreement. Um Rapid City backed out of it due to they couldn't provide the water that they were requesting. Uh but now they're trying to hold them to the sewer side of it. It's it's a big. I'm going to find out all the details with Rusty and Jason. I kinda I've got a piece in some of this together, asking a lot of questions. But whenever I sit down with Rusty and Jason, I will have a better overview with you because whenever I got, I've talked to Rusty about it just a little bit. And then I talked with Jason. So now I wanna sit down with both of them and kinda figure out what's the, you know, all the meat and potatoes of it and then come back and give you
Okay.
you guys a a full on that. Uh I did meet with uh Mister Thompson, that gentleman that came and talked about um voting stuff. It was a pleasant conversation. Um I walked him through what I've done and he was kinda surprised at, you know, the data that I found. He asked me to look at some more data. I told him I would and then he and I will talk again. But it seemed like he was receptive to what I told him, what what I have found within my research, that some of this this data is not accurate that he was presenting. Uh I was at the ordinance fourteen meeting with Joe and um I I visited with, I was invited to the Sunset Ranch Road District to kinda give an overview about property value increases and ta- and taxes. Um I kind of I explained to them that just because your property value goes up, doesn't mean your your taxes are going up. It all depends on a lot of different factors and they seem to understand that. So um they want me to come back to their next meeting. Next time they have another meeting so they can ask other questions. So we'll see how that goes. Um as far as committee reports, I was supposed to be at the Rapid City Public Library. And then I had a conflicting meeting, so I asked Commissioner Hickock and then she thought it was gonna be on Zoom and it wasn't. So then I don't have a report for the Rapid City Library meeting because I didn't, I wasn't able to make it and Commissioner Hickock didn't do Zoom because they didn't have Zoom capability for that meeting. Um I went to the Healthcare Trust Board and they, we talked about the rates, um coverage for um the employees, the county and the costs. So there's some research that's going into that to find out what's gonna be the best way to go, whether we raise rates. Um and and whatnot from that discussion. So I'll give you more information after we get the report from the entity that they're reaching out to. And then I filled in at the Extension Advisory Board for Commissioner La Croix. And um that board meeting was a a pretty productive meeting. Uh most of it was budget prep. And they um, you know, it's kinda neat to to be there for their budget prep and see where they're at and they've got a pretty good plan for theirs. And so um if it doesn't change much, it looks like they're being pretty reasonable with what uh we have going on about a three percent increase. And so that was about the gist of it, unless you have any questions on anything.
Okay, better than?
That's everything for me.
Okay, so a couple of things that I have is uh back on May sixth, um Commissioner Roskinak, along with Holly and several others from Pennington County, attended the Black Hill Association County District Meeting in Balfour, and that's where you see that resolution that we had that that came out out of that, Holly and Janet presented that. Um Holly is the one that's put the work into that of getting that put together. Uh Senators Dietrich and Duhamel spoke in regard to summer legislative studies, including corrections and jails. And uh I understand last night that Sheriff Tom was notified that he was, he will be a part of the uh uh corrections study. Um and I don't know if they they've selected outside members from the legislature for the jails at this point in time. Um so both Dietrich and Duhamel did an excellent job, I think, of bringing everybody uh current as to what the summer studies actually mean and and what the state is proposing on corrections. Apparently the discussion during legislative time is that they need a a new men's prison. Uh I was talking six hundred million and Dietrich made the comment, he said that price is probably now eight hundred million. So uh it just keeps keeps going up. So it'll be interesting what takes place on that. I got a got a call from Brown County last night. Brown County had bought a building, uh they paid two million for it. They think they can retrofit fit it into a regional jail for twenty million. I said, wow. Why don't you come and take care of our plumbing issue? So, so anyway, uh there's a lot more on both of those subjects on corrections and jails. Lot more regionalization being discussed with county jail facilities. And I don't I don't have a a real good feeling on how this is gonna come out, that anything will be done immediately as far as around the state. It may be done on the state level as far as the s- uh men's prison and women's prison. Um but I don't have a very good feeling on what's gonna happen on regional jails and what kind of support anybody's gonna get on that.
I appreciate that overview from Holly because just for you bringing it up, Gary, on the regionalization of water and how that's working and some of the um stuff you had said on that or information you have gave on that was very good. Um and then the jail overview, um it try to sound yucky. Um I like all that information um because it's interesting to me. It's interesting because of people ask. It's interesting because of how we move forward or or how I get ideas in my head for other things. So when you do those overviews or you do those updates, uh for me, it's it's really important. And that's um why I kinda stress that sometimes, maybe not always a positive way. But um because it does, it 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 really means a whole, at least me personally, a whole lot when I know what's going on in our county or what you guys are doing um in your meetings, not backside like back reveals. But just things you're doing that aren't in here is how I should have said it, in the meetings here, the overviews and everything. Because I just love it. I love the interesting things that all that Holly talked about and what you were talking about with other counties. Um and how I relate that and anything that I kinda do with some of my stuff or when people ask me, well, what are you guys doing? So I appreciate that a whole lot and anything you can keep doing for that, I think is is good for this team. So I appreciate it.
Yep. Last night, Ron and I attended the Central States Fair Board Meeting. The Soleil and Bridger Steel Buildings are are currently under renovation. The new floor is already been put into the Bridger Building. Soleil floor has been removed. That will be, I think they said next week, they're gonna be foreign concrete in that in that building too. And then uh as a completion of that, they're gonna build bathrooms between those two buildings. Uh so all both of both of those buildings will have direct access to to restrooms. I figured they had over thirty weddings scheduled for this year at this point in time. That just keeps growing, so.
Wow.
Did they talk about the is the alfalfa building the same as the Bridger Steel?
No.
No.
It's a different one.
I think they were talking about that one.
Yeah, that one will be done too, so.
Then they mentioned that this last weekend they had, what, seven?
Nine.
Nine events?
Nine events in one weekend.
That's what, and that's what we've been saying for years, this team and and the other teams, that how much the fairgrounds could be utilized more and that now it's coming to pass with the this team that gave that extra money just to help out the next step and just what the city has done for. So isn't it kinda crazy where we started ten years ago and where we are today with the fairgrounds, you guys, just because of of these commissioners, all of us commissioners um putting in and moving them forward and and it's weird because I always thought, well, we're gonna get some that are gonna stop us along and not us, but our county along the way and um wow. Everybody has contributed with you, with your, you know, the levy and some of the stuff I did and some of the stuff um Lindell did. And and that wasn't just, we just initiated it. The team of our commissioners moved that forward. So it's pretty exciting to watch um where they are today and where they started.
Yeah, I agree. They just uh they just added, didn't add, it's a, they have a uh new employee that replaced um who's her name, Ron? You remember?
The accountant?
Huh?
The accountant?
No, 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 it was the it was the one that actually uh helped put together the horse and cattle show and all that stuff. And she's now gone and so they hired this Dana, Danny is her name. Uh out of Brookings and she's worked with the FFA and so she's got all kinds of new connections for them. And they're already working on some of those projects of coming out. And yesterday was her first day. And so she was already working on some of those uh new events that could put potentially come out here too.
They they moved their team ahead as well, where they were going for the future as well, so that helped. So that's cool.
And we did authorize, uh this was uh at last month's meeting, we authorized one new employee. Cause we don't have anybody at the front desk anymore out there. Uh Ashley started there, but Ashley's so valuable and in setting up events and so forth that uh they moved her out of that position because if you sit at that desk, all you're dealing with is telephone people coming in and stuff. So they've uh they're interviewing and plan on having a new employee by this Friday hired, so. They're interviewing and plan on having a new employee by this Friday hired. So, uh, that will help also. Um, they put up a couple of the, uh, of the, their big tents, uh, at the airshow this weekend. Delivered a thousand chairs out there and so they became a part of that. Uh, Ellsworth, uh, paid them five thousand dollars. They won't make any money on that just because of the labor costs of getting things set up and tore down and so forth. Uh, again, the contribution of things that they have for, uh, a big event. And that airshow, I was there both days. They're estimating they had forty-five thousand people there on Saturday and I can certainly believe that. Sunday was down considerably, but I would say they probably still ran maybe close to twenty thousand people on, on Sunday too.
So I have a guy that, um, someone had told the story about, um, they helped a guy, um, get to his son's funeral. And they helped pay for that and stuff. That was a guy that stays with us and he was just, you guys, he was so joyous. He's, he loves his job there. They hired him full-time now. Um, they have for a while now. And then, um, he just came up to me and was like, whoa, thank you, David. Um, just, um, loves it there. So they gave this young man an opportunity and he's taking that opportunity and just moving forward and. Like I said, he can't say enough nice about how they treat him there. So, um, I was very thankful to hear that. Because, um, I had told him that one time, you know, they might need you at the fairgrounds and he had worked there just, you know, before he got full-time. Won't say why. Um, anyway, but just the story he told, how they treated him, how they treated him with his son. And now that he's a full-time employee, that means he's a heck of a worker, which I knew, um, how amazing, um, everybody's just really good to him. So. That's, that's a good story from, if you know where he came from and where he is today. So that, the fairgrounds helped that, helped. Um, helps not just him, but other people in that way as well. So that's pretty cool.
They have a great maintenance and a crew that does set up and tear down and stuff. I mean, they just, they, they don't need a lot of direction.
Right.
All they need to be told is, you know, this is what we got coming in and, uh, they take care of it. So, which is kind of nice because they don't really need some direct supervision right over the top of them in order to be doing that. So.
Nice.
Ron, you're up.
Well, if we get any leaks in that roof, we're gonna. Deb and I attended the two thousand twenty-two South Dakota Mineral Industries banquet last Friday up in Lead. And, uh. I think the, I asked Quinn Neff who invited me, I said, Quinn, you know, like, why am I invited to this? One of the reasons, because, uh, he said they're gonna be promoting the, uh. They want to build, uh, relocate the Black Hills Mining Museum. And that whole project's about twelve million if I recall, but I think the site where it's at now, if I understand it, Hanny wants that site. And so if Hanny wants that site for redevelopment, redevelopment to repurposing, then they have to find another location. But, uh, anyhow, they, uh.
So can I ask a stupid question?
Yeah, absolutely.
Where is it? Where's the current one?
Current one? That's, that's not a stupid question, but it's one I can't answer because it's not my district.
I can tell you it's on Lead, Leeds Main Street.
I was gonna say Holly's in Lead.
It's on Leeds Main Street.
Oh, that's the one they're darn well?
Right next door to the post office.
Really? And Hanny wants that?
That's what I understand.
Hanny's doing some interesting developments, a big development in Lead.
Okay, okay. Well, I've been in that, so.
So the banquet was held in the roundhouse and I've never been in there, but that roundhouse evidently could service six trains and turn them around and.
Oh yeah, that's a neat place.
And, uh, I think it was Cheyenne Crossing, they prepared the prime ribbon.
Okay.
It's really good.
They are, they are an excellent catering service.
So, yeah, we, uh, then they, uh, Quinn Neff did an overview of the mining, you know, where we're at here. Uh, then there was a professor, professor from the School of Mines. And he said, it's funny how just two people can sit there and just put everything at a standstill. Maybe not kill something, but they delayed enough that it just doesn't happen and I, I won't even mention names, but I think. You could probably figure it out. Anyhow, overview of the, you know, where we're going in the mining industry is in, you know, Pennington County. They, I think they talked a little bit about, on what is the ordinance three twenty? And, and the different, uh, agri, you know, we're. Uh, predominantly, you know, we got gravel cores and whatnot, but we're really no active, uh, precious metal mining right now. But it was, it was good, uh, presentation. Building Committee, you know, it's just, just seemed like we go over the same stuff. The same stuff, uh. And so Mike was talking about the bottom, the basement of the jail, you know, that's where all the three levels of sewage and everything goes and out and. And.
Fun place.
Talking about how they might re-purpose the, uh, repartition and repurpose that basement. And I didn't even know the jail had a basement and then I asked Kevin after the, I said, can I go look at the basement? So I, he took me over and introduced me from Yantist. Rob and I went down in the jail. We were down in the basement for about an hour. And he showed me where the cafeteria was, where the, where the, uh. Kitchen was and so. There's the garage door, I think it faces Saint Joe and if they have a prisoner, there's, uh, they bring them in. And then they're in this tunnel and, uh, they, uh, they have a name for it, an alleyway. And then they go into this little. Uh, room and there's four stations there and that, that's what was designed for one tower. And now it's servicing two towers and sometimes people get backed up and then once they get through there, they have to get. Where are we gonna put that particular person? Maybe, you know, they just need to sleep it off or this one's got mental ill, so they have to, got a lot of stuff going on. They got twenty holding cells down there. And.
In the basement?
Right.
Really?
Wow. So he said, what we'd like, now they're talking about is going to the other side of the building. And, and, uh, knocking all the, all the interior walls are concrete block, but they're not load bearing. Cause every so often they got these huge columns that that's a whole, uh, infrastructure, the whole, the, those columns are the support for the. For, or the basement of three towers and. So it was, you know, when you, we're, we're always talking about the basement of the jail. So, uh, I told Rob, I said, uh, you know, the other commissioner should, uh. Take this tour and he said he'd love to take you guys down and show you the challenges that they have and some of the ideas that they're thinking about.
So there's twenty holding cells? Is that just, were they holding while they're processing them?
Uh, sometimes they might have to spend the night there, but ideally they, you know, sometimes they get backed up.
Okay.
Then there's another, he said, uh, he's, he said, you know, we, we get a prisoner, they come in and they just commit a petty offense. Cause they want to get in to the jail so they can bring drugs. And he said that they have a technique now where they can get it in there. And it doesn't show up on the, it won't show up on a metal detector and it don't show up on a scanner. He said. Once they get in there, they integrate, then they can pass the stuff off. And he said, so what we're trying to do is, uh. Don't let them get into that system, uh, identify who they might be and then put them in another area, get them out so they, cause all they're trying to do is just get there.
Sure.
So I learned a lot that, uh, one hour. I tended to crit, or elevate critical. Uh, critical what? Luncheon. And I think that, that was, uh, they, there's five panelists and they talked about, uh, tourism. Which is our second largest industry in the state of South Dakota. And being a commercial praiser, I can say that all the motel owners and campground owners that I've talked to. There's, there's never been a better year than two thousand twenty-one. So the question is, what would two thousand twenty-two be? Cause now, now we're dealing with the price of gas and we're dealing with interest rates and so. They're saying that it, uh, could be little, little, I don't think two thousand twenty-two is gonna be a bad year, but I don't think it's gonna be as good as two thousand twenty-one. So.
Mine's pretty good so far.
You know, I think certain segments of the market are gonna do better.
Yep.
Uh, if you got a forty-foot Class A mortar home. Wanna change your plans, cause that's diesel five to six dollars and, yeah, and it gets pretty expensive. But anyhow, that was, uh, I always enjoy going to those luncheons and. And, uh, speaking of committees, uh, Big Five, I think is on Thursday and I think Lloyd and me are the. Two that go to the Big Five, but Floyd's gone. I was gonna say if somebody else wants to go in Lloyd's place, uh, for that, it's eight o'clock at the School Administration Building, second floor.
I'm going.
Okay.
Lloyd, yeah, Lloyd asked me to go, but I can't, I've gotta, cause it's tomorrow, right?
Thursday.
Thursday. Yeah, I, I was gonna be out of town, so.
So that's all I got.
If you remind me. If you remind me on the text, would you?
Okay, I might add on the building committee, uh, the. Needs analysis, right now, um, the county administration building's about sixty thousand square feet. And they're saying in twenty years, they're gonna need another thirty-four thousand square feet. The public safety building right now is just about thirty-five thousand square feet and twenty years is gonna need another twenty thousand square feet. Court system's, uh. Eleven thousand six hundred and they're gonna need an additional, don't, let's see, yeah. I guess, you know, it's a hundred and sixteen thousand now and they're gonna need another thirty-eight thousand in twenty years. Building and grounds is about twenty-one thousand now and they're gonna need another fourteen thousand in twenty years. Our parking right now, we have nine hundred and eighty-eight parking spots, so we're gonna need an additional four hundred and sixty in twenty years.
Oh gosh.
So. And, and it's pretty, we know that we're gonna have to build a parking structure.
We gotta call Dan.
What's that? And, you know, everybody is in total favor. If we could buy the first Western Bank property, I mean, that's a no-brainer. We need the, that, cause you don't want to build new though. And, uh, that building, you know, it, it, I think that's probably got thirty-five, thirty-six thousand square feet.
On three levels.
And so.
Is there a basement in that building?
Yeah.
Really?
Yep. I haven't been down there, but, uh.
Does have a base.
It's actually four levels.
Now.
Right.
In ten years.
Did you say, how many square feet is that building?
Uh, you, probably close to forty thousand.
Four, okay.
Yeah.
Wow.
That main, the main level is really, you know, it's big and then the, then the second and third are a little bit smaller, but, uh. I think the second and third, they're both about seven, eight thousand square feet.
Pretty good size, yeah.
And you know, Mike, Mike goes, well, you know. Kevin says, Mike, just think outside the box, you know, we need the, we can work around it, you know, if they wanna. Keep that main, or part, part of that main level for a drive up for a period of time, let's work around it. Cause don't let that be a deal killer. So. Uh, First Sense Bank, you know, that I think sometime in the next month or two, they're gonna be able to make a decision what they're gonna do with that property. Sell it, sell the whole thing, then we get that other parking lot next to the lamplighter, vacate that alley and we gotta, you know, that could be a parking structure. But, uh, anyhow, there is a, they passed out a, uh. A schematic of how things could be.
Yeah.
And, uh. It's available if anybody wants one.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think we should update Dan on the employees ten years before, now and ten years and if you could. Then he's gonna come back and say, what'd you say? Okay, so I didn't go to, I signed up for the, um, tourism luncheon, elevate luncheon. Um, but I went to a funeral and that was our ex-commissioner, um, Edish met his wife passed away. Um, very nice funeral. Um, Mike was there, Cindy was there, so we represented the county. Um, that's the lady that we did, uh, the recognition and thank you for everything she's done for Pennington County. I thought that was pretty awesome. Um, the mineral, um, supper that we went to was prime rib was really good. Um, Mr. Bowrun helped Brittany and our staff up at planning with, uh, the hard rock mining. He's a teacher at, um, School of Mines Professor, I should say. Um, he was there, Quinn was there. Um, Brian Tiedemann was there, he gave overview. So it was kind of nice and what's gonna happen is. We have a lot of fear mongering going on, you already know, with water and different things and they have, Timber has, um. What do you mean, organizations and, and other, uh, big companies have organizations that represent when people try to counteract. Meaning don't tell by facts and information, they just do fearful stuff. Uh, this is what basically this meeting was for them. Is to get people organized and understand, um, that they need an organization to put out the facts on mining. Which, which is good because it's good to read it on the website and, and get on a website and know some of these things. And then see what down, see what's out there. And then you also have someone to call those commissioners, um, to see if it's for fact checks. So I thought that was a, a really good thing. Um, fire service board, we're working on budget. Uh, I'll just tell you up straight, uh, we're gonna need Val full-time.
Need what?
Val full-time, um, instead of part-time. Uh, we talked to Dustin, Dustin is looking at his full-time. Cause he needs someone to answer the phone and set up his E O C and do all that stuff. So it's not like it used to be and it's just a couple of things that Val does. He asked Pepper, Pepper was doing that, was overwhelmed before. It's not just budget. If you look at, if you go ask Val, go look at a list. And it's not just Dustin. She said Dustin needs a full-time and so does, uh, Jerome. And, um, Val's a worker. So if Val's telling, it's kinda like, damn, if I'm overwhelmed, you guys know that, um, I'm a worker. And if I can't do it all, um, I really can't do it all. So I trust Val. And I think that's gonna come up and I think in our budget, I think we need about sixty-eight thousand altogether over and above our budget this year. Um, for that because, um. I've been, Dustin can explain, seventy-five percent is paid for by a certain amount and then twenty-five percent is paid by the city, seventy-five. So we're paying a lot of Val's salary already. So it's not something different. And then Dustin, sounds like he's gonna work it out in his budget that, um, if he needs full-time. That he can use maybe some of his reserves this year and then, um, next year, put it in city and county's budget. So, um. I think it's a positive. Uh, Jerome's doing a lot of different things than he was before. We also talked and Brittany was talking and Dustin and Jerome that they need somebody up part-time. Instead of having Jerome do it because it's so, building is getting huge and all the responsibilities with the, uh. Fire education, sprinkling, um, that they need, um, somebody up in planning to do that. Because that's not something you could just do part-time when Jerome has time. Cause if he has fires, then he's missing, he can miss two weeks of work. So. Um, just to give you guys a heads up and otherwise they're doing really good. They're doing really good. Um, a lot of the people went out to. Rochford the other day and I was on the new road. What is on the road? I forgot what we pull on there.
What we've done is put recycled asphalt, but then we're gonna do that concrete injection. That'll probably get done in June. So. But that is gonna do is make that about a twenty-year road. Uh, and it's not dust control. You're still gonna have a little bit of dust, but it's gonna be a lot better than that limestone gravel. You might just have a, a little bit of dust. I mean, that's just gonna, and I talked to Sean today, so that's gonna be a. They're doing the whole road from where you leave Lawrence County until you get to the pavement that goes into Rochford, which is about seven, eight miles.
Yeah.
And, and Travis and I met the guy that's gonna do that application and it was thirty-five thousand a mile. That's with the, all the material in his application and so.
And if I understand correctly, they're doing core samples on yours, cause they didn't do core samples on mine, so they had some issues out in my area.
Okay.
Um, and they learned that they need to do core samples before they do it to make sure they've got enough material.
Base, yeah, what the base level is. But that was, that was really good and then I learned how to make, um, Parmesan lasagna. Ever hear that? Um, one of the ladies is amazing. So you make spaghetti and you put it at the bottom. Then she basically sour cream with cream cheese and then she puts this, then you put that on top and then you put the, um, sauce with the meat on it. And then the cheese over the top. Cause I, I don't like making lasagna.
Do you call it million dollar spaghetti?
She called it poor man, poor man's spaghetti, or poor man's lasagna. It was, it was really good. Anyway, that was, that was cool. And then they had the fire service people, or the wildfire people and some of the other people. And then, um, it's always a good board. And then we talked about some of our budget and, um. Dustin was a little bit worried about how he was working out some of the details on that, but we met with Dustin. He was, um, very good to us yesterday and gave us some ideas and stuff too. But then he's finding, um, they do have a big enough office for two people, as you guys know. And maybe we have partitions from other places and different stuff that we could use. Some won't cost, you know, the fire service board or Dustin any money by the end. So. Anyway. Anyway, hopefully that's all it is.
Sounds like Silver City's uh, getting close to signing the actual poker work with, with the Forest Service.
Nice.
It's good. Anything else?
Hopefully not.
Take a motion for executive session.
So moved.
A second.
In a second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, need a motion coming out of the executive session.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, I need a motion to approve the thousand dollar retention bonus for medical personnel. Dr. Nathan Long, C N P Rachel Waddle, C N P Michelle Mayer, and Dr. Roger. Belile, effective June twenty-one, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
June, June twenty-sixth, I'm sorry, twenty twenty-two. So I've got a motion in a second. All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried. Now I need a motion to authorize the Highway Superintendent to sign the Addendum A to the agreement for right-of-way acquisition. For parcel number twenty-two and twenty-four in the amount of twenty-three thousand, six hundred and seventy-one dollars and nineteen cents.
So moved.
Got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
In a second. All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Got a motion in a second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
So how's that gonna be different though?